We're going to get started. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
Please.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay. We have the report of the town.
Yep.
Yep, report to administrator, please.
Okay, I'll be brief. It's nice to see what he's showing up to have my update tonight. Usually not just well attended, but I'll try to go through it. The project over at the high school on the fields, the lights are still being prepped for that backfield installation. They spent the last week taking out a giant mound of fill that had a move that was in the way, so if you look to the far left, you'll see that mound is gone. Still be able to install those lights shortly. The pulse of the tension netting system are still being installed. The main drain line for the baseball field is complete. Inline drainage on the outside of the baseball field is about to start. This picks up the drainage from the sloping system that you see around the complex. The field anchor is about half installed for the baseball field. It should be completed by the end of next week. The installation foundations and structural steel for the school boards will be installed shortly. The building contractor is going to remobilize this Thursday and Friday and get back to work on the amenities building. That must mean the doors and windows are in. And once that's done, weather cooperating, they'll finish the paving down at the amenities building in the field. So we are doing a lot of work, not some of the big stuff we wanted to do, but as I said last time, they're hoping for good weather, February vacation, really going to bring in a lot of trucks and a lot of stuff to get as much of that equipment and material in there while the kids are out of schools as they can. We've completed phase two of the town surplus equipment auction. This time we raised $66,455.
Wow.
Seven thousand four hundred seventy in the first round, so we made over $70,000 at this point. The big ticket items this time were $21,200 for the 26-foot whaler, $9,500 for one of the Humvees, and we also Sean received $4,800 for that Mack Roloff at the transfer station, which had over 300,000 miles on it.
The town did good.
Wow.
So we did very well. We still have a lot of school stuff, desks and things that will go in the third round at some point, but Nancy and Michelle need a little bit of a break. They did all the hard work getting this all catalogued and getting the stuff out the door, so thank them for all their hard work, but that is pretty good, over $70,000 on surplus equipment that's just been sitting around. The COA, the contractor's mobilized, the fence is up around the field. They begin the abatement work in the C wing. They've also started the pre-demolition, cutting and capping of the pipes from the B wing to the C wing. When that is done, there will be a solid petition separating those. Once the asbestos is complete and the demolition is done, then the contractor can apply for a building permit. So we'll have a meeting tomorrow. You probably saw last week I sent you the update. We're going to get those every week. Those are three-week outlooks by the contractor, so every week we'll get those. We'll just post them on the website so people have an idea of what's coming up, where we are on that project. The water departments, sorry?
Thank you for doing that. That'll be very useful.
Yeah, I mean Steve Kirby did the first one and he put in, you know, we have to, they put in the squid. I'm like, what is the squid? He goes, oh, that's the, the blue cover or the blue top on the fence. I said, well, just call it the blue top on the fence. If I don't know what it is, I'm going to get 100 calls from people saying, what is it? So we fixed that, but we'll do that every week and just people need to know it's weather-dependent, contractor-dependent, so it's depending upon a lot of, a lot of stuff.
I have a question about that. There seems to be some issues related to parking behind the building with the rec department, and I'm just curious to know, has anyone complained? I mean, I've seen complaints that drop off and parking is a problem, quote unquote. So if they could add that to the...
It's more late at night, but there's a site meeting tomorrow and I'm going to go talk to them about that so we can...
Okay.
I got an email from one of the women, and I just said, we have a meeting on Wednesday. I'll bring it up.
Okay.
Part of the project, there will be some disruption at first, but one of the first construction parts of the project is the back entrance to rec where the tennis court is. That's going to be made handicap accessible and the primary entrance to the building. Until we get that done, there will be a little bit of guiding around, but we'll see if we can make it a little bit better for people.
So people need a little patience and understanding that we're trying to accomplish a lot on that side.
I'm hoping tomorrow to get a timeline on that, when we can expect that to be done. But again, in the meantime, there will be a little bit of time where it's going to be, you know, you're going to kind of have to...
Inconvenient.
...fish your way around, but once that's done, that'll become the main entrance to the recreation department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The water department has finished flushing. We've now flushed the entire town, at least those parts that we can flush. We do have dead ends with no hydrants that we can't get to yet. Those are places that are going to be slated to get new hydrants and flushing gates with the money we appropriate at the fall town meeting to replace some of the other pipes that we're doing. Once those are done, if we have sufficient water, then those pipes will all be flushed. So the hope is before, really, we get into the high use of June, July, we'll have those hydrants in and we'll be able to flush those. The testing we've done, and it's in the water study, has shown improvement in the system, so we think it will be better. Will it be perfect? No, but we will do a test later on in the spring, just kind of simulate the pressure changes and we'll see what we get. But right now, we are seeing improvements in the system, so that is a good thing. Even though Suez has discontinuing ice pigging in the USA, they are still here, they haven't stopped yet, so we are looking at maybe doing some ice pigging in the spring with money we have left over. We will not be doing any ice pigging in the new fiscal year because they're, they're just going out of business unless Sean and Tony buy it, which I know we talked about. Regional SOA meeting February 22nd, 25th, so I'll have an update for that at the first meeting in March. The water study presentation that we've been talking about, that's tonight, so I can take that off my list. And we just received a grant this week from FEMA for $70,325 to update our hazard mitigation plan, and that brings us to about $280,000 so far this year. That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jim?
Nope.
Karen?
Yes?
What about the field at Old Gates?
I met up there last week with Mark Novak and a contractor, kind of laying out what we're looking for. I need to get him a copy of the senior center plans to make sure what that's going to be so he can tie it in. He's just going to draw up some preliminary plans and get a price from them. I promised Tony we can't go out on it without wrecking the grass, so it's going to be much later in the spring. But he's working on the plans now. I just need to get him the senior center plans that he can cut them in. Right, I'm sorry. What will probably end up being there, the track that goes around, we will take the track out in the middle, because that would be in the middle of what the baseball field would be, the soccer field will still remain. And then when we're done and everything's done and the senior center is done, if we have some money left over, we'll put the walking path around the entire perimeter of the site. Taking that path out in the middle will actually be good for soccer because right now it restricts what we can do for soccer on that field. So we're going to leave it around the outside, and then if we have to, we'll put it around the back and finish that up.
And what about Cedar Point?
We met the engineers last week. Kevin, Cedar Point?
Yeah, we're, you know, pushing out to get it all permitted and what the business can't...
The goal is to be in the ground in the spring.
Spring, okay.
Yep.
Good. Any other questions for her? Nope, good. All right, two other quick notes. One, I may slur tonight, but I've not been drinking. Dr. Yardley just did some work on my mouth and it's still novocaned up. Number two, I want to recognize a former selectman in the audience, Joe Norton, 30 years. Thanks for showing up, Joe. Good to see you.
Good to meet you.
All right, moving right along, we have a recognition here for someone that Joe knows well, Betty Foster, town archivist. Betty, how are you?
Fine.
Good. Maureen, do you want to?
No, Captain.
Okay. Oh, you're the... Okay.
As town clerk, the archives falls under my department. However, the unsung heroes of town hall are definitely the archive volunteers who have been under the leadership of Betty Foster for the last 22 years. Betty's knowledge in archival research, ancestry research, preservation, and all the projects she's led, her knowledge is unsurpassed. She, her mind is a steel trap. She has so much history, I keep telling her, she's got to write it down, write a book. So maybe she'll have time to start that. As you can see by the turnout tonight, we have all our archive volunteers here to support her and honor her. Can we stand up? And in my last eight years as town clerk, I have learned so much from Betty, and I can't talk. I'll be good. We'll get through it. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you all these years, and we will continue to see you down in the archives. And I don't think there isn't a department in this building that Betty hasn't had a hand in helping or assisting. The archives are so busy every Wednesday with ancestry requests, requests from other departments, and this is her passion. She's done it for 22 years, she loves it, and nobody knows, not a lot of people know about them on Wednesdays down there in the basement, you know? But she has done such a wonderful job, and there's big shoes to fill, let me tell you. So thank you, Betty. I appreciate everything.
Betty, turn around so Jim can get a picture.
You honestly don't need to thank me. This has been a labor of life, 22 years, and I couldn't have done it without all these ladies sitting over here tonight, and some of them have been with you for all 22 years. It has been my pleasure to work at town hall and the people we have met and that we have researched for, to come up here and we hear from them years after and they come claiming that they've nations become a constituent, and it has been my pleasure. You don't need to thank me, I should thank you.
Betty, hold on, Betty. So just a few quick words. I mean, we can't say enough how much work you've put in the town and how much impact it's had on the town. You know, clearly the town is steep in history. There's so much documentation from so many years that over the years, I mean, I've been doing this for almost 18 years between the two committees, and we hear the stories about boxes of this and all this and all this, and you're the one that has gone through all those, archived and documented, got all the funding from different sources to keep it all, you know, pristine and in great condition. And we really can't say enough for, for what you've done to the, to keep the history of the town. So thank you very much from the board and from myself personally. Maureen, do you want me to... I'll tell you what, does anyone, does anyone out in the audience have anything to say before we... Nobody?
Cover it up. We'll go on from last one.
All right, so Karen can't say anything, but Maureen can.
Yeah, and I'll just come down too. Betty, I just want to say thank you. I mean, look at this. I, it's so, for me, it's sad when everyone retires because we don't get to see the love and the respect until this moment, and it all, you know, it's so wonderful, and what a tribute to you. If TV Land could see how many people are packed in this room just for you, and I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done, and we're a better town for it. And we have a little gift for you as well. Just a little thank you from the town. Enjoy your retirement, okay?
Once again, just to get a plug in for the icon. Massachusetts is a very fortunate town. Along the many years that the tribe has been here, someone has had the foresight to retain our records, and we have births and deaths and marriages back in the 1600s. We have laws and rules of, from a colony that we have the only existing court that I know. The state of Massachusetts held it for a short period of time, and the slot women's constituent requested that it come back. So if you haven't given me the update, you all have time to revisit. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
I'm going with them.
Yeah. Thanks, Karen.
Oh, is this the walk-in?
Hey, Ralph, how are you?
Hey, Ralph, how are you?
Good, good.
She might...
I guess they weren't here for, to see us.
They weren't here to see us.
No, apparently not.
All right, we'll keep moving forward. So the next item is a discussion vote for suit, the Citrus Food Pantry request for the use of Old Gates School cafeteria. Jane Frank, how are you?
Thank you.
Good.
My name is Jane Frank, just as a way of introduction, and I'm the president of the Board of the Citrus Food Pantry, a present. And as announced, we're seeking permission from the Board of Selectmen to move into the cafeteria portion of the Old Gates School in the B building. We feel that it would be advantageous to our operations and to our clientele to do that. As present, we're in the Masonic Temple on Country Way, and we've been there for 11 years. The space initially was workable and afforded us what we needed, both in the area of square footage and amenities, but that's no longer the case. We have a very small shopping area where when you come in, if you're a client, you ask for a list, you fill out your shopping list, you're giving it to a person that's in a very small room, probably half the size of where you're sitting now, which has shelves in it, and it's covered with canned goods. The sightlines are miserable, and it takes a long time to process orders, and people are waiting around. There's no place for a client to have confidential conversation, especially when they're coming and discussing their financial situation or needs with us. Also, storage, the only available mass storage is on the third floor of the Masonic Temple. I don't know if anybody's been inside, but the staircase looks like it was made by dwarfs. And going up and down with our volunteers, who are, a good deal of them are retired people, is a definite liability for us, both in weight and in dangerousness for the staircase. The new cafeteria, if the new cafeteria would allow us to improve our services and provide more streamlined operations, we could turn people around more quickly when they came to get their food and offer a better layout, maybe a self-directed area for shopping, which is something that would be very advantageous when you come in and you want cereal, for example. We don't have Cheerios, and the person has to go out and ask, would you take something else? So it delays the whole process. We have the ability to pay, to pay share cost and portion of utility, and we would be asking on behalf of not only ourselves but the community to just have a better space to help process the amount of food that's going through the food pantry. I think in your packet, we gave out last year 12,719 bags of food. Every month, we get through the Greater Boston Food Bank via Wellspring in Hull that between 3,000 and 4,000 pounds of protein, meat, chicken, fish, and other things that we now are giving out, which is a huge benefit to our folks that are accessing our services. And obviously, we need the space to process that, clean it, package it, and distribute it. I know there's a concern about parking, and I think I also included in your packet an Excel spreadsheet of people coming. They are only allowed to come to the pantry twice a month to access the services. So distribution over the month, you're averaging about 10 to 12 people on the property in addition to our volunteers. The Unitarian Church across the street has also given us a letter, which is also in your package, that would allow our volunteer base to park across the street to alleviate the situation for the parking. I've been in the basement in the cafeteria, and to get it up and operational, it would take a good cleaning, which we could probably get a volunteer group to do, but it would obviously need demising for locks, and it would also need an operational bathroom and one of the lifts that are presently there to be operational. So I'd like to have the Board of Selectmen consider that request, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So thank you for putting the request in. I read it, and I'm like, oh my God, this is, what a great idea. And then as I started thinking more, I'm like, well, what about this and what about that? And we'll open that up in a second. Beforehand, the numbers that you presented to us, and we all read the material, staggering. You know, we all support the, the effort so much, and we know what a great job you do and what a great, you know, support system it is for the town. You know, the problem is the building, and how long is it going to be there, and what do you put money in, in a building that's, you know, something's going to happen with it in some period of time. I don't know if it's, you know, six months or 18 months or something, but we've got to do something with that building at some point in time. But I'll open it up and let people voice their concerns about it, and I think we'll probably have to think about it a little bit, because I think it's more than just picking up and moving into a building, because the building, it's not insulated, doesn't leak, I mean, it leaks, it's not zoned well, so it's not like you can just cordon off one area and make that active. And, you know, it's, it's in disrepair, which is why we moved the school from there. So, but overall, I thought it was a great, great idea. Does anyone else want to, to piggyback there, or...
Yeah, I will. I certainly agree with Tony in every respect that it is a much-needed service, and clearly, just from the sounds of it, you're in very inadequate space. But I too am concerned about what, what are we doing with that building? And the last thing I'd want to do to the food pantry is to move you out, and then in six months or a year, say, sorry, you got to go. And so I would rather that, and I know we keep saying that we're going to look at the building and figure out what to do with it. I think once we've established what we think we might do with it, then what I would like to think is, is that there may be room for the food pantry, depending on what the use is. So, and again, I agree, I don't want to put money into something, and if an elevator sounds like no big deal, it is a big deal, and so, or the stair, the lift, whatever it is. So I, I appreciate the request. I agree, we need to talk about it further, and I thank you for all the work you do.
Just if I could, the lift is working. There is an operable lift in there, so we don't have to spend any money on the lift. That's only working.
Well, that's good news.
Maureen?
Those are some of my questions, just, you know, with things that need to be fixed that are on our dime, if you will. So the handicap access, one would, a lift would be, need to be made operational. So you're saying that that comment is a non-issue? But then, you know, where do we have all the money allocated to renovate the bathroom? That needs to be renovated?
I don't think it needs a lot of renovation. I mean, I've talked to Kevin Kelly about this. He doesn't think there's any major obstacles to this. He actually likes the idea of someone being in the building, because with no one in the building, if a pipe breaks or something happens, we don't know about it until it's flooding out the back door. So he actually likes the idea of having someone in the building. We will have to do some work setting up so that they're cut off from the rest of the building, and we had talked to the food pantry about that, and they would raise the funds to do that, so we wouldn't have to pay for it, because we don't want people getting up on the second and the third floor.
How would they, how would they access the building? During construction?
During construction, they'll have to come in through the back of the A wing and then down the hallway. It's, it's just going to be a little problem during construction, but are they going to take a while before they get in there?
That was my next question. What's your timing look like?
I would defer to whenever I would speak to Kevin Kelly and work with him and get the memorandum of...
Do you have a date that you have to be out of the Masonic Temple?
No, we do not.
You've just outgrown it.
No, we have 120-day notice period on our present arrangement with the Masons. We have our big post office food drive in May and Mother's Day weekend where we get all, the majority of our stable canned goods in for the year. I would like to not move that twice.
Yeah, understood.
We, they do have to go to the planning board. It's part of the conditions for the senior center, they have to go back to the planning board and get approval to go into the building. I wanted them to come to this board first before they went to the planning board. But if you've been in the Masonic Temple, I went in there to see, because it seemed to me like it was a great spot, really not handicap accessible, they don't have sufficient freezer space, and their storage is in the attic on the third floor, which has no heat, no electricity, and really is not real safe for volunteers to be walking up and down, lugging big boxes of food. I think, I think they understand, Jane understands, that this could be temporary, that when we decide what we're going to do with this building, but in terms of a timeline, the board has to decide what we want to do. Would have to go to the fall town meeting then to get some sort of funds to determine what's it going to cost, how we're going to do it, hire something, again, depending on what we want to do.
Let's, do you have, do you want to keep going?
No, I'm good right now. I, I, no, go ahead, you can move along.
It's just with the town meeting process, did it be a long time before we were actually doing something with that building that would impact the food pantry?
But not for them to move in.
Not for them to move in, no, I'm saying if they moved in, it was going to be probably at least two years before you would be in a position where they might have to move out, probably longer than that.
And that would give us the time to mount a capital campaign to do something of our own, which we are financially taking steps to do anyway. So I know it's temporary.
Karen?
A couple of things, I think Maureen, Karen covered a bunch. Question for Jim, the impact on insuring that building, I'm going to think it would be favorable.
I'm sure it does.
Well, there is someone in the building, so we're not ensuring it has an empty building. We do have some facilities people in there, but...
And I know, obviously, the kitchen's there, but is, there's also a kitchen in the A wing isn't there?
It's not really a kitchen, it's an old, basically the old home ec classroom. It's stoves and a couple, you know, home refrigerators, not what they're looking for.
We don't cook.
I know you don't cook, that's why I'm wondering, we know we're, we're using A wing already for the rec department. I haven't been in there, I'm just throwing this out, that I would, personally, I am concerned about what my colleagues have already mentioned, about the costs, the unknown costs that we all know are going to be incurred.
The handicap accessibility in the A wing is worse than the handicap accessibility in the B wing. I am not allowing anything, those rooms you're talking about on the second floor, I'm not allowing rec or anybody to move into those second floor rooms until, one, we get a better idea of what we're doing with the building, and two, more importantly, we get that elevator and the gym area, which would make access to that floor relatively easy.
So theoretically...
Theoretically, there are right now, I want to say, six classrooms on the second floor that are really just storage at this point. We did set one up at, at one point, made sure that the stoves and things were working, that the DPW could go there during a long storm and use the stoves and cook and kind of have a place to go and get out of the weather, that's not just trucks and equipment and things like that. But aside from that, Maureen Clancy wanted to move some stuff up there, I said, not until, you know, you can't keep filling up that building until we know what we want to do with it, and the handicap accessibility up there is, is awful.
So one more thing, Mr. Chair. So tonight, we're being asked to just agree to start a conversation about a memorandum of understanding. And I think we've all have a lot of open questions about this and reservations. I feel better having had this conversation about it. But I, it's important to me that we don't incur costs that we're going to, you know, potentially tear down or put you in a position where you're going to have to bounce around. So I think we have, I, I'm comfortable with continuing the conversation, but I want you guys to understand where the, the concerns are. And I know the building well, where you are, my mother-in-law volunteered it for 10 years, and it, we need to find you a home, but I'm not 100% sure that this is the right place, so that's where I'm coming from.
Couldn't agree more. It's the best place in town, this one or any other elementary school. Instead of, instead of trying to find reasons why maybe not to allow them to, or, or, let's think of reasons to help her get this program up and going. Started out in a closet in the Masonic Temple, so anything's better than that.
No, 78 it was a closet. I don't know whether it was at the Masonic Temple.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, but well, in a closet, so anything's better than that. I don't think we'd have to hardly do anything. So other than the fact that there's construction going on, you're really going to have to be careful about that. Other than that, any, any way we can get this up and running is perfect. Great use. Talk about using the school, Jim said it best, or Kevin said it best, anything, an automobile letting it sit is the worst thing for it, this building, the more people use it, the better. It would help towards our insurance of, I know...
We have to maintain the heat, we have to maintain the electricity.
Have to do that anyway.
So that's already on, we'd turn it up a little bit, but not, you know, they're going to be a little chilly down there. The only additional cost that they would add would be, would turn the freezers back on. We left the walk-in fridge and the walk-in freezers down there. So whatever the nominal electricity cost of those would be, we could add it to what we're spending up there.
It's great.
The only thing I'd add, I, I agree with Karen Canfield's... The only thing I'd add, I, I agree with Karen Canfield's idea, I think we, I think the town should be able to find some space somewhere. But from the stories I hear of the B Wing, when it rains, there's just water pouring into the building. You know, I hear that it's not in usable shape. And that's the concern that I have. I love the idea of the A Wing. You know, that's a building that we're trying to keep, that we need the space for, that we, we maybe could invest in that area, but not, I'm, you know, I'm hesitant to invest in the B Wing because we don't, we don't know what's going on with it, and it is in such bad shape. But, you know, the elevator that Jim mentioned, that's going to be going in shortly. It's part of a project that's already been funded and is on, on the short list of getting done, so, um, so that's my concern with that building. But I do think we should keep talking about it and maybe talk to Kevin Kelly and find out what is the real condition of the building and find some space. I mean, it's a huge building, there's got to be space in there for, you know, for such a good entity. Sean?
So, you want to use the kitchen, that's in the B Wing?
I don't want to use it.
No, well, that, that area, in the B Wing.
That area, yes.
That's a historic area.
I just need water.
And if I thought if anything stood.
Then freezer and refrigerator.
Yes, I would use the freezer.
That's why they're, that's why they want to be in the cafeteria area because.
Right, but that's.
That's where, there's nothing else in the kitchen, we, we sold all the kitchen equipment, it's all gone except the.
But that, that's a historic area, and if anything was to get, anything besides the C-Wing were to get lopped off, it would be the A-Wing.
Yeah, I mean, I, the real historic area of that school is actually just that front piece, not that, that's part of the wings, so that's really not within the historic area.
Cafeteria's right, straight below the front door.
Kind of half and half, part of it because of, part of it because of.
You've been there.
The grate change is right outside the cafeteria.
Right.
It goes up and down right outside there, so it's right.
Oh, there are definitely challenges with the grate, for sure.
Right, okay. Nancy?
So, the auction, I've spent many unhappy hours at Old Gates of Lake, many, many unhappy hours in Old Gates of Lake. Currently, the cafeteria is filled to the rafters with all of the auction stuff that we're auctioning. So, that may or may not get picked up depending on who people purchased it. So, there is no floor space whatsoever in the cafeteria. To Jim's point, we sold all the equipment out of the kitchen, so the kitchen's nice and empty except for the wires coming up from the ground, from the stuff that was disconnected, and there's no running water in the kitchen, we had to have it shut off because someone hit a pipe. I don't know if Kevin's aware of that, he probably is not, because it occurred recently when it reported to fully come back. So, there are some issues in the immediate that would have to be dealt with if anything were to go on.
Chris?
Chris Carsha, 119 Stockbridge Road. I'm a former member over from the lodge, and I work directly with the food pantry, helping them kind of expand their footprint in the lodge. I'm out now, but their need was far exceeded what we could do at the lodge years ago, and it's only increased since then. The stories that she's talking about, what she's storing on the third floor, they weren't supposed to store up there, and it just, it grew that much that it went that far. Barbara Stiegler brought this idea up to me three, four, four years ago, and, you know, when the gates was first, that month coming down, and I, it was a great idea. I think it's something that we should look into, definitely. They, they outgrew that space a long time ago, and it is definitely not handicap accessible over there. So, I mean, I'm, I'd love to see it happen.
Hey, Kelly, 404 Holly Road. Just throwing this out there, the senior center's going to be moving the new building, why not use the old senior center? It's handicap accessible and has a kitchen.
Yeah, Marla brought that up, or somebody brought that up a couple minutes ago. Yeah, I think, I think we all, I don't know if that's the right answer or not, but I think we just need to think about it a little bit more, get a little bit more information and, and further discussions. But I think we support your need in trying to find a place for it, whether that's the right place or not, I don't know the answer yet, it may be, you know.
Okay.
Any other comments, or why don't we?
Yeah, I just want to say that I didn't read the motion, so I wasn't aware of the fact that we were voting to draft a memo of understanding, so clearly, if there comes to be a memo of understanding, then we can vote on it. But right now, we have questions that I think would be answered in that memorandum.
And my point to Jane was, you need to get the Board of Selecting's blessing before you go to the planning board to get.
Right.
Permission to go in there. But just to answer one other question, I mean, I remember Jane and other members of the, the Food Pantry Board of Directors, or I'm not sure what you call them, looking for something else the town could do. What building do we have that's available? Pier 44, the kitchen stuff's all gone, it floods, we actually do use it for a lot of things, so that was kind of off the table. The WPA building is not big enough, really not handicap accessible, and the board is well aware of the issues we had, just trying to find parcels to swap for the Ellis property, never mind a parcel that would be big enough, dry, and buildable that we would, you know, potentially make available. We just don't have anything like that, that we could say, here, here's something that, that we could give to you. So, this was about what we had left when I looked at our inventory. That's how we ended up there.
One last comment, Anne?
Anne, goodbye. Jen, Anne, Chris, Paul. I have to say, I agree with Sean. I think we really need to think about how we can make this work, rather than thinking about what could cost me standing this way. We could work this out if we all put our minds together and make it work, because it is in incredible need, so that if you can just say, okay, go to the planning board and talk to the planning board, and then see what happens. I think that between Jim and Kelly, they can figure it out and we can make it work. I think it's just too important to let it go.
Okay, thanks.
I'll go with Kevin tomorrow because he's going to be at the senior COA meeting. We'll go in there tomorrow and look at what needs to be done, tell them what a cost to it. Again, the senior center, oh, sorry, the food pantry, it said, you know, any cost that we had to associate with making it available for them, they would actually pick out. So, we'll go in there tomorrow and say, all right, we can do this, we can do that.
I think we want you to look at the A-Wing also and see if there's space there.
I know there's not on the first floor, I know the first floor is used by recreation, the entire first floor.
So, let's see what, what the second floor would be and when that elevator's going to be in place.
Yes, again, there is one on the second floor, the only issue with the second floor would be the refrigeration units. They would either have to get fridges and freezers off, store the stuff downstairs.
We have freezers.
And have someone walk it up, but it's definitely available, I've been up there, those rooms are available.
Okay. All right, so, let us, let us think about it for a little while and we'll get back to you within the next, you know, meeting or so.
Great, thanks so much.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. The next topic we're going to discuss are walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins here this evening?
There's none.
No walk-ins? Okay, now we're back on time. Next item is a discussion vote of a change in an all-alcoholic license. TK O'Malley's?
Yes, hi. Jeff DeLisi, I'm Robert DeLisi in Harris, I'm here with Jeannie Collins and Rich Lenahan behind me.
Want to come up if you do want?
Yeah. Okay, so, reason why we're here is just to kind of do some housekeeping with respect to our liquor license. The restaurant has been running under the name of McColsky, Inc., since 1994, and since that time, Kevin, excuse me, Walter Collins, has been the manager of the liquor license and the fiduciary of the company in the capacity of president, treasurer, secretary, and director. And Kevin, excuse me, Walter is stepping back, and we've already changed our corporate documents to insert Jeannie in Walter's place as president, treasurer, secretary, and director. We're also changing our corporate structure to insert your daughter.
Ellen.
Ellen as assistant treasurer. And Walter is also the manager of the liquor license, so Rich here has been with the operation for 25 years, he's been the general manager, he's run the business in pretty much all respects. He is pretty much the point person since, since Walter left the establishment, and so we're seeking to change the liquor manager to Point Rich. Rich is tip-certified and has, you know, worked in the bar staff and with the bar staff for many years. So, additionally, the third change, other than corporate structure, liquor manager, is we're seeking to change the hours of our Sunday operation so that we can do brunch and have a bar service during brunch. So, we're seeking to amend the hours on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. That's it.
That's it? Great, clearly we know you all very well, and we all have been to TK's many times, so we're familiar with Rich and, and the operation. One question I do have for Rain, the 10:00 a.m. change, is that consistent with the other?
Yes, well, some restaurants have committed change to 10:00 and some have not, like TK's is doing it now, but we have others that have.
We do?
Yes. There was an ABCC change a couple of years ago.
Great, any questions?
Nope. How soon for brunch?
Betty's there now?
I don't have any questions, no, no comments.
This is all kind of, I mean, other than the change of the liquor license, the rest of it is really just administrative stuff that corporately you're choosing to do, so.
Motion?
Yeah, can I have a motion?
Move to accept the change of the restaurant, all alcohol license manager, change of officers and directors, and the change of Sunday hours from 10:00 a.m. to 1 a, from, oh, Sunday hours, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. for.
No.
No, that's not right.
Those will be the new hours.
Yeah, your new hours would be from 10:00.
From 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.
To 10:00 a.m., yeah.
As opening.
She has to do the whole.
Have to do the whole span. Are you open till 1:00 a.m. in the morning on Sundays?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, so it is, right. Okay. And change the Sunday hours to 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. for McColsky, Inc. doing business as TK O'Malley's pending approval of the ABCC.
Second. Second, I'm Mr. Harris, further discussion? One quick, is that going to, is that continuing to be the name of the corporation?
Yeah, no change otherwise.
Okay.
The licensee will remain the same.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Make your Mother's Day reservations now.
Valentine's Day. So, the next item is a interview for the board, board and committees for the Shellfish Advisory Committee. And. Let me get that.
Alex.
How are you?
Good, thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
Does everyone have their books?
Yeah.
So, if you can start by telling us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be involved in this committee?
Yeah, of course, of course, thanks for making time. I know I missed the other window, so I appreciate your accommodating me. You know, basically, for me, this is a great opportunity to help the community and participate, volunteer some time, and the subject actually aligns with a lot of my interests. I'm an avid hiker, I know this area, especially the coastline extremely well, in the Glades area even. I've had a recreational license, I've actually had a lobster license here for a few years too. And I actually worked on something similar when I went after my MBA about 10 years ago with Skip DeBrusk, who sort of a town legend, wrote a book, et cetera, worked on some sustainable fishing efforts as part of a program there, found that really interesting too. You know, and my approach too, I believe in, you know, sustainable, you know, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, professionally too, you know, a balanced approach, compromise, you know, try and make something work. And I think there's even some more practical things I might be able to help with, because the existing regs could maybe use a little bit of help, and I'd be happy to help with that. You know, there's some gaps on things that are probably cryptic, maybe if you've done it for 100 years, you know what it means, but if you're new to it, it's pretty tough to figure out, like, there's no limit on oysters, like, it's not in the document, so there's some things like that we could all.
They're about a month old, so.
No, no, it's from 2011, actually.
Oh, oh, you're talking about the oysters?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So, this, this committee is more.
No, I know that.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Good, so what do you do now?
Sure, I'm an executive financial services company, but I've actually done a lot of different things. That's probably a not-so-interesting way to say that I try and reach a compromise. You know, we try and do things to help people. What my day-to-day work is helping people with their retirement, but I work with technology people and other people to help them. It's, it's a long, boring conversation, why do it work? So, I'm trying to do something interesting for the town, that's, that's what I'm trying to do.
Good. And any issues that you have with the, with the site in terms of any, you don't live over near there?
No, I live on 149 Clap Road, West End, but I actually, you know, real quick, I hike the coastline, that's actually a hobby of mine, and I would say I'm probably the most familiar person around. I've actually hiked every foot of Situate Coastline, Cohasset, et cetera, so, and I know the Glades area very well, I hike through there at least once every week or two. I was there a few days ago, you know, and looking what's there, and, you know, there were clams and mussels and even some oysters there, so it's a great spot. I think it's a very good use, because you really can't boat and navigate there, it's much too shallow, you know, and it's even really difficult to hike, to be honest, you know, if you're not willing to get a little wet, so, anyway. I'm, I'm very supportive of it, I think it's a great solution in a lot of ways, it helps the local fishing industry, could use the land, it's good for the environment too. Personally, I don't see any downsides.
So, I didn't say that to only get support of people on the board, I just wanted everyone to be aware of any interest that you had, you know.
I know, I know, open, there might be a problem with it, I think that's part of the advisory committee to explore that, there might be something, but at least from what I know, it's, I'm supportive for whatever that means.
Any questions, Marla?
Yeah, have you looked at any of the hearings that we've had over the past six months? The discussions?
Uh.
The discussions, painful discussions.
I have, I've found some of the high-level, it's a lot like what I deal with at work, what I would put into political. When I say that at work, it means something different, obviously this is true politics, so.
It is true politics.
Yeah, right, but no, it's, the minutia and how you have to work through some things was very familiar to me, and I know it's a complex issue too, and I think some of my work experience could help there.
I have a question.
Good question, thank you.
Sean?
During your day job, what did you just say, I was thumbing through your resume, you tried to make everyone happy, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, you know, if I had to say that, if, you know, if I was.
No, no, is that what you said?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, that's perfect. If you can do that, okay? Not only will you be on the board, you'll be the chair, okay?
I didn't say I was always successful.
Well, I mean, so, no, but seriously, I, I, I agree with you, and I first thought, heard of this a few years ago from Jamie Davenport, and I said, there won't be any, this is great, it's a win-win, everyone's going to love the idea.
I don't have any additional questions, just thank you for coming forward.
Karen?
Happy to.
So, I think you kind of answered it. So, you haven't had a chance to go to any of the advisory meetings yet?
I haven't made a meeting yet, correct.
But timing-wise, because it's pretty intense right now, trying to launch, you're, will you have the time to devote to it? That's a question we always ask.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually a good question. My company is actually supportive, right? So, for me, this is very interesting because they believe in some community involvement, and they've actually given me some flexibility and actually recommended to me to pursue things like this. So, for me, this is a win-win in a lot of different ways, but I understand the time commitment, but my employer's actually supportive of that.
Just like yours. Yes? Do you have, do you have an idea of what the committee's gonna be doing, say, for the next six months? Because they're full speed ahead, you know, we're talking about stuff in a couple hours tonight.
Yep.
Are you aware of...
No, not the details. Yeah, I have the high-level and some of what I've gathered from other pieces, but it's a little abstract to maybe pull it together and...
So, there's gonna be a little bit of catch-up work for whoever gets on the board, you know? They created regulations, now we're trying to get a pilot program together, and then the next step of it is, is really being the advisory committee to kind of look at the applicants and kind of pre-vet them and then send them over to us for us to look at things and select the people that will be on the pilot.
Sure, sure, sure.
So, that's, it's kind of past the research stage and more into the action stage.
Yeah, you're in the early execution. Let's test it out, let's work out the kinks and manage it through that process. Yes, makes perfect sense.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, just to be aware that 9:30 tonight, that's the, because we'll be right on time. We will be discussing the proposed pilot program and the application criteria, so...
Is it okay to sit on that? Like, is that...
Absolutely.
I don't understand when you can be...
That's why I'm mentioning it.
Okay, all right. I thought so. Thank you for that.
So, this is a public meeting, and all of your meetings will be public meetings also, and you can hang around?
Great.
Great, and we'll decide this. Are we voting this tonight, or is this...
It's only agenda vote tonight.
Okay, so we may even vote this spot tonight as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the chairman of the Shelter Advisory did make us know she wanted to be here tonight. She will be here later, but she got stuck at work, so she was sorry to miss meeting.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for Alex.
Yes. Okay, so the next item for discussion is discussion vote for the special event for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Ed Kelly?
We have a parade?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Ed, how are you?
Doing fine. How are you doing?
Good. Tell us what you want to do.
Well, I'd like the town's permission to put on a parade.
How can we say no to that?
Good, we're good.
What kind of parade? St. Patrick's Day, tell the thousands of people watching, a little bit of background.
They usually are, yes.
So, Sunday?
March 15th.
March 15th. Same route, same...
Everything's the same, except for the setup will be a little bit different because we don't have the front driveway and the gates again, so we're gonna probably have to set up partially on First Parish, which shouldn't be a problem because it's pretty much blocked off anyway, so...
On First Parish?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, right, right. Or you could go down towards Central.
Central, yeah.
Well, we already use Central and Cudworth Road now for setup, so we're gonna have probably some of the units that were typically on the driveway. We can put a few in the driveway now.
Back 'em in, yeah.
Back 'em in, yeah, and then the rest we'll just put on First Parish Road. I'll have as little as possible on First Parish. I'll extend both gates, I mean, Cudworth Road and Central Park may not need to use at all, but in case we do, we may, you know, we'll have to wait and see when it gets closer and see how many units we have in the parade this year, so...
And have you met with all the...
I have.
...leaves of fire?
Yes.
Did they have any concerns?
No, because everything's basically the same as it's always been, so...
Sounds good.
Karen, any questions?
No, well, oil machine, as far as I can tell, so...
More?
No.
Karen?
So, you see the cards I gave you, that's all the upcoming events that we have for the parade.
Yes.
Hopefully, everybody in town will support us, we can raise enough money to pay for the parade, so...
Great.
What year is this, how many...
Everything is available. All our information about all these current events are on our weloveaparade.com.
Good plug. How many years is this, Ed?
Twenty-two.
I thought so. Same as Betty.
Yeah, but I'm not retiring. Yet.
Is there any space in, do you think, in front of the, would it be possible if there was an information table about the senior center up near the staging area? Is that, is it gonna be too crowded? I'm just thinking that with the fencing up, people are gonna be curious.
Should be a sign, the construction sign should be up by that.
Oh, that's right. That'll be on First Parish, right?
When I send out the emails to all the groups that come, they'll be notified that there are construction fence up there and that to come in from a certain area, when they do come into the school, because we will be using that, obviously, for the marchers to get coffee and donuts and keep warm if it is cold, and typically it is.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we're...
Yeah, we'll have plenty of signage for that, so this should be fine.
Sean?
No. Well, some of these events look new, though. That's, I think, is a great idea and...
Yeah, the game night, which we're having this coming Saturday night at St. Mary's, it'll be, it's free to come in, we have, you pay for the games if you want to play, and we take a percentage of the games they play, and there'll be other games that doesn't cost them anything, you know, like, we'll have Jenga and Scrabble and cornhole and some raffles going on, and so it should be a fun night.
Great. So, the only thing I'd add is, as Ed mentioned, it costs a lot of money to have a parade, so they've added some events here, Sean, you know, mentioned, so the fundraising is key, so everyone that's watching, you know, please participate if you can and realize that all those bands and all those everything costs money.
Costs a lot of money, yeah. Costs over $50,000 to put this on, so...
Jim, Lorraine, did you guys have anything, or is this... Great. All right, can I have a motion?
Move to approve a special event permit for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 15, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Second?
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thanks.
All right. I'm gonna continue to stay here because I'm with the veterans coming in next.
Oh, good, very good.
Right. Why doesn't the Veterans Committee come up? Kim?
You can have the center seat. You're in charge.
Good evening, everyone.
Kim, how are you?
Good. How's everybody doing?
Doing great.
Good. Thank you for our agenda time tonight. We will try to keep it brief. We wanted to come before you to sort of reintroduce ourselves as the new Veterans Advisory Council. We've been meeting since October of last year. We have three sort of simple main goals, collaboration, recognition, and outreach. I'm gonna keep it simple for tonight, but those are our main, our main goals. We've been having some joint meetings with the Legion, which is kind of exciting. Some of the Legion members are here, Steve Litchfield and Bob Callahan, and we're planning on meeting with other veterans groups as well, because there's no reason that we should all be in silos. We should all be trying to work together. So, I'll let the council members that are here introduce themselves. I'm Kim Stewart. I'm a civilian member of the council.
Joe Kelly, member of the council?
Ed Kelly.
No relation.
No relation, member of the council.
And Aubrey Joyce, also a member of the council? Sarah Jensen, honorary.
Honorary member. Sarah Jensen and Corey Nagel have been coming to the meetings to help us, so it's been really great. As you can see, it's got a little bit of a different face, and we're trying to be very positive and in the spirit of working together. So, we also have two members that are missing, Ed Hanafin, who is a Navy veteran, and Kevin Norton, you might be familiar with him, he's an Army veteran, he's missing tonight as well. So, I'll turn it over now to...
Don Knapp is also...
Oh, Don Knapp is here, yeah. No...
No, he's not here. He goes to the meetings.
Yes, he comes to the meetings. I'll turn it over to Joe. He's gonna talk to you a little bit about two of the initiatives that we've been working on.
Yeah, I'd like to start off with the Purple Heart signs.
Thank you.
The proposal is to place three Purple Hearts in the main entrances of Situate, Purple Heart signs. 3A, Marshfield Side, North Situate, and then down 123. And again, a lot of folks don't really understand what the Purple Heart is all about, so I'll just read a brief thing about it. Being wounded or killed in any action against an enemy of the United States or as a result of an act of an enemy such as opposing armed forces. So, that's basically what a Purple Heart is. My son was awarded a Purple Heart. And again, there's, just to give you a couple of numbers here, the information that I have goes back as far as, they don't go back any further than 2010, June of 2010, in dealing with the most recent wars. Afghanistan, there were 7,027 Purple Hearts awarded in Afghanistan, of which my son received one of them. The Iraqi War, 35,321 Purple Hearts were issued. Since World War I, a total of 1,910,000 Purple Hearts were issued. So, what that tells me is all gave some and some gave all. And it's nice to see that our town is willing to recognize that. And just to give you another example of what's going on as far as what our mission is, is about 12 years ago, the Reeds Across America was introduced to Situate. And one of the biggest reasons was to create awareness of what's going on with our veterans. Now, the mission for Reeds Across America, which we are adopting and carrying it forward with the Purple Heart signs and the chair, and I'll get involved in the chair in a minute, but Reeds Across America is to remember our fallen U.S. veterans, honor those who serve, and the big one, teach your children the value of freedom. That's the mission. And we have adopted that mission, believe it or not, because of the Reeds Across America 12 years ago, and we want to continue that mission. Sometimes us as humans need symbols to keep us remembering these sorts of things. One of the symbols certainly could be the Purple Heart sign. The other symbol, and it brings me right into the chair, would be the...
Mr. Kelly, can we, let's see if we have any questions on the sign first, then we'll go right there. Does anyone, I just had, well, anyone else have, anyone have a question? My quick question is just what, what does the symbol mean, like, technically? Does it mean that there's a Purple Heart soldier in our town, or does it just mean that we recognize it as a town?
Well, there are definitely Purple Heart soldiers...
Right, right.
...living in, passed away, okay, in our town.
What does the sign mean? Does it mean both of those or one of those, or...
Inclusive.
Inclusive, okay.
Right. And again, that, George Washington was the one that introduced the Purple Heart, and it just cap, carried forward. So, you know, I'm reading some, almost 2 million Purple Hearts that were issued since World War I, that goes beyond World War I, with the Revolutionary War and all that sort of a thing, so it's a big, big deal. Now, what Situate has to do, what you folks need to do, is sign a proclamation, a what, you know, allowing that Purple Heart sign to be in Situate. And the reason for that is there's a Purple Heart Society, they're serious, serious people, okay, that would like that proclamation. There's no ruling that they, you gotta have it done or you can't have a sign hung, there's none of that, but what we want is we want Situate to be recognized through the society, okay, because there is a Purple Road, Purple Heart Road Society from Virginia forward. So far, there's 45 states that have adopted the Purple Heart Trail, and we want to be part of that.
Great. And just, what's the, what's the sign look like? Is it big? Is it small? Is it...
Kim has it. Oh, here it is. It looks something like this. It looks like 18 inches by 24. The only thing I would suggest we consider doing is removing the word "town" and putting "community."
Yeah.
Purple Heart Community, Situate, Mass., as opposed to town. We know we're a town.
I agree. Yeah. Community's nice.
So, it's gonna look like that, that coloring in the actual metal itself on the sign.
Two feet by foot and a half.
Right.
It's about the size of the Sister Cities sign.
Any questions on the...
Like a speed limit sign?
No, well, we're doing...
Great. All right, continue.
Okay, so, the next step would be is for you folks to sign a proclamation. I believe you have it.
I believe you signed it.
We'll get to that.
Okay. Now, if we want to carry that a little bit further, matter of fact, Needham, the town of Needham, did it this week. They were in the State House, and they had their proclamation, added a resolution to that proclamation by the legislative body at the State House. So, we could do that with ceremony and all that sort of a thing at some point in the future.
Great.
Okay.
The second step.
The next thing we want, we propose is, is the Chair of Honor, okay, and to kind of take advantage of the stadium, the brand-new stadium that was built at the high school. Most stadiums have a Chair of Honor, from Gillette Stadium all the way to a lot of the cities and towns. I think it would be appropriate, again, going by that mission, and I think that the teaching part of that mission, you know, teach your children the value of freedom, couldn't be in a better place than the school. Because people are gonna ask questions about the chair. What is that chair all about? What does it signify? What does it mean? It's gonna be away from its, nobody can sit in it. It's gonna be sanctioned off with flags and that sort of a thing. We would like to have a ceremony to, you know, show that chair, and the Rolling Thunder Group actually performs the ceremony if we want them to. They're our local Patriot Guard folks. They usually come to fallen heroes' funerals, okay, and they stand there with flags and all that sort of a thing. We could have them come. We're looking for maybe Memorial Day would probably be the most appropriate time to unveil that chair. We didn't order the chair yet, and obviously, until we get your approval.
We initially thought the school committee was in charge of the stadium.
Yeah.
I'm sure they supported as well.
Oh, yeah, they loved it.
They did.
They're all nodding in the back.
They told us to come and speak with you, and we've had a conversation with Mr. Bedrow as well.
Questions about the chair?
You answered the question. I said, "Does anyone sit in it?" The answer is no. No.
It's similar to the chair down the end of the hall.
There's one at the hall.
One down the hall.
Do we have an appropriate location that you could sign?
We've looked at a couple. I went over there with Mark Novak. We looked at a couple. Once you do this, we'll go over there with the veterans and find a spot to put it. There's a couple places that would be appropriate.
Would it go up by the press box?
No, we were thinking either right, the stadium's facing the field this way, right next to the stairs where you go up is a very visible traffic area, or we looked at some of the areas in the front where there's handicap seating, wheelchair seating, we could take up a little bit of that space and put it there in an area where everybody has to, almost everybody has to walk by it.
See it.
So, we wanted to try to find a real visible place to put it.
That makes more sense.
Well, by the press box, yeah, we, it's just no one would see it. Only people going to the press box would see it.
Right, no, it's better for it to be seen.
No, it's better for it to be seen.
And we'll look maybe down by the, the amenities building, but I don't think there's really a spot there that works out.
How would you install it so no one could sit in it if they just didn't know better? I mean, would you have it up too high for them to sit in or covered in?
It's cordoned off.
Okay. Didn't know if it'd be. No, I know that, but people are just little kids and, yeah.
More?
Will everything be ready Memorial Day to do, to have the chair there and dedicate it and?
I hope so. It's end of May. I'm hoping the whole, hoping the whole thing's done by the end of May. But that stadium should be done. I mean, the goal is to have that stadium open for the spring sports.
Okay. So, were you looking to move the entire ceremony there for this particular, or are we going down to the common and back here? What are your thoughts?
Thank you, Hesse.
So, so what we talked about was starting it here. So, you have the parking for everybody, too. That's gonna be in the parade. So, we started here early in the morning. The Rolling Thunder comes out. We do the presentation. And then that leads right into the parade all the way out.
That's a good idea.
That sounds good. I'm just curious.
We haven't changed too much.
Yeah.
We, we talked about, so that's when everybody's here. I mean, the veterans are here, the kids are here. So, you can just start early, do it here, and then walk right out the street. As part of your regular Memorial Day.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Great. Great. Well, I don't have any questions on that. I think it's a great idea. So, do we have a motion to? Did you have anything else, Kim, or you?
We just had, if you would indulge us for one more minute. Ed Kelly's gonna speak to you about our free informational breakfast at the Senior Center on February 26th.
Yeah. So, one of the things we would like to do is we want to introduce ourselves to the veterans and the fam, veterans' families in the town. So, we're putting together a breakfast, February 26th, at the Senior Center. So, all of us will be there to field questions from the veterans, to tell them about different services and stuff that they're eligible to receive as a veteran and so on and so forth. So, anyone that's listening to us tonight, if they know of a veteran or they are a veteran, contact the Senior Center and reserve a seat to come down for breakfast and meet us and learn about what we can do for you. And then tell us what needs they have, so on and so forth.
What day is that starting?
It's Wednesday, the 26th.
And they call the Senior Center for information?
At the Senior Center, yes. To make reservations.
So, Lorraine, can we put that on the website?
Sure, sure, Kelly. Yeah, I was gonna send something to.
Did you have anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Can I have a motion for the two? Well, do you have to read, do I have to read the proclamation first or?
I think we can move and then, and then read.
So, let's do the motion and then you can read. Motion first for the chair and the Purple Heart Community.
Move to.
Yeah, we got them. Go ahead, Karen.
Move to approve the installation of the Chair of Honor at the new football stadium to be coordinated with Jim Bedrow.
Second. Second, my Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Move to name the town of Situate a Purple Heart Community and observe Purple Heart Day annually on August 7th.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
We have one more motion on cost.
Okay.
Move to approve the purchase and installation of three signs, signs naming Situate a Purple Heart Town.
Second.
We have a social community, right?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Lorraine.
I think that sounds good.
I, I agree. Do we have to discuss that? All right, so, a Situate Purple Heart Community.
Second. Second, my Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. And then, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Clerk, I have the honor of reading this proclamation. The town of Situate, Purple Heart Community Proclamation. Whereas the people of the town of Situate have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly, selflessly served their country and this community in the United States Armed Forces for the good of all. And whereas contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Situate who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas citizens of our community have been wounded or killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have been awarded the Purple Heart. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in present use and was created as the badge of military merit on August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York by General George Washington. Initially, it was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word "merit" sewn upon it. And whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day, and now therefore be it proclaimed, we, the Board, Situate Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town of Situate, go on record to hereby proclaim Situate, Massachusetts, a Purple Heart Community honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform that were wounded or killed while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Also be it proclaimed, we, the town of Situate, will recognize August 7th annually as Purple Heart Day and urge the people and the organizations in Situate to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients. Sign this day on February 4th, 2020 by the Board of Selectmen of the town of Situate.
Very good. Well, thank you guys for coming in and thank you for all the progress.
One last thank you. Lorraine Devon is a rock star. We already know that.
Thank you for all of that work. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Let's exit the budgets if you want to.
Nice to be seen.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you. I mean, you guys got so much done. It's such a shame.
Why, good to see you. You're welcome.
Could I stand up here?
To be told what I'm saying.
What are you doing first?
I'm already tired.
Thank you so much. I mean, he's a native.
Yeah, just call Katie.
Okay, thank you.
Karen?
Just right around. This is good. I'll have us out of here by 12:00.
Okay. Guys, ready? All right, so the first budget this evening is Conservation and Coastal Resources. Me, how are you?
Great. How are you tonight?
Great. So, the way we'll do this is you can start off by giving us just a quick synopsis and tell us some of your high points and what your goals are for next year. And then we'll go into the numbers. So, I don't know how you want to break it.
Okay, well.
You know, it's kind of documented in your.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that it's pretty straightforward. It's pretty much the same as it was last year. I think you guys know what we do. So, we administer and enforce the Wetlands Protection Act and, and the Situate Conservation Bylaw. So, with that, we permit anything that comes in within our jurisdiction. So, that's the majority of what we do. But we also are responsible for quite a lot of land management tasks as well. We oversee projects of our open space. Anyway, so we work together with Planning and Building Department and get everything done.
Are there any particular things that you're looking for this next upcoming fiscal year? Or just keep your head above water?
Yeah, our budget's pretty straightforward. We're pretty pared down. So, it's salaries and office supplies for the office.
Yep.
So, it's level funding.
I was thinking more task-oriented if there was a project that you thought you're gonna be paying a heck of a lot more attention to or no?
Not one particular project. I mean, we have a lot of projects that are in the process of construction right now. Probably seen them around town to keep us pretty busy. New big projects, not so much, but we hear talk about new big projects, although we're kept busy with all the projects in between, too. So, you know, we have single-family homes, all the coastal projects. We've got our Big Toll Brother projects. We have our coastal projects such as revetment rebuilds, North-South River dredging, Dog Park. I mean, these were, these were under accomplishments, so they're not necessarily underway right now. Working with DPW on a lot of their projects for fourshore protection and water supply projects such as Tack Factory Pond, well 17A, that was one of our projects. We have a lot going on. There's not any shortage of work at all. So, that's nice. We also have, you know, the big things that Kyle's working on that he'll get into. The CRS is, is up this year for one of its big, big milestones. And, yeah, so we, we're busy. And it's, it's not looking for much other than salaries and a little bit of money to run the office.
So, I'll run through the numbers real quick. The actuals for 2019 were 193,000. The budget for '20 was $212,000. And this year, the recommended budget is two, excuse me, $216,000. As you said, the majority, if not 97%, is salaries. Oh, I read.
No, I'm just.
I thought you were trying to give me a hint.
No, I wasn't. Just tapping, sorry.
And, and there's really not much else to the budget. So, it's a less than a 2% increase. And like you said, it's mostly salaries, so. Any questions on the numbers?
I don't have a question on the numbers, but I have a question on the resources. So, I guess that ties into the numbers. You write that, you know, Amy, one of your biggest challenges are, A, backlog of applications and enforcement. And, you know, what kind of help do you need with enforcement? Because I find it incredibly frustrating that everybody takes a lot of time to review plans, regulate, and then a lot of times, some developers just walk, walk out of here and, and don't pay attention to any of those regs that everybody has set forth, so.
Right. So, I, I mean, I think it all comes down to the boots on the ground. You know, I try to get out there as much as I can, and I think we all do. You know, so it's just being able to juggle the, the deadlines and the timelines that were mandated to achieve each cycle and then also getting out there on a regular basis. But if, if there was additional staff for construction oversight, that would, that would be helpful for sure. And that would tie into enforcement, yes.
Karen?
That's, it's the same question. I was going the same place. So, the part-time assistants, which I assume that's what the 2018 was, was somebody to, I don't recall why that, was it just a budget question of why that position was, or that position was eliminated?
A couple of reasons. One, it was a budget issue. Two, it was originally kept because we were transitioning Amy into the department.
Okay.
You'd been here for over a year at that point, so I didn't think that transition was necessary, so it was actually both those things.
It was support. And we also, okay. Yeah, I agree that that's, that is challenging and frustrating because the rules and regs are critical to our watershed and to protecting our open space, so.
Can we take a look at that? You know how we usually look at all the budgets and at the end, if there's any adjustment anywhere? I'd like to.
Is that the kind of position you can get somebody like a, you know, a per diem kind of spec?
Yes.
Person to help with?
Yes.
Jim, can you just note that in your per diem?
Yes, he's noted it.
Nancy?
Nancy's just right in her head.
Good point. Yeah, so, and as Moore mentioned, at the end of the budget, we look at all of them and we say, okay, what are our thoughts? And, you know.
Can we?
Especially as, as Karen mentioned, per diem-type positions where it's not, you know, long-term.
Yeah, sometimes we can, we can build that service into that project itself, into the orders. You know, for instance, on our trails projects that we're doing out in the West End right now, we do have a construction monitor out there, which is part of the contract. So, that's helpful.
And Toll has that as well, right?
And Toll has that as well, yes.
Didn't we hire the trail project person?
Yes.
Yeah, that's almost done, aren't they? I have a question related to that. Is it, how are the fines set? The fines for violations? And how do they escalate? And is it possible to be able to pay for the person who would be doing the monitoring and the enforcement, for them to cover the costs of their? I, I don't know the answer. That's why I'm asking the question, so.
Yeah, all right. So, for conservation, our fines are built into the general bylaw. So, the Situate Wetland bylaws in the general bylaw. And we actually, we do have the ability to fine per offense per day. And, you know, it, it, you have less of a fine if it's a first-time offense.
Right.
And as it, you know, do it more, we can fine you more. But the funds actually go, my understanding, this is a Nancy question, the funds go to the general fund. So, it doesn't go into the conservation budget. It's actually, it's to civil citation that we issue through the police department. And when they pay, I believe it goes right into general funds.
Well, but if that money for the fines goes into the general budget, wouldn't we have some ability to take some of the general budget and add to the conservation budget in order to enforce some of these things? I personally find it frustrating to think that we, you know, we issue fines or we, we set fines for various things and then don't collect them and don't enforce them. So, what's the point? You can have a million-dollar fine, but if you're not gonna enforce it and collect it, why do you have one?
Right. Because if they, if they don't pay, it actually, it's a court case. So, then you're in criminal court in Hangum.
But you'd like to not get to that point.
You're, you're hoping it doesn't get to that point. That's right.
But giving them additional staff doesn't have anything to do with collecting the fines.
No, no. I think Karen's saying we don't, we do have some enforcement, but we just don't have as much as I think the board thinks that there should be, that maybe, you know, some, some other stuff could be added to that, so.
Yeah, well, and I think that.
But I don't want you to think that there's none. Obviously, you guys are out there.
I know there's not none, but.
Yeah, but maybe not enough.
The current commission, my perception is that they are definitely going in that direction for penalty-based enforcement. You know, so, so that's the direction that they are giving me more often. Although the state, their philosophy with Wetlands enforcement is to try to work it out with the case so that you're gonna get a better response if it's an amicable solution. You know what I mean? It's like, oh, I didn't know that was wrong.
I think that's clear in all these types of situations, that it's better to be, come to an amicable, amicable agreement. But when it doesn't happen, and I know there are a few cases that have been going on for years and years and years, that it gets frustrating, I think, for the town, especially the Conservation Commission, to think that their orders are not being listened to and that people choose to drag things out. I'll get off my high horse then. Totally agree.
Thank you. Sean?
Just one question, Amy. One of these bullet points made me think of it. Do we have any folks that are still taking advantage of the elevation grants? I haven't heard too much about that.
That's Kyle.
You know, actually, Kyle can speak to that.
Let me give my once-over real quick. So, I'm Kyle. I'm the Coastal Management Officer. We do have some, we have six active home elevations going on right now that I'm currently managing. They're closing out, so we are seeking new applications. We did just get one that was awarded recently on C Street. So, it was $170,000. So, we have that going on. Most of you are familiar with the 50-year community-led vision process that's currently underway. So, I'm managing that project as well as the Downtown Harbor Sustainability and Resiliency Master Plan. I just found out the town was awarded money for a hazard mitigation plan, which we'll be updating this year, which is important and is a requirement of the CRS, which we are also updating this year. So, we have our five-year CRS update, which is a big haul. We have the Storm Tide Pathways Grant, which is currently underway. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but they're basically coming up with new, modern storm tide information that's gonna give us really detailed information about how storm surge flows in the harbor and throughout the coast. So, it will allow us to easily, easily implement protection measures. And it's also gonna be able to provide our emergency response personnel with great real-time data on exactly where the water will be and which areas will be closed off. So, we, we had a presentation a couple months ago where the Center for Coastal Studies presented to all the emergency personnel. They seemed really excited about it, so I'm excited about it as well. And then I've also been helping out with the Green Communities Grant on the side, so we've been keeping that up and running, which is good.
Great. All right. Well, I think we're good with your numbers and we've noted your guys' points. And thank you very much. We're gonna do planning next.
Hi.
Mr. Support Team? 175? Hold on, give us a minute to turn the page. Okay, Karen?
Some of our brief responsibilities are enforcing the subdivision control law. And that's done through subdivisions, A and R plans. We issue special permits for a variety of uses, accessory dwellings, mixed-use special permits. We do site plan administrative review for projects that need to under the zoning bylaw. We, we work on zoning, any changes to the, to the zoning for the town of Situate. We keep the zoning map and the zoning bylaw up to date. We're working on revisions to the stormwater regulations. Our next step on that is to have a final meeting and then have a public hearing through the planning board. We are working on the master plan update, which has had several public hearings already, public meetings. We are working on, with the, working to update the housing production plan. We work on updating subsidized housing inventory. And we work on answering any questions people come into the office with. And there's a lot of questions every day about, about different aspects of zoning, et cetera.
Great.
That's it in a nutshell.
Boring days.
Not much going on.
We're, we're really, really busy right now. We have a lot of projects under construction.
Boring days.
Not much going on.
We're, we're really, really busy right now. We have a lot of projects under construction, we have projects that will be coming into, big project coming into construction, late spring, early summer with the Drew Company.
And unfortunately, you have another boring budget.
Yes.
The actuals in 19 were 244,000, the budget in the next year was 245,000, and this year it's 251,000, of which 240,000 of that is payroll.
Right.
So there's really not much else to your department, it's a little bit of technical service and legal advertising and stuff like that, but 90-plus percent of it is-
Most of it is, and we use the technical service to hire consultants where we need to for, we've got a consultant onboard for stormwater, and we've got a consultant onboard for the sign bylaw, which will be having a public hearing at the end of the month.
Any questions?
Just one.
Any questions?
No, but if I, could I say that we, we get a lot of bang for our buck with some of these departments? I mean, you guys protect our town and make our town beautiful and livable, and I know you deal with a lot of aggravation sometimes, people get upset with you, but it's, it's good work you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just take that a little bit further. I think part of the reason they, it is more challenging, it said it right in the beginning, because all the land that is being developed now, developers walked away from years ago, it was too hard to develop, so now they're, you know, it's at such a cost, it's worth such, so much money that they're, you know, ledge and wetlands and everything that, you know, they're not making anymore. So it is, your job is getting more difficult every year.
It is.
Karen?
I just wondered if we could get an update on the Director of Planning and Development, Hunt? And where, where does that line item show up in our budget? I've lost track.
Oh, it's in planning.
It's in planning, it's in the planning number here.
How did I?
It's on the last page.
It's out, it's advertised, I won't be with Bob till the end of the week this week to get an update on it, but it is unadvertised.
I mostly bring that up because obviously a big piece of this is the capacity to, to look for grants, which will downstream be an impact, so, you know, you're swimming as fast as you can with what's on your plate, so.
Yes.
Great. Yeah, the only thing I would add, to piggyback what Sean was saying, is not only do you have your work to do, but you also have all the red tape that you have to go through because of the municipal requirements of doing studies and following up on, and so, you know, you also have this perpetual inflow of paperwork that has to be done. You can't just go out in the field and fix problems all day, you have to do that, so. Any other questions? Great, thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
So the next one is the ZBA.
Good evening, Bob Vogel.
How are you?
Good, thank you, representing both inspections and the ZBA. So, as you probably know, we were fortunate enough to fill the Secretary of ZBA position a few months ago. Beth Henigan is working out extremely well, and so the department is fully staffed now for the first time in a while, and doing, doing a lot of work, and I think doing it efficiently and, and fine. Really, the mission of the Zoning Board of Appeals does not change from year to year. You know, they enforce the zoning bylaws, obviously, and hear appeals to, in, relative to zoning issues from citizens. The board's charge is to hear those appeals fairly, run to judgment in a, in a very fair-minded and even-handed fashion, hear both the applicants and, and the audience's point of view, and I think we're doing that, doing that consistently and effectively. A lot of what comes before the board is generated by properties along the coast, small lots, setback issues, elevation requirements, that sort of thing. So it's, it's an interesting sort of situation there. We also have board input on normal sort of subdivision developed, type developments, and then, of course, on the 40Bs, which have proliferated recently. We have Stockbridge Landing underway, we have Herringbrook Meadow underway, we have Lawson Green just about to start, there's a potential 40B off of Old Oak and Bucket Road that we're in the very early stages of looking at, so there's a tremendous amount going on. The board budget really hasn't changed very much. The 2020 actual on the personnel budget is very low because, as I said, that position of secretary was not filled for part of the year, it now is. Everything else, I think, is pretty standard and hasn't changed much year to year on that.
So the actuals were 20,000 in 19, 26,000 in '20, and then the budget is for 25,000 this upcoming year.
Correct.
Which is all payroll, so.
Yep.
Great. Want to go to the inspections one?
Sure. A little more diverse in, in terms of mission and what we have to deal with, but our mission overall is to interpret and administer state and international building, plumbing, gas fitting, mechanical, electrical codes, ensure the public is provided with a safe and reliable built environment, which will perform to establish standards. So if you're buying a house, you know that house is not going to fall down around your ears anytime soon. That's a simple example. And there's a lot of houses going up, for sure. Goals and objectives for the next year somewhat mirror the ones that we spoke about last year. We'll continue to push towards digitizing our filing system. It's becoming increasingly obvious that we're simply running out of space to keep our paper, and, and then finding a particular piece of paper among that several piles and drawers and rooms at this point is becoming challenging as well. So I know that will happen someday, and I know it's a long-term goal, but we need to keep thinking about getting there, for sure. We have taken an initiative of trying to modify Section 830 of the zoning bylaw. It concerns repair and restoration of non-conforming structures and uses, and the intent is to facilitate, facilitate, excuse me, replacement, repair, and reuse of abandoned properties. Right now, there's a time limit on how you need to get your permit and actually do the construction work to bring a damaged or abandoned property back into use. We basically propose to insert a fairly simple change to that, which allows you, beyond that time limit, to do that, to go, undergo that activity with a special permit from the ZBA. So it will no longer end up, there are, there are several sort of orphaned properties in the town, which people have simply walked away from because there's no way, under our bylaws, to either sell them for reuse or, or repair and reuse them yourself, because they're pre-existing non-conforming lots. So once the structure is declared unusable, then even the lot can't be reused because it, it doesn't conform to present zoning. So this would, this would give an avenue to, to remedy that.
Does that, will that take an action of an ATM or a special town meeting, or is it?
It's going before town meeting.
Okay.
Yep, it'll be proposed before the spring town meeting.
Is that your idea, Bob?
Um, I guess.
Thank you.
Bob and I, I had some discussions with Bob about some properties that I was looking at, and I said, why are these sitting here? And he said, under our current bylaw, they can't do anything to them. So they're not really saleable, they're not anything, because you can't touch the building. And that wasn't the intent of the bylaw, so that got Bob thinking and, and he came up with this, but we all know the properties are just sitting there, and, you know, we want to turn those back into usable properties and put them back in the tax law.
Yeah, I mean, the, the complaints that we get are ongoing and justified, certainly, from, from the neighbors, and so it's, it's been on, on our collective mind for a while. So I think this will, this will be helpful, no question about it.
Great.
One question.
Yeah.
I mean, we all know that there are a couple of properties that, that could harm adjacent properties if, you know, a strong wind game, you know, that kind of thing. Do we have any remedies under current bylaws or mass general law that, if there's imminent danger to a butters?
We, they can be condemned, there's a process for condemning them, you form a committee of the building commissioner, the fire marshal, an independent contractor, and I think there's one other component. But at any rate, yeah, there's a, there's a, a way to condemn those properties, but then the town needs to be responsible for taking them down, that's 25, 30, $35,000 of cost. Many cases like that, you'd have nowhere to sort of land that, land that charge, you couldn't lean the property, the property is essentially valueless. You can't perhaps even find the owner, you know, so it's, there's a way to do it, it just has drawbacks as, as well as benefits.
And this zoning bylaw will assist that process, I would think?
I think this zoning bylaw change is going to make it attractive for those properties to be repurposed. Either the owner will do it, or if the owner's not available, the bank holding the paper would be able to sell it to a developer, and, you know, with the cost-
Or it becomes valuable for us to take, because then we can sell it.
Right, right.
It'll give you some more tools in your belt that you could maybe move the property along.
Yes, and, you know, I, I think in certain cases, we would actually be the agent to reach out to potential, not buyers necessarily, but to make, for instance, the bank aware that this, this provision exists, and perhaps they'd want to take advantage of it.
Great. So why don't we look at the numbers real quick?
So the budget, not too many of the line items have changed, but one that has is our part-time, part-time salary.
Right, so she's split 50-50, Beth is between the two?
Yes, Beth is split 50-50 between the two departments. The largest component of this, however, is our outside inspectors.
The lightest?
The largest.
Largest, right. Right, so other than the salary, and essentially they are salary also.
They get paid per inspection.
Right, so they're essentially employees also.
Right.
You know, another one of those budgets where that's 90-plus percent of the total. So the actuals in 19 were 264, budget in '20 was 276, and then it went up to 325 this year.
Correct.
And that is predominantly because we increased the part-time inspectors, and that other position went up a little bit with the secretary?
Yes, there's a little bit of that, there's a little salary increase per contract adjustments. There's a five-year, for both Annie and myself, there's a five-year bonus, thank you very much. We increased the inspectors' rates to an average cost of all of the inspectors in the towns surrounding us, which I think was, was long overdue and has been greatly appreciated. And as far as income goes, we're projecting almost a 50% increase in income over the last year, due to projects like Toll Brothers and, and others. So the increase in cost is more than offset by the, by the increase in income.
Any questions on the budget?
Just want to know, how do we calculate the, how do, what a building permit costs? Is it on a per-square-foot basis? Is it on?
No, it's on a cost-of-construction basis.
And who does the estimate on the cost of construction? Do we rely on the builder?
It depends, actually, it's a good, very good question. We recently raised the per-thousand cost from $10 to $11, so that's a 10% jump there. On a renovation project, let's say, we might get, you know, the thing with a renovation project is it can be anything. You know, you can, you can go high-end, you can go low-end, you can, you know. So we do rely, for those type of projects, on contractors' estimates, or contractors' contracts, in many cases, we would ask to see the contract between the contractor and the owner.
Right.
Other times, we'll rely on contracts that show materials and, and labor, you know, breakdowns, for example. For new construction, we've set the sort of calculation of default cost at $150 per square foot of construction.
Isn't that kind of low?
It's, it's low, but until about six months ago, and, and for the past 10 years, that had been $100 per square foot. So we've actually raised that by 50% recently.
Don't worry, I could come back and get it again, I'm just doing it.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll certainly look at it.
Well, to be honest with you, when you look at the renovations that are being done in this town, they're not low-end.
No, no, very few, very, very few.
Marble countertops.
But there are younger couples who are trying to get starter homes, and, you know, it varies all over the lot.
Yeah, I understand, but some of these projects are, anyway, you get my point.
So, yeah, I, I think we are pretty, pretty much in the mainstream of what-
Surrounding towns?
Charges are, you know, relative to towns like Marshfield and even Duxbury and Cohasset. We, we looked at that as part of our inspector compensation kind of data gathering as well.
Right, well, I'm not arguing about the inspector compensation at all.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But the building permits seem to me as though, if it's 150 a square foot, that's not even in the realm of reality.
Well, that's, again, default. Very often, we'll get it, we'll get a price for a house from the contractor, or we'll, we'll see a contract price. I mean, the permit for a typical large home runs in the $4,000 to $5,000 range, and then, you know-
Which for some of these places is a drop in the bucket.
Well, certainly is, but on the other hand, it more than, more than covers our costs. I, I understand where you're coming from.
Any other questions? Great, Bob, thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the last.
The, are we having any other nights of budget? Do we have on our next meeting?
I don't think so, I think this is the last one.
No, the last thing you have on budget is-
EDC?
EDC, next to the meeting, and then to voting, vote everything.
Right. So, so do we want to do economic development tonight? I know that the chair couldn't be here.
The chair? I think the chair is right there.
I'm asking, hold on.
Isn't the chair here?
I don't think so.
No. Oh, I'm sorry, she used to be the chair, I'm sorry.
So do we want to wait for her, do we want to go ahead and do it?
How does she feel?
It's, I thought RJ was here. Oh, there you are. Would you guys-
Not aware that this was happening tonight, I would have worn a more serious shirt.
I'm one of those who talks to you guys about what's been going on, but if you're
looking for like concrete numbers and stuff, we don't, I don't have any of that with me at the moment.
Okay, let's postpone this to the next one with CPC.
Thanks.
Put a good shirt on.
Do you have time to get a tie?
Where are you?
Switch the order.
They're up. Good evening, guys. Ron, how are you?
Very good, thank you for having us.
I see Janice back there as well. You don't have to come up, but you wave.
We have Peter as well.
Oh, Peter's over there, hey Peter, how are you? So school committee members as well in the audience. So, let's shift our, go ahead, Ron, you can start.
Well, thank you very much for having us. I have two of our team members here, important to developing our budget, obviously Paul Donlin, our finance director, and our special education director, Ms. Diana Mullen. So I thank them very much for taking the time tonight as well. And they've got a busy agenda, so I've got in front of you is about 40 pages of the school department's budget. What I've proposed to do, if that is, if that works for the board, is give you a high-level summary of some key items that I think will be apropos, and then certainly open up to any questions that you might have about anything here. Perfect. So first, what you've seen in front of you is the preliminary operating budget for FY21 for the Situate Public Schools. It's preliminary based on the governor's most recent release of numbers just last week. If you take a look at page two, you can see just the opening summary. It currently represents a 3.5% increase in operating from last year, from FY20 to FY21. This represents a level services budget, not a level funded budget. It also represents two major recommendations that are part of an addition to our budget. The first is additional supplemental mathematics supplies, so about $75,000 in mathematics supplies, it's actually built into this budget, and that represents a large-scale adoption of math, new mathematics materials for the entire elementary program, which is much needed. The other, which is called out as a separate item here, which is beyond level services, is about $110,000 to expand an existing special education program. We currently have a social and emotional program for students with significant disabilities- We currently have a social-emotional program for students with significant disabilities in the social-emotional spectrum. We have that in our elementary school. It's been phenomenal. It's called the GEMS program. We don't currently have one of those programs in our middle school. So as those students are getting older, we want to continue to expand that program to provide them the services, A, to give them the best provided services that we can, and B, to do those services here in Situate and not have those students need to be served outside of Situate schools. Your table of contents breaks down our budget into a couple of key areas. I'll skip along the budget process and development, as I know this board is very familiar with that. The next item is the educational priorities. We then break out the budget into costs and revenue, and then lastly, we talk a little bit more in detail about those additions that I just talked about, the adoption of the mathematics program and that expansion of the middle school special education program. If I could draw your attention to page five for just a moment, one of the things that is vital to our team and vital to our school district, especially because there are so many important needs to serve the over, you know, nearly 3,000 students and over 500 employees, is that we dedicate our budget to serving the top priorities of our school district. Those priorities are outlined in our strategic plan, and on page five, I've articulated them there as well. This is a public document that goes on our website, and so for families and community members that are interested to learn more in the school district strategic plan, there's a link and a hyperlink there that they can click on and learn all about the strategic plan of the district over the next few years. If I can draw your attention to page six, I'll maybe just spend a minute on enrollment. Enrollment is obviously fundamental to our priority, because our students are the center of the work that we do. You can see that over the past 10 years, there's been a slight decline in enrollment here in Situate. That's echoed at the state and even New England level in this region of the country. That said, two things that I think are important for this group to be aware of. The first is that on page seven, you can see a slight uptick in elementary enrollment. That's continued for the past several years. We expect that to continue, about 1.5% to 2% varying. This committee just got to hear a lot about, you know, a lot of the developments that are happening around the town, around the community, and we're seeing a slight uptick and increase in families that are moving here to Situate, in part for our schools and with young children. And so we see that uptick in elementary enrollment here reflected, and continuing out to 2022, 2023. If I can draw your attention to page nine, which is part three of the overall budget, you can see in the upper right-hand corner, a general summary of all of the costs in operating the school district. Again, what you see in front of you is a level services budget, so you can see our actuals across the board from about $40 million back in FY18 to just shy of $44 million projected for FY21. It's broken out into three major categories. The first is personnel services, which reflects the largest majority of all of our services. Again, we have just over 515 employees that serve nearly 3,000 students in our six schools. The second is contractual services. Those are services that are typically provided by vendors outside of the Situate public schools. There's been an uptick in our contractual services this year, which we'll talk a little bit about, focused predominantly on students with significant disabilities. And last but certainly not least is materials and supplies. That's exactly what it sounds like, everything from paper, pencils, and pens, to that mathematics materials adoption that I just talked about a few minutes ago.
I have another question.
So on this chart, this is very helpful, there's a credit for staff retirements, but we're not looking at attriting staff, are we?
That's an excellent question, and we're not. Because this is the preliminary budget, you can see the second to the last line there has about $250,000 that we expect to see in savings. That's just on turnover that we currently anticipate. So when you have retirement, that's typically at the highest end of your step-in lane chart, and when you replace that retirement, it's usually not at the highest end of your step-in lane chart. We're very conservative with where we do the budgeting there, and we're still early in the process. It's still only February. We still have a few more months when folks bring their letters in to say, you know, I've had 30 years of service and I'd like to retire at this point. The other thing that I'll just draw your attention to, since Ms. Canfield brought it up, you can see that $110,000, that's recommended beyond level service. It's called out separately because, again, we just had our Saturday meeting with the school committee this past Saturday, and we're still in preliminary levels of budget development. So ultimately, those numbers are not currently rolled in to any of your personnel numbers at each building, because at this point, they're not finalized yet. So all the staffing turnover not finalized, and whether or not we're able to fully invest in that new middle school program not finalized at this time.
Ron, can you just tell us, staffing-wise, what the change in staff was, if any?
Sure.
Teachers and just positions?
Yeah, it represents over 35 different changes, and so those changes range from retirements to leaves of absence. We typically don't go into each one of them because they're protected for personnel reasons.
No, the net, is there five more teachers, three more custodians, is there?
So this is neutral, neutral for staffing.
So it's completely flat, there's 110 elementary school teachers, and there's going to be 110, or maybe one's moving up to the middle or whatever.
That second part, yes. That does include transfers as well.
Yeah.
But the only additional staff you see is that $110,000 for one special education educator, and then a specialized paraprofessional who can provide really specific services for students with significant needs. Otherwise, it's.
Both at Gates.
I'm sorry?
Both at Gates.
Both at the middle school, yes. Page 10 just gives you a chart of that, for those of you that prefer the visual there. You can again see that just about 81% of our overall budget is staffing. The next couple of pages break down each individual school. What I'd like to do for this group, if you would humor me, is to go to page 17. I imagine this group would be a high-level view, the most valuable, but I'll certainly answer any questions you have about individual buildings. The two items I'd like to share with you tonight are two that I think are most apropos to the board, certainly. What you see in front of you on page 17 is the district breakdown of budget. So this outlines all of the staffing, services, and materials that are consolidated at the district level. So it doesn't talk about the individual materials that Cushing might have, or the individual staff that Hadley may have, but it breaks it down by the large-scale services and large-scale staffing. Two that are, I think, specifically important for the FY21 budget, the first is the annual bus lease. This is something that we talked about briefly at the financial forecast meeting, and per the request, the financial forecast, you see that on the ledger there as part of our costs. In the current projection for financial forecast, that's called out as a shared cost. You'll also see that further on our budget as part of the revenue. So that's revenue in, revenue out, neutral on our budget end of things. We are appreciative of the work that's been done on that. The intention for us is simply that that's an important component to ensuring that students get to school safely every day, and that having those leases ensures that we have new buses on the roads here in Situate to provide transportation for our kids everywhere. The second, I think, is probably the most apropos for the conversation for FY20, which is special education outside tuitions. That's something that we've been seeing over the past couple of years now, increasing pretty dramatically, and we want to share with you some further drill-down information that we think would be valuable for the board. If you flip to page 18, you can see a breakdown of special education out of district services and costs over time. I'll give you just a very brief primer about it, and then, again, feel free to ask any questions. In the event that a student has significant disabilities, to the point in which none of the special education programs in that child's school or any program within our school district can provide that student services, that student oftentimes requires services outside of Situate. That can be at one of our collaboratives, or that can be in a private or residential facility that's specific to meet that child's needs. Ms. Mullen and her entire special education team do incredible work to ensure that we meet the needs of every student that we can, and at the same time, there are sometimes needs that are just so specialized that we simply don't have that expertise in-house, or that we only have one student that has that particular need, and that would be a class of one, which would be a restrictive environment for that child in that case. Two things in that little pull-out on page 18 that I think are important for your attention. The first is that middle row that says total number of out-of-district students. It's the number total across pre-K to 12 that are currently not able to be served by the Situate public schools, and as you can see, that number generally has been actually going down, and I think that's a testament to our special education staff and a testament to Ms. Mullen's work to ensure that we have special education programs here that can provide services for kids, including, again, the one that we're proposing to expand to the middle school. That said, the average tuition has gone up from about $62,000 to almost $90,000 in just a couple of years. There's two major factors there. The first is just increase in tuitions. So, for example, a private institution can and often does change the tuition on us. We take that into account when we do our calculations, but we have very little control over whether or not they change that tuition on us. There are mechanisms at the state level, but those mechanisms are permissive typically of those changes. The second and probably most important factor of that, though, is just the services for students. And while the number of students has gone down that require those services, the significance and complexity of those services has dramatically increased, far more than what our estimations had for last year, and we're continuing to try to be very conservative in our estimations this year, but you can see almost over a 40% increase in just a few years' total costs. So that number, that line for us, that out-of-district contractual services, is probably the greatest change when you're thinking about overall change from FY19 to FY20, and FY20 to FY21 in the school department's budget. That's what's jammed us up without question going at this point, and we're happy that we've got a balanced budget for you here today, but it's taken a lot of effort, again, by the entire team to ensure that we have that. The last thing I'd share with you, if I can, about that topic is on page 19. So with those changes fluctuating year to year, and while we can make conservative estimates, we'd like to think more large-scale to try to ensure that we can ameliorate any future fluctuations in student service changes. And so you see two major action steps that the school department like to pursue. I'll start with the second there, because I keep hearing me bang the drum on this. We need to continue to expand our current programs in-house in our schools to serve our students. And so, again, that investment in additional staffing in our middle school to expand our GEMS program is beneficial not just to kids, but to your budget as well. And the second is to start to explore what a special education reserve or a special education stabilization fund might look like. It's a fund that looks very similar to your capital stabilization funds, that would allow this community, school department, and town to put resources aside when you don't need them for the moment in time and when you may need them. And just like with your capital stabilization funds, when you have a road or a bridge that needs maintenance that was unanticipated, you can lean on it, the same is true with special education stabilization or special education reserve.
Can I touch on that one? Wait till the end.
Yeah, we're going to get into that a little bit, I think.
There. The next item I'd share with you on page 20 is probably the one that's most apropos for your budget purposes. That's part four, it's our funding and resources. You can see that very top line, which is local and state aid. Again, actuals from about 36.1 back in 18 to 40.2 projected as of FY21. Again, you can also see that bus lease called out there, and two other elements that are important to our budget. One is the state and federal grants at about 2.2 million, and then you have offsets which represent a number of fees and other offsets that come into the school district at about $1.25, $1.26 million. The number that we typically have voted at the annual town meeting is that $40,206,060, but we, I think importantly, also like to call out those other resources, because sometimes folks forget that we have so many state and federal grants that come in for the school department, and that we are dependent on so many offsets. One item that I think the board may be interested in is on page 21. I give you just a per-people snapshot, if you will, of not just Situate, but surrounding towns, and towns that are actually similar to Situate in terms of your school district's demographic around the Commonwealth. You can see that, and this data is the most up-to-date from DESI, that Situate's currently spending about $15,000 per people on average, and again, that is an average, and you can see the comparisons from about $12,300 all the way up to about $20,000 and everything in between.
That holds ridiculous.
The next portion is, I think, also helpful, if you're not familiar with a lot of the education grants that the state and the federal government provide, and that we spend a lot of energy and time writing for on a regular basis. I won't go through all of them with you, but if you have any questions about them, you can certainly ask. The two that I think are probably most interesting for this group would be the IDEA grant, which is a special education grant. That's appropriated by the federal government, which is then sent over to DESI, who then re-appropriates it out to all the 351 communities. The other is circuit breaker, which we talk a little bit about when we talk about special education. Oftentimes, we talk about out-of-district. I'll give you maybe a minute primer on that, and again, feel free to ask questions about that as well. Circuit breaker is a mechanism that's part of Chapter 70, which is the way in which schools are funded by the state, that allows school districts like Situate to receive reimbursement funds for expensive, more-than-typical expense special education costs. There's a formula that they implement that allows us to receive some of that reimbursement, but is a year in arrears. So the costs that we incur this year for students with significant disabilities that may require, for example, out-of-district placement, we would receive partial reimbursement of that a year in arrears. And so that's an important line in our revenue each year that we try to keep track of, and we try to plan accordingly with. The only other thing I'd share with you about state and federal grants is that they are, they may be changed by the political and governmental winds at both the state and federal levels. And so we're hyper-conservative with our budgeting there, because any change in the federal government's legislative priorities or executive priorities can drastically change our federal appropriation, and the same is true at Beacon Hill as well. The last resource that I think is really relevant for everyone to be aware of are funding offsets, and that's on page 25. Every time I talk about this section, I like to start with the simple statement that it would be my sincere wish that a school department in any town in the Commonwealth would not charge a fee for a single service that we do, because we're a public institution, and Massachusetts requires that public institutions given free and appropriate education for all children. That said, there's currently about $1.26 million of additional offsets that come in in a variety of different buckets for the school department, all of which support, but don't fully cover the cost of a number of programs in our school department. And so removing all of those fees would mean a significant impact to a lot of programs for kids and a lot of programs in our community. You can see the fees ranging from your full-day kindergarten fees to bus fees to sporting fees and everything in between. And what you have there for the community on page 25 and going on to 26 and 27 is a breakdown of what the fees are, what they pay for, and in a lot of cases, the rough cost of the actual program. So, for example, full-day kindergarten fees, we charge a fee for that. The total resource that comes in for our school department is about $510,000 projected, although we're still in the middle of kindergarten registration right now, but to run our kindergarten program is about $1.3 million. So it's an offset of the total cost, but it's never, in any of these cases, the full cost. It's not a one-for-one. The last thing I would share with you on page 27 is beyond level services. Our team, starting in October and November, takes a look at what the needs are in our school department for all 3,000 students and all of our staff members as well. We do a zero-based budgeting process, which is we start fresh and ask the question every year, what is it that we need for our kids? What are the top priorities for our students? After we've built our level services budget, we also include all of these additional requests. There's about $1.1, $1.2 million of total requests that you can see in the appendix that are beyond level services. The two that are recommended as part of this budget is $75,000 for an adoption of math materials for the elementary schools, and again, that middle school staffing to expand our special education programs in the middle school. Your final page, which is page 30, is an executive summary of the entire budget. It's broken down, again, by costs, personnel services, our recommendations beyond level services, contractual services, material supplies, staff retirement, which to Ms. Canfield's point is a pull-out, and then resources, which is your local state aid. That's that $40,206,060 that is in the financial forecast. It'll be part of the annual town meeting, along with the bus lease of 250, your federal, state grants, and offsets. I hope that was a helpful, albeit, brief summary of the ins and outs of our budget, and certainly answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ron, for this very, you know, very detailed and documented report. Every year, it gets better and better. Paul, thank you for your help in it, too. Just a reminder to everybody, the school budget is a single-line item budget, so we budget a number to them, and they get to spend it where they want. They do provide us with the details clearly in a plan. It's not just willy-nilly, but it is a one-line item budget. And financial forecasting has met a number of times, and we've gone over some stuff most recently, and both the town and the school benefited from the additional revenue that came in from, one, the governor's budget, two, the increase in new growth last year, which increased our tax levy, and three was the, Nancy, what was the third one?
[laughing]
Oh, South Shore Votech.
Votech.
Which we'll, Jack, we'll talk about in a little bit. So that helped both sides out, and it's a balanced budget, and it's level service.
Level service, correct.
And that's where we are. So I know we all wrote a bunch of notes down. I'll start with, you want to start, Karen?
I'd be happy to.
Karen, why don't you start?
Only 17 questions. I have two.
Give us your best three.
No, just two questions, actually. You do mention the potential of, should we invest $110,000 in additional special education services? Obviously, keeping our kids home is, you know, we'd all want to do that, but there's no quantification of, you know, how it may help down the road. Has there any, been modeling and trying to figure out what kind of cost savings that would be?
Absolutely. So over the next five years, for all of the students that are currently in our elementary... So over the next five years, for all the students that are currently in our elementary program, at the end of five years, just on tuitions alone, we project a potential of about six-hundred thousand dollars having to be spent if those students go out to--
Over the five years?
Yeah, over the five years.
But the one-ten would be five years as well, so the delta's like a hundred thousand.
Total, that's right. That one-ten would be recurring plus step and lane year to year.
Right.
Yeah, and then, and that doesn't take into account also transportation, which is another approximately nine thousand per student times three percent each year increase.
Karen, before you do that, because I had that same question, but isn't there an opportunity to get students from other communities to come in and raise your tuition number?
And we do do that. So we have, we currently charge other districts to our programs, and we charge them twenty-nine thousand dollars for the year, which is wonderful for the other districts, knowing what our collaborative rates typically are. So that is something we can continue to look at increasing. I know it's always a question, though, about increasing that and would we still get people in. Other costs that we sometimes need to charge for districts is if their student requires a paraprofessional, then we add that salary onto the tuition that we charge them.
Could I just add one item to that? And I just, I caution, I caution that line of reasoning simply because, just like we had a conversation just now with our school department about the rising cost of out-of-district services, when a student comes from a different town to Situate, we are their out-of-district service. And just like we're motivated to keep our children here, they're motivated to do the same thing. So we typically don't include projected possible out-of-district tuitions coming in. Those are a benefit for sure, but we don't count on those.
Back to those in?
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
And many districts are also expanding and building their own programs, so they're, while we do get referrals, they're not as abundant.
The only other question I'd say was, I was surprised, I didn't realize that the safety officer, the safety resource officer, that budget is through the school?
That's correct.
Okay, I just didn't realize that. Okay. Thank you.
Sean?
Educational enrollment, Ron, you were talking about it going up, it's going down, and does that agree with, you know, the possibility of closing two elementary schools and opening one? Now that I look back, it looks like it's correct, but when you were talking about it, I thought it would be backwards.
Yeah.
Do you, how do you see that? I mean, we have a lot of new developments, but a lot of them are, you know--
Fifty-five-plus.
--older or, you know, smaller.
We had Habib and associates do that analysis for us, and they had projected only a one-point-five percent increase, and they indicated that increase to be realized in our elementary schools. So if you take a look at page seven, you see that that's bearing out to this point. Our elementary school enrollment has continued to increase over time and looks like it will project to do so. But we still have a decline in our enrollment in our secondary, right? Especially because we just had, over the past three years, two of our largest graduating classes graduate, larger than any of our existing, you know, even larger than like the graduating class of 2032. Like, we're welcoming, you know, graduating classes deep into the 2030s now, and those numbers aren't the same as the graduating classes of eighteen and nineteen. So in aggregate, will we see a total increase in the district? It looks like it's going to be roughly level to potentially low. But in the next ten years or so, will you see an increase in your elementaries? That remains to be about a one-to-one-and-a-half percent increase in your elementary school population.
So had we gotten approved the first round and, you know, if we're on the fast track, would you see, would you see a problem? Or would you see elementary enrollment dip down again?
At least initially, we don't see that happening. I will say, in our analysis, we even take a look at birth data that we take a look at the town, and so out into 2024, our birth data has a dip here in this community. Now, anything after that, we don't have information about yet because those children haven't been born yet, right? So is that just a blip on the radar, you had a low number that year, or is that a new trajectory? That's data that you're going to have to continue to anal, you know, to analyze as a community and make that determination. If ultimately it's a new trajectory, then you want to redo your calculus for your SOIs and make your proposal fit accordingly. If it's just a dip, I think your existing calculus will be fine.
Laura?
Couple of questions. What is the plan to fund the stabilization account? Because I don't know how we can go to town meeting and ask them for a revolving, I mean, a stabilization account, not understanding how we're going to fund that.
We have a draft model that we're in the process of finalizing, and that'd be something that we'd work out with our colleagues in the town as well. The statute actually is silent about the way in which it's funded. The statute is very clear about caps. For example, it's got to be capped at two percent of your net school spending and those sorts of things. It's articulating that clearly, but every town and community does that a little bit differently. Some fund it through free cash, like you do with your capital stabilization. Others have mechanisms that lean on the school department's budget. I'm sure you can appreciate the positions that each group would have there, and so it'd be my hope that we'd be able to work out a final recommended funding mechanism prior to your annual town meeting.
Okay. We're going to have that worked out before? Are we having a second meeting?
We only had very preliminary discussions on it, so--
All right, and that's a big deal.
Really preliminary.
Okay.
So Ron said I would fund it, I said Ron would fund it.
That's why I asked a question.
It's a middle ground.
That's why I asked a question. I mean, you know, we skated out of a difficult position in the last two or three weeks. So I also have a couple of questions, you know, how many empty classrooms do we have in Jenkins? How many empty classrooms do we have in Hathley? I don't think you have any in Cushing, I'm not sure. You know, I think we've got to take a really hard look at redistricting. I can't go ask, you know, residents for money unless we're managing our space and our, and our facilities from a population aspect properly. So I asked the school committee that's still here, because I know, Ron, you're leaving, but, you know, to think about that, because I'm nervous about next year, honestly. You know, we were fortunate this year.
And we took a look at whether or not that was even an option early on, and given our current population, you can't fit your current population in less than the number of buildings that you have without some kind of renovation. That's one of the things that Habib and associates worked through with us as well, when we started to think about, if you did consolidate, how could you get to three buildings, and could you do a grade configuration? And so it would require some addition potentially to your buildings to keep the class sizes that we have enjoyed and to utilize the spaces in which that we've utilized.
And that's a lot of the information that I would love to see moving forward is, you know, what are your class sizes now? Because I didn't really see it. You see an average, you don't see actual. And what are these compared to capacity? I went through the Habib report, and nowhere does it give us a comparison to what you can do as to, you know, what's empty today, right?
Absolutely.
Because being denied access to MSBA this year was a big setback for all of us in town. We were really hoping to move that along.
Me, too.
So I think we've just got to accelerate, taking a look at how do we work fiscally, responsibly within what we have for the next five to eight years? Because I think we can all agree, we're not going to see a new building in the next five years, given that we weren't accepted into that process.
Right. Even if you're accepted, you look at about a five or six years at a minimum, right, from being accepted to when you're opening a building and having kiddos in it. I just say that one other thing that would be an important consideration is that if you're ultimately accepted, you want to spend a lot of energy on that feasibility because that feasibility study isn't going to be the one that makes that determination for the community ultimately. How many buildings make sense? How many classrooms make sense? What is that target number? Do you want to stay true to that target number? If I can maybe just answer a side component of that question that I often hear, which is that Jenkins School used to be full and it used to have six-hundred kids, and can't you have that again? And you could fit them in there, and I would say that's probably a detriment to the educational model that we're trying to provide to kiddos.
So what's the average class size these days?
Gosh, K to twelve, you're probably looking at--
K to five. What's, I'm not so concerned with the high school or the middle school.
Okay, so K to five, you're looking at the low twenties, but I share with you the middle school and high school numbers because those are significantly higher. Your class size in your middle school can get up to into your low thirties, and the high school has a really wide range, from some classes that have four and five students that we worked really hard through this budget process to ensure that we support, because those may be really unique classes, to class sizes that are up in the thirties as well.
And is the middle school high right now because of the shift in population being there at this, like, what are you seeing your class sizes in middle school in a couple of years? Is it going to go down?
Not--
We just built that new school, so I would have thought we would have taken that into consideration, that we don't have thirty kids in a class in the middle school.
We don't anticipate that's going to go down in the near future. Again, we only have a few years' out projections.
Okay. Well, I'm interested to learn how we're going to fund this stabilization account. It's a great idea.
More work to be done on it, for sure.
So clearly, it'll build over time?
Yeah, understood.
And there'll be participation from both sides.
I want to know where that percentage comes from.
Karen?
Well, I have many of the same observations. No one wants to go back to 2005, 2006, where Jenkins was packed. But we built a new middle school, so there have to be empty classrooms in our elementary schools. Yes.
Of course there are.
Yeah. So as hard as redistricting is, and we've been through it here, and it's painful, and people get very upset, but I do think that in the interest of the entire town, there needs to be a discussion and some sort of a study done as to what we could do. And the other thing I'm concerned about is we're going to be putting, I think it's better to have fewer kids at Hathley and Cushing at this point because the facilities are in, you know, they have problems. But I don't see any reason why we can't shift some kids over to Jenkins. So I agree with you. The one question that pops out at me on the per pupil spending, I don't know how many years we spent saying, well, we don't spend as much as Hingham. Now we're spending two thousand more per pupil than Hingham? What, do you have any sense as to why that's, that happened?
I can't speak to the conversation you had prior about Hingham, and I can't really speak to Hingham necessarily.
Hingham used to be the gold standard in terms of, they spent more per pupil than anybody.
I see.
And we were always, you know, down there, below them, significantly below, and now all of a sudden, it's flipped over. I'm assuming that the out-of-district sped costs are not included in the per pupil?
They certainly are.
They are.
It's all in per pupil. And I, again, I can't speak to Hingham necessarily, but I will say that just in the past five to seven years, this town has had a tremendous investment in its schools, in its school programming, and its school staffing. So you look at last year, we added two adjustment councils at elementary schools. We invested in the athletics program with a full-time athletics director. We expanded our out-of-district coordinator. I know that expansion of staffing has been important, right, to ensure that we build programs. So I couldn't necessarily compare us to Hingham and the why about Hingham or any other of those in particular. It's really just to give you a context of where we stand in terms of funding, because oftentimes, people ask the question like, are we equitable to our surrounding towns?
Right.
And I would just offer the response, just based on this data, yes, I believe you are.
Well, having run some overrides where the per pupil spending was a big issue, and it convinced people that we had to do better in Situate, now it just seems like it's escalated beyond that, so I just curious as to--
I would say those overrides were very effective.
We agree.
So just quick response, as we've said for years and years, the per pupil spending is not always an apples-to-apples comparison, and if it includes capital plans and debt, we've just built new buildings that may escalate us above other people. So it's, it's very, it's a, it's a target, but it's kind of a vague one, because you don't know how Hingham does it, what they add in, what they don't add in, and it's, and how, you know--
Well, isn't that a, it's a formula from the state, the Department of Education.
Yeah.
They put it out every year, and it has to include the same statistics. I don't know why they would put it out otherwise.
Yeah, I don't know. Over the years, we've heard, this doesn't include that, this doesn't include this. So anyways, I don't know the answer, but, and clearly, none of us know about Hingham. The only, I mean, the clear topics are the sped topic, you know, where are we going to go with, with that and the variability? We're talking about it for dozens of years now, how that pops up and throws, throws the school budget out of loop, and, you know, if we can come up with some way to address that, that'd be good for both sides. You know, we talk about, you know, again, making it kind of a revenue source, too, although you spoke against it a second ago, you know, the tuitions that we bring in are only a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. So we've never really capitalized on that, and maybe that's not what we're trying to do anymore. Maybe it's, you know, maybe this program is really, can only hold ten pupils, and we have our own ten pupils, and that's what we want to go with. So you guys are the experts, I leave that to you. Other than that, it's level funded. I'm glad we're budgeted, and we offer a great program over there, and the kids go to great colleges, so, you know, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Great. I know it took a while, but this is the biggest line item in our budget, so I appreciate the time and staying late to get it done.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You just lost me ten bucks. So our last budget item of the evening is the South Shore Votec. Jack, how are you?
I'm good, yourself?
Good evening.
How are you?
Very good.
Good?
Dr. Hickey.
Thanks for coming in at this late hour.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we have your booklet, we've read your booklet. We like the fact that our number's gone down, but clearly, it's because our students have gone in, so--
Yeah, so I'm, right, I'm here to nominate Jack Manning as Citizen of the Year. Yes, tonight, we have a lower assessment number, about a twenty-five percent reduction. And that number, that number is largely reflected in a reduction in enrollment. Enrollment is cyclical. We've had numbers from Situate in the thirties to the forties, and I attribute that in part to a larger senior class that we graduated. But other than that, I must say that our partnership with the Situate Public Schools is second to none. Our counselors are able to communicate with children at Gates, let them know that there is a public vocational technical high school option for them, and we're very, we're very happy to have that arrangement. So in terms of the story for this year, the documents you have, there are several pages. I would suggest that for, in the interest of time, I'll just hit a couple of the headliners. The document starts off with a PowerPoint that I presented to our school committee in December. Our overall budget is a little over four percent in the aggregate. Our increased revenues from non-resident tuition, a more optimistic projection of regional transportation are going to help to offset that increase. So in the aggregate, we're actually looking to assess our eight communities about eighty-eight thousand dollars less in the aggregate. So we've been able, for this fiscal year, to cover the projected increase. Now, within that number, of course, the numbers shake out differently. Generally, towns with lower enrollment would see a reduction in their assessment, but as you know from the statutory method, that's not always a cut-and-dry calculation. The big headliner for us, as you might imagine, having heard earlier commentary about MSBA, is that we do a great job, we're on track, we have an aging building. So capital expenses are a significant part of our annual budget. And as you know, we bring one assessment number to our communities. So our assessment figure includes capital, debt, and other operating costs. So about sixteen percent of our budget includes costs that are not typically found in a K to twelve district. For the nine budgets that I've brought forward, that story remains the same. For me, what I'm looking at, having applied to MSBA five years in a row and been told politely, no, try again, so we're in, we're in good company as one of the fifty districts or SOIs that wasn't accepted. We'll be filing our sixth one at the end of the week, and the story is the same. The bulk of our building is nineteen sixty-two. It is well-maintained, we will not let it fall into a crisis, but at some point, we do have to address some of the updates. Overall, I'm happy with what we have projected for next year. No major changes. I think our, you know, we operate under a zero-based budget model, so we're not simply increasing supply and equipment lines by a factor and working backwards from there. We're starting with what the needs are. We've secured some competitive grants. I'm very pleased to not have to bring vocational technical equipment as capital expenses. Most of our capital this year, little over seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand baked into this number, is for infrastructure. There's some, there's a small amount of technology, but we're on a septic system, we have to do some repairs. We had an engineering firm come out a couple of years ago, I would have brought that report to you at the time, and we've been chipping away at that long-range report. So we've got two-hundred-and-eighty thousand for septic repairs. We try to put money away in our stabilization fund. If we are accepted into MSBA, when? We will, we will have the money available on the spot to fund a feasibility study and not have to increase or have a one-year spike in assessment. So that money is ready to go when that time comes. We use stabilization money to help offset some bus lease costs, and we're also preparing, of course, to look at stabilization. And for Jack and the other members of the committee, my, my presentation in December was really to say, "We're at the point now where we've got to start looking at some slightly bigger ticket items." And so I spent several slides here, talking about the roof over our 1992 addition, the roof, the window, and the metal panels under the windows, as being the next significant expense. And what I, what I lay out, and I would, I would use my, my limited time this evening to just point out, the reason I think this is important, is number one, we are looking for a little bit of money in the fiscal '21 budget for OPM and design fees, so we could get the plans done. But the key point is that when we, if we're in a position to incur debt, and we bring this to our towns, this has to be, we have to have unanimous, unanimous support. And so it's very important for us to be able to communicate early and often with our communities what we're doing, why we're doing it. Because what I explained to the committee is that our, our engineers are saying that if, if we wanted to put a new roof over the 1992 addition and do so in the summer of 2021, we would have to get the work started right after July 1st to do the design work, and then we'd have to put the bid out on the street to find out what the cost is. Here's the trick, if we bring a, if, if the regional school committee authorizes debt, it then informs the communities. What we don't want to do is surprise a community, saying, "You've brought us a debt authorization, we don't have a regularly scheduled town meeting, what's going on?" So we need to make absolutely sure that if we are in a position in the fall of, or winter of 2020, to have a projected plan that we're going to use some stabilization money, some excess deficiency money, and maybe some money budgeted into fiscal '22, and we think we have to borrow the rest of this amount, we want to make sure that that's communicated early and often. What would happen is that this authorization would come to our communities, and the communities would have an opportunity to either take no action, which would be considered a thumbs up, like, "Go ahead, you're going to have to bake that number into your fiscal '22 assessment," or if there was some concern, a town meeting, a special town meeting could be called. I certainly don't want to see that happen, because if the rationale is there for putting a roof on the school, and we've done our homework, we hope that we can, we'd be able to convey that. But none of what I've said at the tail end has anything to do with this, other than designing the plan, and then having the plan ready. So on, just to put a, a bit more of a touch to it, on page six of the, of the document, the PowerPoint, pretty busy slide there that, that kind of unpacks the projection. So to put a roof and replace windows and metal panels would be a little over $2 million. That's in the far right, under the column called Combined Projects. We could potentially just do a roof and leave the windows alone. Maybe we wait, and we wait, and we wait a little longer, maybe that becomes part of an MSBA project. But we would be able to get a sense of what the, what the costs would be. We have projections from a facilities audit from a couple of years ago, so I feel good that these numbers are not, they're coming from an independent third party. What I'm looking to have budgeted is what's below the line, at the bottom of the chart, talking about the design and OPM costs. So that if we were at our most aggressive, and we were looking at a roof project, and we were able to do that in the summer of 2021, at the beginning of fiscal '22, those costs there, we will have the design, the design done. This is the, this is the beginning of the conversation, and that's how I've explained it to our committee, but it is the time for us to look at the next thing. And MSBA, as you know, isn't, you know, they expect us to take care of our own repairs and not sit around and wait for things to fall apart. So it's not a crisis, but it would certainly be the, I would say, the next priority on the list. At the same time, maintaining all of our other, all the other parts of the, of the building footprint. So if I had to select one thing to highlight to you this evening, it would be that. Not that it's a definite, but it definitely would be unusual if we were to come and sit before this board or before advisory and talk about a debt authorization that might not be timed exactly with a typical springtime town meeting. The rest of, the rest of the document, as you've seen from me in the past, spells out how our assessments are calculated. We hope we provide enough detail, the numbers can certainly get blurry, but around pages 12 to 14, you'll find how we calculate the assessment. You will have heard me talk about this in past years. On page 12, in the middle of the page, you'll find that, you'll find us giving a one-year, one-year look back on assessments, so the, so our, our projected assessment for Situate is $590,813, which is a, a reduction of 202,057. Page 13, the landscape document, breaks down that number into the various component costs of an assessment. The minimum contribution set by the state, the offset of non-resident tuition, other operating costs above the minimum, transportation, debt, and capital. Great news with debt, we paid it off a year early. So the debt, the debt that we have left for fiscal '21 is a little over $4,400 on a 2010 roof and window, roof and window project over the 1962 building. So we had a, we had a nice drop in our debt service, that's a nice one-year favor for all of us. Our transportation costs are largely flat, we've seen a reduction in our repair costs, and as I said, our capital costs have upticked a little bit. So we also want to explain to our communities on page 14, again, I won't get too further into the weeds, but our regional agreement spells out how we calculate capital debt, et cetera, and it's based on enrollment, and we provide the math there to show you how we arrived at those numbers. We include numbers from the DESI website, the Chapter 70 dropdown in terms of enrollment, and then the rest of the document gets into the breakdown of various budget categories of how we, how we arrived at this number. I'd be happy to answer some targeted questions if I can help, but I would, I presume to stop there.
Two things to note, so we have 14 less students.
Correct.
So we have 31 students, coming down from 44, 45. And Sean and I looked at each other when you talked about the roof. We just repaired the roof a few years ago, that was a different section of the building?
1962 building, 1992 addition, so you are correct. In 2010, the town's authorized, and in 2000, in the summer of 2011, we put a new roof over our 1962 building. The entire footprint is about 122,000 square feet. The original building is about 80,000 square feet. So yes, that was done. An addition was built in '92, and that's what I'm referencing tonight.
Okay.
Two quick questions. Did you, these, your Chapter 70 numbers in here?
Yes.
Do you guys benefit as, with the reformulation and the surplus at all?
We are a minimum aid district, our, our Chapter 70 amount went up by $30 a student, or about $18,000.
Okay, and then that's reflected in your revenue?
That's correct, yes. So a slight, a slight Chapter 70 increase is reflected in, in this revenue.
And, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that perhaps the board would write a letter of support of their application for the MSBA, if you could lead us.
Thank you.
And I was reviewing, I kind of answered my own question, but you go into it a little bit, what you're looking to do if you were selected, and you've been applying since 2015, looks like some renovations.
Yes.
Not necessarily a new school, or tearing half of it down, or?
No, no, we don't need a new school, we don't want a new school. We're surrounded by wetlands, there's nowhere to go. We're going to make the best of what we have. Drummond, Rosane, and Anderson, our engineering firm, is part of, as part of the visioning part of their project, helped us come up with some ideas. They did an analysis of space, I know exactly which vocational programs don't have enough space, we have to turn some students away. Even the ones we admit to the school, there's such a demand for our construction programs especially, that as part of an overall vision, and this is, this is spoken to a little bit on, on, on page seven, I won't go into the details, but somewhere between 25,000 to 40,000 square feet of additional space would allow us to address the bread and butter issues, which are more space for our technical programs, larger science classrooms, our "science labs" in quotes, our renovated classrooms from, when I started teaching there 25 years ago, I was in a classroom teaching history, it's now a science lab. All the furniture, all, it, it's just so, it's very crowded. And that's actually one of our pinch points, we talk about in our statements of interest, that our class sizes in our ninth and 10th grade science classes, they're, they're very, it's very tight. So ideally, going by MSBA guidelines of having 1,100 square feet for a science lab, that would be, that would be phenomenal to, to be able to bake that in. But the headliners are definitely more space for our construction programs, and we've got several designs. It's, it's good wishful thinking, but to answer your question, Sean, the, the, the addition of about 25,000 to 40,000 square feet would address our needs of our existing students having more elbow room, so we don't have to have four crowded lunches in our cafeteria. It's not the worst story in the world, but we definitely have enough of a demand to say that at, with most of our building being 1962, it's, it's time for us to make some targeted renovations.
Just a couple more things to follow up, if I could. Increasing the footprint or not necessarily? Just remodeling within the...
No, increasing the footprint would be our, would be our preferred approach. So we know, we know from the, we know from the plan that we probably have about $11.8 million of maintenance costs, the first big step being this roof. And then we have electrical and HVAC systems and motor controls, et cetera. But if we factored in the additional square footage, then we'd be talking about probably $45 million, which would be a, a deep renovation of everything, plus an addition. And you, you know the school well enough, certainly, some of the models include filling in the middle of the front of the school, connecting the wings, and, and filling in the middle, which I think has great benefit. We cannot build a second floor on for structural reasons that the engineers determined, but there is space on the west side of the, of, of the structure in the back, next to the, there was a small addition built in 1978, we could put two floors there. I envision we could take a couple of our technical programs that don't require 12-foot ceilings, like our graphics program, or our allied health program, we could definitely better, we could repurpose some space so that we don't have to, we don't have to build more square feet for everything we want to do. We definitely have some great plans on how to, on how to reallocate space.
And are they saying why you haven't been selected? I'm sorry, I might have been thrown through, and you might have answered that question.
No, no, I think, I think it's probably the same answer that, that you folks have received, which is there are other municipalities and schools with, with greater need. The answer that I get every year is a very, is a very polite and respectful, "You've submitted a lot of great detail, thanks for the backup support, thanks for doing the third-party facilities analysis, but in the limited funds we have," and every year it's different. So the year we get selected will be the year that we're seen as being, as, as making the cut. Now, some additional funding in the last, in, in the last round of legislation, adding a little more money, I hope that that will, that will help over time, but because they hit the reset button every year, there's no seniority, you don't bump up the list, so we, we tell our tale five years, we make it six, and, yeah, and, and there's no, there certainly is no guarantee. So for me, Sean, if we don't, if we continue to not get accepted...
Stop fixing the roofs.
Roof and septic, I don't see how you, yeah...
I was just going to say, as a credit to, you know, as a credit to you, you probably could be taking too good a care of your school.
That's, yes, yeah, I, I don't think, and, and our communities would accept, should accept nothing less, but it is a detriment when we don't have a horror story to tell, certainly. But I would say to you that if we go a few more years and we're not seeing any traction in this area, knowing it takes four, five, six years to do this, we might look at possibly doing some sort of our own, not our own, but a targeted addition. $500 a square foot is what we would need to use as a metric. So if I wanted to add on 5,000 square feet, somewhere add on to part of the building, $2.5 million for 5,000 square feet, that might buy me one shop with a, with an adjacent related classroom. We want to be very careful, though, that if we're going to make that investment, we've got to make sure we've taken care of the other essential functions of the building, and so that's the trade-off. And, and, and so the first strategic step, I think, is you've got to take care of septic, you've got to take care of roof, while at the same time, trying to work our magic within the building, maximizing as much space as, as we possibly can.
Karen?
Yeah, are other regional VOTEC schools facing the same problem you are, dealing with MSBA and applications? Because, I'll tell you, I was at the Mass Municipal Association meeting, a few of us were last week, and I was in a meeting where the regional school districts, and they weren't saying they were vocational, but the regional school districts were screaming about the way the state deals with them versus the way the states deal with the individual cities and towns.
Interesting.
So I, I think there were a bunch of them that were going to try to buttonhole the governor the next day. So I guess, to go back to my question, are other regional VOTECs finding the same problem with the state?
I would say in fairness that maybe two years ago was, it was two years ago where there were no vocational schools invited, but within the last few years, there have been, there have been a couple that, that happened. So Tri-County and Franklin, Northeast Metro Tech in Wakefield, they, they were invited in. Again, I think, I think if, if we trust the process, and they're, and they are being objective, and they are looking at, they're top priority in their legislation, when you look at that SOI, and you look at the nine factors, and you've got to check those boxes, if you're not checking number one, which is imminent health and safety...
Right.
Then, they, they are obligated under the statute to look at that first. So we don't, we don't check that as a priority. We check the boxes on obsolete buildings, we check the boxes on overcrowding. At times, they've said that we can control our own admissions, so, you know, for us to accept kids that we cannot safely accommodate would be inappropriate, and that, that's true, but yet, every year, the building, the building gets older. So I think, I think it is, I think it's a, it's a, it's a mixed bag.
Yeah. Well, and we heard from a couple of people from MSBA, they had a booth, that if you don't take good enough care of your schools, they're not happy with you. But if you take too good care of your schools, you don't need them. So it's, it's kind of puts you in a really weird position of, you know, and the fact is, we just had a new school built, so the fact that we got denied this time, I'm sure that must have factored in as well.
In 2013, we were accepted into the accelerated repair program, and, and we did, we were able to, with, with some E and D money, we were able to replace a boiler. But I know for certain that right after that project was done, and we applied, that I think 2015 would have been our first year of putting in a core program application, we were rejected. And the feedback that I got was, you were, that we were still in the pipeline, even though it takes another two years for the audit to be done, and the rest of that post, you know, that wrap-up, I definitely believe that that was a factor. And that's another judgment call. If you go in the ARP lane, you, you, you can't, you can't be putting in for both. And so I think we're at the point now where, if we went in the ARP lane and, and focused just on roofs, windows, and boilers, we might lose out on an opportunity to tell a, a wider story, which our communities could, you know, our communities, our eight communities would, you know, certainly, we can't go looking for a big renovation without, if there's a 50% coupon up the road in Boston, we've got to keep shooting for that.
Right.
And then, but, but in the meantime, you know, we will be coming back, probably talking about similar things, and I know that takes up most of the oxygen in terms of the infrastructure, but I want you to know that the, the educational delivery is sound, and we, we appreciate the support.
Four?
No questions, I'm just sad that our enrollment's down, so I hope that's not a trend.
Me too.
Yes, I, I, yeah.
Just remember that next year when it goes up.
I know, I know, I know, I know. My dad actually, I know.
I kept looking at the email, it says confirmed, right now.
Yes, yes, I made sure that was, increased the font size, yeah. Yeah, I think it's cyclical, I, I don't have any concerns. If I was concerned that we didn't have access to share what we offer, then I might say, "Hmm, what's up?", but I, I don't have any concerns.
But no questions, thank you for everything.
I don't either, thank you for coming in, thank you for the detail.
Thanks, everybody.
The kids get a great product.
Appreciate it.
Your program.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack. Does anyone need a quick break, if you want to go through capital first?
Well, Chris likes hanging around.
I'm good.
Everyone good?
Hi.
Why don't we do capital?
I was trying to make notes on it last night.
Next one.
Oh, Chris.
We have a handout?
Yes. It was attached. There it is.
I tried to print this, um...
Yes, correct.
So Nancy, we're getting, is what you just handed me tonight?
You already went to it.
Yeah, I tried to print it out, this is what I...
Chris, thanks for coming in, and we're a little behind schedule, but it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Committee's here, members here, or no?
Of course.
Thank you, you're a senator.
So we've looked at it, if you can go through the summary, tell us how it went, and then some of the questions we had.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the board. We had nine meetings this year. We looked at a total of 60 projects that were reviewed from all of the town departments, and we modified a few of the requests for numbers. The, there were 59 original requests, the percent funded was 63%. The funds requested, yeah, of the total requests were $34,541,869. The total recommended by the committee is $21,641,607, which is 63% of the total requested. The, there was nothing unusual on the capital... There was nothing unusual on the capital plan for this year, with a few exceptions. Minute Beach parking lot, they came to us with an original request of around two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand. The request was three years old, so we asked him to go back and have it redone. He came back in with a final request of two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-nine dollars. Committee recommended that. The public grounds department asked us if they could trade... Put off getting a pickup truck and trade that to get a log chipper a year earlier. So the committee voted to transfer forty-five thousand dollars from the pickup request to the log chipper request, and the DPW director and finance director identified the additional ten thousand to cover that. Widows Walk, their original request, just on our original page, tab five, was one-point-four million. After their project presentation of their three phases and everything, their final recommend... Request was one... One-point-eight-one-seven million, which Capital Planning recommended unanimously. Water Department, they had originally requested two-hundred-thousand dollars to continue the ice picking program, but due to the fact that ice picking is going the way of the dodo bird, they asked if we could transfer that two-hundred-thousand to the water meter replacement program, so we can keep on track with that rather than have to come back at special town meeting to request more in the fall. So the committee unanimously voted for that transfer. And the only other discrepancy there was in the final report that is corrected on what you have in front of you. There was a misprint for the school wireless smoke detectors. Originally said forty, the actual request and recommendation was for fifty thousand dollars. Other than that, it was a good year for debate. There were a bunch of good discussions on the different projects. I have a good committee this year, a lot of knowledge in the outside, you know, in these departments, in finance, in engineering. So we're able to really dig into these projects and ask them, you know, good, deep questions, and they're solid projects.
Who's new on your committee?
So new this year, Mike... Why did I just do that? Mike Clark.
Okay. Mike's on capital now?
Yep, he's on capital now. And I have John McCarthy, who was a recommendation or appointment from the new town moderator. He has a financial background and a specialty in IT, I believe.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, he's got a real good head for this, and he may be your next chairman.
Does he know that?
Not yet.
I'm gonna wait for a meeting when he doesn't show up.
Let him nominate himself. Are there any questions?
Great. So a quick summary, there's general budget, which is almost sixteen million dollars, and then the five enterprise funds. The financing of those was in their individual budgets, right, Nancy?
Yes.
But they weren't really capitalized for this year.
Yeah, they probably won't have any expenditures on these. Twenty-one and less short-term issues.
So the top five ticket items are... So there's a sixteen million dollar general fund budget, of which thirteen million... Did I say thousand? I meant sixteen million. Thirteen million of it is for shore protection with FEMA. So that's reimbursed seventy-five percent from FEMA, and so that's kind of outside of the norm. We've got seven-hundred thousand dollars for some high school locker rooms, which is seven-hundred thousand dollars, and then three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars for replacements of an ambulance. The parking lot, as Chris mentioned, is about three-hundred thousand dollars, and those are the big ticket items for the general fund. Typically, what is the general fund budget? Well, we typically finance somewhere between a million and a half and two million.
You know, trying to keep our schedule consistent. Parking lot is actually coming out of Beach of Volvo.
Oh, right. So what does this have us financing? Fourteen million minus... So a million one?
If...
Oh, wait.
We're gonna have to spread this out, especially with the third cliffs of FEMA projects. We're authorizing them now, but that's gonna be three to four years out before we actually do that project and start current debt for it.
Right. So twenty-five percent of that is only gonna be...
Three million.
Yeah.
And we're still hopeful we didn't get the seawall dam repair fund grant this year or a loan. We applied for it for that project.
So we would pay this with the line item in the budget, right, that we...
Yeah.
So that's kind of not really additional expense, because it would come out of the two-hundred thousand dollars.
No, I would say the two-hundred, what, the roads and seawalls money?
Yeah.
We usually leave that for grant matches and for any emergency paperwork.
Yeah, stuff like that.
We'll discuss that.
It doesn't preclude us from doing that.
Yeah, okay. And then the other stuff is financed through free cash. Again, dealing with the general fund, about a million for free cash, and then some stabilization fund money for the others. So it falls... It seems like it's a little higher than norm.
It is a little higher on the combined side of the norm, especially with that high school locker project.
Yeah. Okay. And then all of the enterprise funds, the big one at Widows Walk is the one-point-eight million dollars for the clubhouse renovation. Sewer is seven-hundred thousand dollars. Transfer station, sixty-five thousand. Seems low. And then water is two-point-six million, which is the two million dollars of the current replacement of the mains every year. And then the last one is waterways, which was one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And all of those are paid through the user fees of the enterprise fund. So any questions on any individual items? Karen?
Couple of quick ones. So the generate the library.
Project funds, not capital.
Okay, thank you.
Where is that?
It's not on here.
Number forty-six.
It's project funds. If we do it, it'll be out of the project funds as opposed to the capital budget.
Number forty-six, generate library, two-ten, not recommended, that that's...
Because we're helping you do that.
About the twenty, applying down to twenty.
Okay.
And then I and I Oceanside, is that reduced because it's just for design at this point?
Yes.
Okay. And then Hamrock Maines, that's... That was a large request. What's up with that?
Do we not do that this year? Because he's still in the design at this point?
Okay.
So we get money for design but not for replacement.
And last question, should there be... Oh, ice picking, if we're only gonna do a little, is that not gonna be a capital then?
He has money for this fiscal year that we'll use in the spring, but there's no money in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Sean?
No.
Karen?
Yeah, in the cases where we... There doesn't appear to be money for some of the roadwork, Briarwood, Bullrush Farm, Towns and Sedgwick, is that in the DPW budget?
Well, he has his chapter ninety money, and then he has road bridge money, road seawall money that we give. He will give you a list of what he's gonna do.
Okay.
Whether these are on there or not, I don't know, but he ends up cutting a bunch out individually.
Well, so that because they weren't recommended on this budget doesn't necessarily mean it won't happen.
Doesn't necessarily mean they're not gonna get done.
Thank you.
Curious on the floors for the schools. That's come up a lot, hasn't it? How many years does that come before us?
They had priority projects, essential projects, and basically mandated projects. This was the lowest priority, so of all of their projects, this was the only one that didn't come forward. The high school locker rooms were more important to them.
They have some carpeting up here.
And then my only other question that I don't want to get kicked down the road too far is the sewer facility plan.
That one was just pushed off for one year because they are in the facility study, which is ongoing right now, so we wanted to finish, get the results of that.
What's the difference between a study and a plan?
Their study will look at all the pump stations. A lot more money. Their study will look at all the pump stations and their flows, whereas the facility study is looking at the wastewater treatment plant specifically and the roof, the structural integrity of that. So why spend money on the same thing twice? Wouldn't it be able to say, okay, I have this study down, and give it to the... And get prices on what you need for the balance of it? Since they're already in one study, we're just...
All right, so we just push that out?
Similar to what is happening with the facility study, we took the eighty-eight plan, and that's just gonna get rolled into the facility study instead of doing it twice.
Okay.
So Nancy, is stuff gonna drop off that's gonna allow this to work?
Yes.
Good question.
Water is fairly stagnant.
No, I'm talking more general fund.
And not... Okay. The water debt service, that and that, the water debt service is even across the board because we just keep layering on, and we don't have the retirement. Sewers got significant retire... Retirement, and general fund also has retirement because we do rapid inrentation. We're gonna have to be careful with our general fund in order to keep that at one-point-six-ish level.
Right, because FEMA stuff is gonna throw it off.
FEMA stuff, but also if we start getting our reimbursements in, we can capture that and hold it in and transfer it, say, to the special and the capital stabilization earmarket.
Can we do that?
We've got it.
Okay. All right. Chris, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Next question.
Way to summarize it for us, and it's a lot of work. Hold up that book, Chris. This book, he goes through every one of these items, and it's a lot of work to come down and prioritize a limited amount of funds, so, great job.
So far, it's still fun, so.
Now you're lying.
You're on record.
Now we have... There's three citizen petition articles or four citizen petition articles that we're gonna go over now, and then we'll take a five-minute break before the water study.
Oh, that's part of the...
We'll come back. We'll come back to that.
What's that?
Does a review draft ATM, STM, what? We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Because that's Nancy and I, we don't need everybody to sit around for that.
Great. So South Shore Community Action Council, is Susan here? All right? Just saved five grand. How about the Resolution Act establishing Medicare? Heather Clark. Hi, Heather. Lorraine, can we just discuss... Put that one on the next meeting to talk about?
Sure.
Let's just run it late now. I don't wanna... Hi, how are you?
Very good. Thanks for having me.
So we have your petition. We read it.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about what it is and why you want to do it.
Sure. Well, would it be helpful to the assembly for me to read the proposed resolution and then my statement? Or is there no need to repeat that?
Was yours the really long one?
I don't know. I cut it to fit on the page.
Yeah, or summarize it the best you can.
I worked hard. Okay. This is a citizen petition for a town of Situate resolution supporting an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts. Access to affordable, quality health care is a human right and fundamental to a just society. The U.S. remains the only industrialized nation that does not provide universal health coverage to its citizens. Recent healthcare reforms still leave many citizens with costs beyond their means and care below their needs. Massachusetts families also face a high burden of healthcare costs relative to their income. The town of Situate remains committed to providing high-quality healthcare to town employees and retirees while recognizing that the money spent by towns to cover their employees is a large and growing cost, both to local governments and to their employees. The town of Situate projects a cost of more than six-point-one million dollars for employee and retiree health insurance for fiscal year 2020, representing seven-point-six percent of the town's total budget of seventy-nine million, seventy-nine-point-seven million, and six-point-four-eight million for health insurance in fiscal year 21, representing seven-point-nine percent of the town's budget of eighty-one-point-nine million. These costs continue to rise, increasing the tax burden on local taxpayers. And the statement goes, "Whereas these funds could be better spent to improve education, services, and desperately needed infrastructure in our town, and to increase our hard-working public employees' wages and salaries, including teachers, first responders, and employees of our town departments. Whereas a single-payer Medicare for All system would guarantee medical care, dental care, and eye and ear care for Massachusetts residents regardless of income or employment by simplifying the way we pay for healthcare while keeping the delivery of care in private hands. Whereas the Massachusetts Senate bill, and I'll make this change on the floor, S-683 and House Bill H-1194 seek to establish a healthcare trust funded through a payroll tax that is less costly to Massachusetts residents than their current premiums, deductibles, and co-pays, while A) covering all necessary preventative and medical care and medical treatment; B) enabling people to see any in-state provider for healthcare; and providing for out-of-state emergency care; and C) ensuring health decisions are made between patients and their healthcare providers, not insurance adjusters. Whereas Massachusetts has always been a leader and innovator in providing coverage for quality healthcare for its people, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Situate endorses the House and Senate bill, improved Medicare for All. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to Massachusetts Governor Charles Baker, State Treasurer Deborah Goldberg, Mass Senate President Karen Spilka, Mass Speaker of the House Robert DeLeo, the original sponsors of Mass Senate Bill and Mass House Bill, Mass Senator Jamie Eldridge, and Mass Representative Lindsay Sabadosa, Situate's representatives, Mass Senator Patrick O'Connor and Mass Representative Patrick Kearney, the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Healthcare Financing, Massachusetts Representative Jennifer Benson, and Mass Senator Cindy Friedman, U.S. Representatives Stephen Lynch, U.S. Senators Elizabeth Warren, and U.S. Senator Ed Markey." So that's the resolution.
Great.
And I have...
So I'll try and summarize... Oh, go ahead. No, you go first.
All right. Just why I'm here and why I'm doing this. Like the majority of Americans, I believe that healthcare is a human right. It should not depend on how much money you have, who you work for, or what your employer decides that you deserve in terms of healthcare. Our current system of healthcare coverage is simply not working. It is massively expensive. It is inefficient. It does not cover everyone. Though we pay more per capita than any developed nation in the world, we have worse health outcomes. Even those with insurance are finding it increasingly costly to get needed care. Some cannot afford to use their insurance because of high deductibles, co-pays, coinsurance, and high drug costs. The threat of bankruptcy caused by medical debt is something that affects every one of us in this room, every one of us in this town, even if we have insurance. The majority of bankruptcies in America are caused by medical debt. The majority of those bankruptcies happen to people with insurance. Most Americans know this to be true, but what can we in Situate do about it? This article is a start. Across the country and across the Commonwealth, support has been growing for single-payer Medicare for All, and the majority of Americans support it. However, political gridlock in Washington has created tremendous challenges to getting anything done through Congress. We in Massachusetts cannot wait for Washington to get itself in order. We lead in healthcare, we do not follow. Situate is spending almost eight percent of its total annual budget on health insurance, and that covers only a small number of people measured as a percentage of our population. This bill proposes a seven-point-five percent payroll tax on employers with an additional point-four-four percent payroll tax for employers with more than one-hundred employees. So Situate would pay just about eight percent of payroll, not of its entire budget, under this scheme. Additionally, Medicare for All would not charge different rates for older or sicker employees, reducing cost volatility from year to year. For aging workforces like Situate's, this is especially significant. All employees, including town employees, would pay a payroll tax of two-point-five percent. With the elimination of premiums, co-pays, coinsurance, out-of-pocket expenses, the vast majority of workers would realize significant savings. Their coverage would be better, too, including medications, dental, vision, hearing or hearing aids, and long-term care in the home if medically recommended. Medicare currently does not cover these services. Medicare currently does not cover these services. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts spends almost half of its annual revenues on healthcare. UMass economist Gerald Friedman projects savings of 15.75% of our current healthcare spending in the state, or about $21 billion in savings that could potentially be used and be made available to cities and towns, investment in infrastructure, transit, education, expansion of services, or other job-creating investments. The town of Situate, the town of Situate resolution in support of S 683 and H 1194, an act establishing Medicare for all in Massachusetts, is non-binding. But it sends a message to our elected officials that the current method of paying for health insurance is not sustainable. It is burdening our residents, our town, and it is not providing the coverage that our residents and town employees need and deserve. Situate State Representative Patrick Kearney is a cosponsor of Medicare for all in Massachusetts. Our state Senator Patrick O'Connor is not. And as you probably know, there's a significant movement on the federal level with Medicare for all bills now pending in the U.S. House and Senate. It's worth noting, at the federal level, that six of our state's nine congresspersons and both of our U.S. Senators have signed on as cosponsors of the federal Medicare for all bill. Our Congressman, Stephen Lynch, has refused to do so. We need to send a message that the status quo is not acceptable and that we need our leaders in Massachusetts to come together for the good of all of our residents, all of our towns and cities, and support Medicare for all in Massachusetts. In closing, economists across the political spectrum agree that the savings realized through a single-payer Medicare for all system will more than compensate for the cost of covering the uninsured. This holds for both studies of a federal, single-payer system as well as for a state-based system in Massachusetts. Medicare for all in Massachusetts will reduce the rising costs that cities and towns are now struggling to keep pace with while improving coverage and guaranteeing actual choice for our hard-working town employees. Additionally, it would take this contentious issue off the table in contract negotiations so both sides could focus on compensation, working conditions, and quality of life issues. We know healthcare in this nation is a politically charged topic, but the numbers speak for themselves. I ask only that the Board of Selectmen subject this article to the same level of examination and scrutiny that you bring to every issue you cover. First, is this good for the townspeople of Situate? Second, is it fiscally responsible for the town of Situate? Third, will this allow us to plan for our future? And fourth, are we doing things this way because we've always done it this way? Frankly, the most expensive option for us is to do nothing. We are only one town, this is only one non-binding resolution, but we can lead change. I encourage the Board of Selectmen to recommend a vote of yes on the article at town meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a non-binding article before us. It's a petition article, and for those who don't know, all you have to do is get 10 signatures at any of your town meetings. You can put it on the warrant, and then you'll get up and speak to it, and then we'll give our opinion in terms of whether we support it or not. So, I'm going to turn to Ms. Canfield first, if you have any questions or any.
It's a good day. No, thank you for bringing, I think that you're exactly right, that it's a very cutting, it's a very pertinent issue that is before a lot of people, and I think that municipalities have, it's our responsibility to let our leaders know what we think. So I think it's entirely appropriate to ask the question of the town meeting, what they think about this. It's a very, it's a very pros and cons kind of thing. I will note that tomorrow, the State House's deadline to decide whether or not to act on those particular bills will be decided. So, it's quite possible that if it goes to study, which is a slow death, that it won't impact the decision-making this term.
This term.
But I also think that it's worth the conversation because it's certainly not an issue that's going to go away. That's my two cents. So, thank you for bringing it forward.
Sean, any?
Well, being an employer of a dozen people, I'm quite interested in learning more about it, but I hear a lot more questions at 9:30 at night, a quarter at ten, like Faden.
And certainly, if you, I mean, if you or the other selectmen have questions, I can get answers for you, and there are summaries available, as well as the entire text of the law, of the bill. So, yeah.
I'd like to hear a lot more about it, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Maura?
I agree with Sean. Thank you for all your work, bringing it forward, but we just got all the links, you know, two days ago. So, I would like to educate myself as well before I weighed in. There are always little nuances hidden in different bills.
I only got the data we discussed.
But, you know, depending on what happens at the State House, it sounds like, even if they do postpone it, I just want to read some of the information that you gave us.
Sure, sure. And I think what you'll notice is that, I mean, several of those items are about a national approach. Several of them are about a state or Commonwealth-level approach. There's a lot of energy generated to move on both levels. I mean, essentially, I think most people agree that reform needs to happen. We can't keep doing what we're doing, it's not financially sustainable. So, moving forward on the federal, at the federal level, moving forward at the state level, I think that people feel like, you know, we need to push the agenda forward at all places. And as I said, I mean, I think that if the Board of Selectmen examines the information and weighs all of the questions that you customarily weigh of everything that you look at, you know, is this something that would improve the fiscal and livelihood of the town if the system were to change in this way? I'm not anticipating any great immediate changes, but I think a resolution, like many other municipalities have done in Massachusetts, I think I may have given you the list of towns that have passed similar resolutions, and I do think there's value in bringing it to the floor of town meeting so that the Board and, you know, residents can all know what each other are feeling and thinking about that.
Karen?
Well, I don't want to throw a wet blanket on it, but I think one of the problems I've got is that at town meeting, we tend to deal with local town issues. And I think you've done a very good job at getting down to what it would mean for the town.
Right.
So, I appreciate it. But our town meetings tend to go very long, and sometimes we have to go into a second night, and the citizen's petition articles are at the very end. And I think this is a topic that is so fraught, and I'm in total agreement, surprise, surprise, Medicare for all, I believe in it. But I just question the venue here, and if there was some way for us to put it out to town meeting, get a sense of town meeting without making it, you know, some sort of...
Does such a mechanism exist, other than a resolution?
I guess because it's citizen petition and it's non-binding, but I'd want to make it clear to town meeting that it's asking town meeting for its sense about this particular type of program, so.
Well, I mean, the fact that it's a non-binding resolution and that, you know, as I was reminded in the Advisory Committee, Massachusetts has a long history of resolutions about issues that, you know, go beyond their communities, but this one, in fact, has a very concrete bearing on everyone who's going to be at town meeting. I mean, it's true, it is fraught, and you could discuss it for a long period of time, but I think it's very much, I mean, as we sat here listening to all of the costs that are coming toward the town and, you know, where you're going to squeeze money out, you know, this is the biggest, you know, place where a dramatic cost savings could be realized that also improves the service.
Right.
It's hard to, you know, it's hard to find something else that the town could address that could that dramatically make that change.
Well, we have had debates over the years about the appropriateness of various types of resolutions and citizen's petitions, and I would hope that this is going to go on the warrant no matter what. And so, but my hope would be that we would agree in some way to kind of limit the discussion time so that we're not up at 1:00 AM in the morning talking for the next hour and a half about the wisdom of this. So, that's my only concern about it.
Right, so unfortunately, we have no control over that. I mean, the moderator will.
Well, the moderator does have some.
Yeah, the moderator will. So, my two cents on it is, I don't know enough about it to really opine on it, and just because you come to me and say healthcare's going to be better, it's going to be cheaper, I don't know if that's accurate. You know, I don't, it may be, but I don't know.
But the data is there, and the data does concur, and if you need more data, I can provide it.
So, I think the town would really, it seems like this would be something that the town would have to really research and really come to that opinion as opposed to you, or some, you know, some politician that's doing something. Now, this would be something that Nancy and a committee or a financial forecasting committee would look into and say, okay, let me understand this better, and let me see what the impact is. And then really, you're asking for, you know, what it, let's say it's 11:30 at night, you know, there's 101 people left at town meeting, so we're going to vote and we're going to give a town opinion based on 100 people at a meeting. It seems like it's disconnected a little. You know, I just think it's, I don't see the, I mean, I support the initiative in looking into it and understanding it more, but again, if we get a 55 to 46 vote of support on a non-binding issue, so now the whole town of Situate supports this initiative?
But isn't that true for anything that comes at the end of the agenda in a town meeting?
Yeah, but it's an opinion. You're asking for an opinion, not for a, are we going to buy that car? You know, that's concrete and that's going to happen based on a majority vote. You're asking for us to make a declaration that the town believes that this is the right thing based on a very, very small percent of the population opining on something they probably don't know a ton about.
But it would entail any expenditure of funds as, say, a purchase of a car or a truck.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't know that the end result is really indicative of what it may sound like it is. You know, all of a sudden, we're writing all the people's names that you wrote up, saying the town of Situate supports this motion when it's, you know, it's really...
Well, it might be better on a ballot.
Well, I'm going to go forward with the petition.
No, no. No, no. It's your right to do it, and we support that. I'm just giving you my opinion.
And I don't know what to anticipate in terms of what the town, what the townspeople might vote or not vote, but I do think it's a vitally important issue, and I guess my question to the Board here would be, if not this, then what? Do you propose to solve this escalating problem of healthcare costs?
I'm going to let Karen can solve that. You can be the advisor to solving.
I think what the chairman is saying is, it's two different things. So, one is, is your question, should the town be doing this because it's good for us?
Right, right.
The second question is, is the town meeting forum appropriate to make a declaration as a town, given the limitations of it that, you know, that he's already outlined?
Sure.
They're different things, and so when we as a Board are going to make the decision whether to support or not support it.
To endorse or not, yeah.
It's not going to be solely on the merits of the proposal, it will be on the appropriateness of us encouraging the community to support it in that way. I don't know what the mechanisms are for getting on a ballot, I don't think that's a, I mean, typically, this sort of declarative statement, you put it on a ballot so that the whole community has an opportunity to weigh in.
Get more exposure.
Even for a non-binding resolution?
Well, for non-binding, yeah, the risk is, it may pass with 30 people, but we may choose not to write the letter to the legislature because it's non-binding.
Right, right. Oh, I see what you're saying.
And that obviously is not your intention.
Perhaps not, but for me, the, I mean, I think the discussion would be worthwhile, and so I'm certainly willing to go forward to it.
That's your right, that's what town meeting is.
Right, and as I said, I mean, this might be the beginning of a series of conversations that the town needs to have an address. You know, this might be the first step in what turns out to be a process that may, or, you know, that may be part of a larger series of things happening. But it is something that is, concerns everyone in town and has a very large price tag attached to it. And so, as such, I think that it is appropriate, even if people peter out at 11:30. You know, the last time I was in a very late meeting, the longest discussion was over the marijuana zoning, and that went on and on and on and on, and I would posit that that probably wasn't as important, but, but thank you.
Thank you for coming in. If we have any other questions, we'll contact you.
Yeah, I hope you will, because there is a lot of data that will answer probably any question you might have.
And we'll vote on this at another, whenever we vote the whole more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next petition article is the right to farm. Come on up.
Farmers are...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, I'm going to request.
I'm Jerry Hammond.
Hi, Jerry, hold on for one second. Okay. Go right ahead.
If you, I have three points. If you like quick, we'll try to be quick. If you like free, it's free. If you like freshly grown, local produce, that's what we're here to talk about tonight. So, this petition of right to farm, I'm looking to bring it to town meeting, and I'm hoping that you two will endorse it. I'm going to read some things. There's no new costs. Roughly more than 140 towns in the Commonwealth have adopted this bylaw, including Marshfield and Norwell, adjacent to us. So, we're not in a new zone, a new world. My charming bride here of 50 years has just passed out the typical bylaw that was signed by the clerk. I think you might have received an earlier one, but the one that you have, that you've just received, is the one that will be filed, as I understand it. I've never done this before, so. Just a little bit of a background. We have the legal amount of people signing it. Background, we came to live in Situate in 1971, about 50 years ago. My wife taught school here until our family began. Originally, I'm a farm boy from the Midwest, have farming in my background, and I haven't practiced that necessarily in the past number of years, but we found land, an acreage, in '85 in part of the old Tilden farm. And the old Tilden farm, if you knew a little bit about it, was wide open, it was being farmed, it was originally purchased from a chief Tecumseh in Plymouth more than 400 years ago, and it was considered the oldest continuous farm in the country. It was continually farmed. The, a big product was rhubarb, I believe, that the Tildens would take into Boston to sell to the markets on, in their farm wagons, horse and wagons, and that sort of thing. So, we purchased a house and came across a piece of land, part of that, in '85, a house and some land. So, as time went on, we planted. And back in, about 20 years ago, I started planting an Asian pear orchard, which I still nurture and is growing and tend to today. So, the rest of the property of the Tildens is currently now asphalt streets and roads and about 26 houses, which is fine and that sort of thing, but if we look at what we'll have or had in open space, it's not open space anymore. Farming is something that isn't necessarily always pretty, or noise, can be noisy, it can be smelly, but it produces wonderful things. And I think that we're back in the movement of locally grown produce. We sell to a number of farm markets, farmers' markets, and... We sell to a number of farm markets, farmers' markets, and this, this man, one in, in Hingham, a very active market.
Have you been to the Hingham Market?
That's, that's, that's.
Have you seen it?
And, and we also sell to restaurants too, around the South Shore. So, one of the things that's been said, that between now and 2050, that's relatively less than 30 years from now, we need to double the food production in this world to feed people, the people in the world in 2050. It's sort of an amazing thing, but it starts to get a little tighter when you start thinking of what we're eliminating for housing, for asphalt, and paving, runoff, and just lack of open space that, that we're doing. So, we're, we're here to advocate that this petition be, hopefully, that you like it, that you might back it. Situate is, has a small, makes a small, a small contribution to it. We're a series of, small, a series of small, little farms, but we still produce veggies, leafy greens, pumpkins, blueberries, cranberries, corn, Asian pears, and Christmas trees. So, we're all small businesses. We're committed to the land growing food because we like the land. It's not like this is something that we hate the job, we wouldn't be doing it if we, if we, if we didn't like it. So.
So, tell us what, what the article itself is going to do.
The article itself is going to endorse farming. It will give farmers an identity that they, they will have in, if people, we're, we're surrounded with neighbors, and neighbors don't necessarily like noise and that. So, we need to be a little bit of a coalition that we know who we are, we have a little bit of identity, and that's the big thing that we're, that we're behind.
So, it says amend the current bylaw. It says, vote to amend the bylaw.
I don't think there is, there, the bylaw would be the current zoning, everything would conform to the current zoning.
So, none of this language is in our bylaws right now, and you want the farmer's aspect to be, actually be in the bylaws?
Right, right, right.
So, identifying, defining what a farm is, and what else? I see the definitions.
Well, it, it fits into the existing town zoning. There's nothing to be changed there if we, page 17 of the zoning regs, there, there's a, an A and a B in agriculture, horticulture, viticulture, aquaculture, and floriculture, that you can do all those things in residential districts or in village centers. You cannot do currently things like poultry farms, or a piggery, or something like that. You have to, in, in village centers. That would be an obvious, that wouldn't, you know, it's nothing that, that would be expected. There was, no one has any right to, to try to push that and, and change that, because it would all fit into the current town.
So, all this is, is defining a group?
Yes.
It's not giving them any rights?
No.
You said no?
I said no. Well, no, nothing to do with it.
Well, rights as being known as farmers. We, we have a very few farms, not nearly as many as Norwell, or Marshfield, or other inland.
But does it, does it change anything that a farmer can do today?
No, no, it doesn't.
It's just that when people come to the town, it would be a farming, we accept farmers in our town. Am I right?
But we accept, do we not accept them?
By, by, we, we accept them now, but we would encourage, by doing this, we would encourage farming, which by encouraging farming, would encourage the farmers to maintain their fields of operation, which continues the character of Situate, which we've lost a great deal of open space if we can see all of the, every wooded lot being made into a, a single McMansion, and it would.
But it wouldn't stop somebody to sell, if they wanted to sell their farm.
Right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop that, but it would encourage farming to continue. And the continuation of open fields, as you drive through the town, the cranberry places, the tree berry farm.
I'm going to ask one question, Pastor Shawn. How is it going to do that? How's it going to do that? Because it puts the, the title and definitions of a farmer in our.
Yes.
It's going to encourage people to do it?
Right, well, it's being done now. I don't think that you're going to see new farming, because there's not a lot of open space left.
If we adopt this, I'm just trying to wrap my arms around it, if we adopt this, does that give you, or anyone else, more, more of a right to do another type of operation on your current parcel of property?
No, no, why would it? It doesn't.
It's just to say, we're a farm, we live in Situate. There are farms in Situate, that's all.
It, it helps to unite us somewhat against situational lawsuits that might come about by butters and neighbors who really like food, but they don't like the whole organization and the operation of it.
Yeah, the phrase they, oh, go ahead.
No, well, I guess you might have just, I don't know if you contradicted yourself. Let's say you have an acre on your candle, and I know where you occupy the Tildens.
Right, right.
And you want to have pigs and chickens.
Right.
All right? We don't have this status now, we do have it in the future, does that prevent a person in one of those new homes, they can't, they cannot stop you from doing what you want to do?
As long as, as long as the application fits the various districts and the zoning that the town has. For example, the poultry, or livestock, or piggery is listed as a yes in residential zones R1, 2, 3, and RM, and commercial districts. It's not, not available to do in village center and neighborhood districts. But you'd have, you'd have, well, you know, look at the, at the worst, the worst case that you, if you wanted to create something like that, which is, you know, that's kind of out there. We don't have any of that in Situate, as opposed to some other towns, inland towns. But you would need to meet the zoning, the setbacks, and setbacks to wetlands, and runoff, and all of that. So, it would be a process to go through, if you wanted to do it. It, it's, it's a freedom of United, of the United States.
But nothing changes, it's just the right to farm. Everybody has a right to farm.
I did a little bit of research within Milwaukee. So, I sent you three articles to three local towns that implemented this, and it's just basically saying that you support farming in the community.
Yeah, it's, that's.
It does not change.
If you've, if you've gone, sometimes you're going, coming into Norwell, there's some, some sign, it'll be below the town, a little small sign attached to the bottom under entering Norwell will say right to farm community. That's all it is.
I'm Tree City.
Yes.
So, Jim, is town council making this?
We haven't sent anything off from yet, no.
Karen, any questions?
No, I would be curious to see what council and the planning board had to say before we decided.
I checked with planning, and they said it doesn't go with the planning board. Board of Health said they would like to speak with them.
What about zoning?
It doesn't have any changes to zoning, this is just a general bylaw.
Okay.
Sure.
No, I asked a.
Karen?
Well, having spent the past few months going over and over and over the aquaculture bylaw, this has an impact on that discussion and on, on those bylaws, because we spent a lot of time trying to make sure that the neighbors would not be disturbed, that we put a lot of conditions on how they're going to use, where they're going to use, what hours of operation, et cetera, et cetera. And I think this kind of lies in the face of that. So, and, and I suspect you will get some pushback from people who would be concerned about, could there be a piggery in their, you know, contiguous area? People do complain about that. We do have bylaws restricting noise, restricting all sorts of other things. So, I think there are some, I'm not against farmers, but I would also suggest that the reason why there are fewer farmers is because the land became more valuable as house lots than it was as farming. And I think it's too bad that horse is out of the barn, but that's the reality, I think.
Sure, sure.
I, I don't think this happened because people, that we were too restrictive as a town, in terms of what we allowed farmers to do. And so, I'm just concerned, there's an issue about pesticides here, it doesn't say what kind of pesticides you can use. I can hear the organic people going.
The, the one that was signed does not include pesticides.
Well, this one has pesticides on it.
I don't believe it did.
Well, in the definitions, on the.
Control of pests.
Control of pests, but not pesticides. I think it's fertilizer or herbicide.
Well, I think people would say, well, how are you going to control the pests? Are they going to be organic? Is it going, I, I just see issues related to this being put in our bylaws, and then having someone come and say, well, this bylaw conflicts with another bylaw.
This is the town's opportunity to say no, but it's also the town's opportunity to not shut the door and become a Newton, and you go three towns away to buy your local produce. I have, came, I had a little cute cartoon that, that I had out, and a woman is leaving with her bags from a farmer's market, and a guy standing on the outside of the perimeter is opening up his jacket and saying, sulfites, sodium nitrates, artificial coloring? So, I think that's what we don't want to have. And as the saying goes, or the bumper sticker goes, that you probably have seen, is no farms, no food.
I, I don't disagree with you. I guess my question is, have we done things as a town that's made it difficult to be a farmer here? I would rather that we try to look at it in a more positive viewpoint. Are there things that we could put in our bylaws that would suggest that, you know, we are friendly to farmers, and that, you know, we're supportive of farming?
Such as, as this?
Yeah.
A right to farm?
I guess I have issues related to the specific wording of it.
Sure, sure. Maura?
No questions.
Yeah, so I have the same concerns as Karen, and I, I know that people are going to get hung up on the language right here. You know, that's, it, it sounds like you're, it sounds like this document is saying that you can farm whenever you want, you can make whatever noise you want, whatever odors and dust and fumes.
Whenever you want.
And because, and because we accept farmers, it might determine that whatever impact caused to others through the normal practice of agriculture is more than offset by the benefits of farming. So, it seems like you're saying, farmers can do what they want and be given good food. I mean, I'm just saying what it reads, so.
Well, I, I give you a personal chapter. I've run into conflict with wetland issues with conservation myself, and they have pulled me back, and I'm at defined perimeters of doing what they, what they record as wetlands. They've also recorded a, a statement saying that I may farm an activity from dawn to dusk. That's a big change in dusk in December 21st to June 21st. So, there's a big difference there, but farmers need that time in the summertime, that sometimes they need to be able to go to their fields and perform activities, and farming isn't always pretty, as one has said.
There are.
But what you're saying is kind of saying what I just said. You know, you're, you're asking town to say, well, farming's tough, but just deal with it, because we're going to have odors, and we're going to have fumes, and we're going to have all this stuff, and now we have a bylaw that says it. So, that, that's what my concern is. And I'll read some of the, I mean, if, if Lorraine sent us some links, we'll, we'll look into those.
Sure, sure.
And then we can.
Check the other town.
Yeah, okay.
We'll do.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Chairman? Did we finalize the location of the Situate Farmer's Market for the next summer?
Not yet.
Not yet? Well, where do you want them to submit their special events? Okay. And we have them.
I know you do. We've been there.
It's not too active, no, we, it's not very active.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
They're working hard on that.
They are, they are.
Everyone's.
Encourage farming, and there'll be more people. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
They have it there.
Take parts, okay.
Did you have something?
No, bring them to the farmer's market.
I did, I was saying, Mary's parking lot, not enough.
Isn't that gone?
Well, I don't know if anyone's here for it. So, the last one, the last one that we have, the petition article, which we kind of discussed before and supported, was the change of the occupancy tax from 6% to 4%. So, I don't know that the board needs to talk about that anymore, but I didn't know if anyone in the audience was here to discuss it.
No member? She came in already.
No, not tonight?
No.
Yeah, okay, are you guys good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we're going to get into the water study. So.
I'm just.
Okay, so we have a, a water study by Time Bond, that Mike's going to present and go over. We'll, probably about a 15, 20-minute presentation, and then we'll open it up for some questions and go into some of the areas that, that get addressed. So, Mike, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, so I'm going to go.
Bruce, can you hit the lights?
Fairly quick. And if anybody has a, you guys want to slow me down, Jack, Neil, stop me, okay?
Yep.
You know, in the interest of time, I'm going to go a little quicker. So, good evening, my name is Mike Schrager, I'm here with John McMillan, and we're here to talk about the water system master plan. And so, for those of you that were at our last meeting, some of this will be repeated, and for those of you not, this is.
Mike, I'm going to, I don't think anyone behind you can see, because I just think where you're standing. Are you, yeah, maybe stand on this side? Yeah, yeah.
I'm a regular, I don't know if I can do this.
Closer to the table, just move that chair, and you can stand right.
This is, this is fine. So, what we're going to talk about is supply evaluation, talking about how much water you have, the ability to meet future demands, which consists of estimating the future population, using that to estimate future demands, looking at source water quality, and then, so the three big parts of this is supply evaluation, prioritize capital improvement program, talks about our baseline assessment, hydraulic evaluation, and a condition, level of service evaluation, and storage, and then the brownwater plan update. So, we first talk about is an item that's of interest to most people, is the ability to meet future demands here. And so, when we look at that, it really is a matter of supply and demand. In this case, the supply is the total available water supply, and then the demand is the projected water use. So, when we use the word demand with water supply, it's the, it's the want, or the amount of water that people need, is referred to as demand. So, a couple notes, is that these are all based on projections and assumptions, and I think even more importantly, this is not a one-time decision. It's not something we're going to decide now. We've looked at, into the future and made projections, but it's something that you continue to monitor and watch. So, when we look at the supply, or, I'm sorry, we look at the demand, we're going to start with the projected population, which is the first half of the equation, and then the second is, how much water will that population use? So, to project the population growth, which is, is a bit of speculation, we look at source data, so we don't generate population projections, right? That's a complicated look at birth rates and death and all that stuff. We use, we look for credible and accurate source data. So, existing data that is available right now is two sources. One is the population and housing demand projections for Metro Boston, that's done from the MAPC, which is referred to as a regional planning organization, like a pseudo-public agency. So, they did an evaluation in 2014, and then the UMass Donahue incident, I'm sorry, Institute did one in March 2015, long-term projections for mass regions and municipalities. The methodologies in each one are a little bit different. MAPC uses two methodologies, the status quo, which is what they think they see at the time, and then the strong region is, I guess, more optimistic, with higher growth and higher development. UMass uses component of change methodology based on trends at the town level fertility and mortality rates. So, and at the same time, the town itself is working on a master plan update, which has its own population projections that were, are being developed. So, looking at the, predicting the population, or projecting it, I should say, we start with the data that's available, which is the decennial census. The next one is going to be in 2020, and so, the last one is 2010. And then, the next piece of data are what they call the five-year American community surveys, which is also a census product, they call it a data product, and that's published by the Census as well. So, that shows we have, you know, some increase here, and then a little bit more increase. And then what's interesting is the projections from the regional planning organizations. Donahue was projecting a decrease in population. Donahue is projecting a decrease in population. And then, just to be clear, this is the data that they projected and then that's us extrapolating it. So, we've assumed a linear progression for each one. And MAPC, the status quo, is a slight decrease, but not as much. And then that MAPC strong region is higher than that. And then you can see the differences. My clicker's not working. It's a little bit lower than that last point on the last X there from the American Community Survey. So, what we did is we just shifted it up to be on the same level. So, really, we're using them as a rate of change, not so much an actual number. So, that's what we used for the population growth. It's still a pretty minimal growth in terms of what they're projecting. So, that's the first half. The second half is then to look at usage, okay? What did the water usage look like historically to trend the existing population and what do we think that this additional growth will use? So, we look at historic data. Water use is something that has a directional indication to it, meaning that it's usually trending. It's usually going up or going down. It has a number of things impacted, but we want to see what it looks like. So, over the last 10 years, this is what it's sort of looked like. It's been up and down, sort of stabilizing, and trending off. In the last three years, it stabilized. As we see here, the water use has actually been declining by an average of 2.4% per year over this whole period. Interestingly enough, in the state, the systems are split, pretty much 50/50. Half of them going up, half of them are going down. And the really interesting thing is it's almost by the same amount. It's about a percent a half and a half on average. And that, you know, water use is going down because of more efficient fixtures, increased conservation, and smaller family sizes, which is interesting. So, this was the drought, the 2016 drought, and we can see that was the usage there. And it's really only changed slightly from there for 2018. And then, looking at the projections, so the projected amount includes the projected demands from the additional people plus commercial growth. And just so you know, that I'm pulling a fast one here, these jumped. So, this goes 2018 to 2030, 40, 50. So, that's a much bigger jump over here. So, one of the planning projections, the MAPC looked at commercial growth and in the robust or the strong economy version, it had projected, I think it was 20% increase in commercial growth. So, we use factors and we added that too. So, our intent here was to be conservative high, right? We want to look at what we think it could be. So, then we look at, well, how much water do we have? So, if that's how much water, you know, we think about is we want and we will want, how much do we have to give? And that's defined primarily by a permit through the state. It's called the Water Management Act Permit. And that is, it's a statewide program and it has both blanket provisions and then specific provisions for the town. And for Situate-specific provisions is it goes from 2016 to 2030. It's three five-year increments. The total usage is 1.8 million gallons per day without mitigation. So, you're going to hear that word a little bit tonight. Mitigation basically means that if you're going to go beyond that, you have to do something to put water back into the ground to help, you know, maintain the watershed. Another provision here is to continue to work on the restoration of the herring run and the operational plan for the reservoir. There's a provision here for adding the Hummer Rock area. So, this is a great time to say that that part of town is maintained by the town, but the water comes from Marshfield. So, basically, what the permit allows is basically a transfer. They would allow Situate to have a little more capacity and they presumably would take that away from Marshfield. So, it's sort of a net sum gain or a net sum zero.
Yep.
Okay. So, and that, what the permit's based on, and it's a pretty thick document, it's based on the impacts of withdrawal, safe yield, source protection. And safe yield, for this context, is the amount of water you can take from either well or the surface water supply that doesn't impact the ecological systems that it's associated with, right? So, you can take that water from the well and you're not hurting the, you know, the fauna, the flora, and that kind of thing. It also looks at reasonable economic development and job creation, meaning that they've given you some projected increase. They're expecting reasonable conservation and stakeholder input. So, that goes through this whole process. The permit was issued in 2016. So, if we look at this, and again, there's a lot of numbers here and a lot of different factors, but if we look at it starting at the bottom, this is the average annual permit through 2020. So, it does have growth built into it. So, the first step is 1.75 and that's million gallons per day. So, we're talking total usage here. And the next step goes up to 1.8 in 2030 at the end of the permit without mitigation. Then if you do, whoops, got ahead of myself there, if you do with mitigation, you bump up a little bit more to 1.85. The next number is more of a measure of what the sources could put out in terms of maximum capacity. And that's called the safe yield. And that's without consideration of stream flow releases, just sort of putting it out there as a reference for source capacity. The current production capacity, which we'll talk about a little bit more, is 3.88. And the permit has both a total annual volume that you can take from each source and it's specific by each of your sources. And then it also has a maximum value that you can take out of each source, a maximum daily value. And that would be 4.84. So, kind of a lot of numbers. I'm going to keep going if we need to come back after we can. And again, now when we look at our projections, so this was the 16, 17, 18, the last three years of use. So, we use that to project what we think the existing population is going to continue to use, your existing customers, and then add it on for residential, commercial, and other uses for the 20, 30, 40, and 50 time periods. And I apologize, it's a little small here. This says Water Management Act Total Permit Limit with mitigation is that little dotted line. And this is no mitigation. And the reason that bends is remember there was those two increments where it went up. So, the mitigation line doesn't change, but that one does. So, what we're seeing here, this is average day. So, we're looking at both average day and we look at max day. They're two separate things. And Sean can tell you, they're two separate challenges, right? So, and then above here is that total safe yield, that's sort of that total capacity number. So, what we're seeing ...
Mike, before you go past this, well, when you're done with this, let's just talk about this slide. So, if I understand this correctly, the graphs, the bar graphs on the bottom are how much water we're using and how much we project to use. We'll forget the curved line because we do have mitigation. That dotted line is what we're allowed to pull out.
Yep.
And then the large dash line up there is what we could safely pull out of our water supply.
Right. Which is above the permit amount.
If it were permitted.
If it were permitted.
But we have, so on a max day, we could easily, we could safely pull out almost 2.5 million gallons a day.
Correct.
So, what I'm seeing here is we have water. We're not going to run out of water.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, looking at max day, it's a similar situation. So, now, which is interesting, you see the max has gone down, the peak day use. Again, the projections go up, same projection categories. And looking here, we see that's your 3.88 is your current production capacity and 4.84 is your max day permit. And there's some language in the report that talks about, you know, max day is sort of redlining, you know? You can't do that indefinitely for a number of reasons. But this is on max day, right? It's that, you know, July 3rd kind of thing.
Our permit allows us to go up to 4.8? I thought it was only ...
Over a daily average.
So, yeah, that's the tricky part is there's the annual average, or the daily average, which is the ...
1.8.
1.8. And then this is max day. So, there are two separate scenarios.
Right. But is that covered in the permit? I thought the permit was just a rolling average.
Nope. It's both.
So, I'm sorry. So, say that again. So, our permit would, on a max day, on a July 3rd, would allow us to go to 4.8?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that, you know, I guess a big caveat there is three of that is at Old Logan Bucket, which is, you know, something we'll talk about.
But our capacity's the 3.88. With everything we have, everything full bore, we couldn't do 4.84. We could do 3.88.
Right. Right.
So, you know, we look at average day and max day differently, right? So, max day, you're looking at storage. You want to understand peak demands and all that. And it's evaluated system requires you sort of looking at both in different situations.
That's telling us we can meet a max day also.
You can meet your projected demands based on the population projections, the usage and the usage projections that we use to develop these projections, yes. It shows that you have sufficient water through the 2050 year.
It's just a matter of how long you need to do maximum capacity.
Right. Yeah. And, you know, that was one of the items that we looked at. It's not, I don't know, it's not really material. I mean, we're not expecting a problem. It's just to make it a point that you can't go at maximum, you know, 364 days a year because you still have to meet the other limit too. Yeah. So, I think that's the first point, you know, the supply evaluation. Next, we're going to talk about capital improvements of the water system to maintain level of service and reliability. And the last, we're going to talk about groundwater. So ...
Do you guys have any questions on the first part?
No.
All right.
So, let's talk about the infrastructure, right? So, when we look about what are we doing or what are our goals, it's about, it all really comes under level of service, right? So, it's about reliability. You know, a year ago, we were talking about brown water, but the other real possibility is no water, right? If something fails or something fails. So, we want to make sure the system's reliable. And for that, we're looking at redundancy, redundancy of supply, redundancy of equipment, the ability to reroute water. And then your level of service is the water quality, is it the right pressure? You know, if you can't take a shower, you're upstairs now, and it's not great, you know? So, we look at those things when we look at the system. So, when you look at the system, a water system, it consists of three big components is the source slash treatment, which I sort of combined because they're kind of part and parcel. So, you have wells and you have surface water. Then it's your distribution system, which is a network of pipes that brings the water to people's houses and businesses. And they have storage, which are the water tanks. So, under source, oops, you have six wells and one surface water plant. For distribution, you have 122 miles of pipe, 726 hydrants, and two booster stations. And booster stations, they use to just elevate the pressure for the higher parts of town. It, you know, gives them the adequate pressure. Storage, we have two water tanks. So, we look at each component and the first part is when we look at source, Situate's surprisingly complicated for relatively small system, right? So, this is 100% of your water use, right? And we're going to look at how, where it comes from, from source, because that's important when you think about the equipment that provides it. So, the first, starting sort of from smallest to largest, we add well number 10 and we take away from that. That provides, you know, less than 10%. And you can see through the year, it changes. This is well number 18B, which recently was able to be used more robustly because of the additional treatment there. Well number 22, well 19, well 18. And then the bottom, oops, I'm sorry, well 17A, which is where the treatment plant is being constructed in the spring. And at the bottom is OOB, Old Logan Bucket, which is the surface water supply. And the important thing here is that, one, is it's always on, and two, that in the summer is half of your supply, okay? So, when we think about that, we want to look at, you know, what's our ability to meet your demand and what happens? What happens with something's offline or something happens to one of your sources? So, the first thing we wanted to talk about a little bit is that, where we got that actual capacity. So, these are the permanent capacity for these sources. And then these are the actual capacity, the full running capacity, if you will, that the town could put out from them. The reasons are different for all of them. For OOB primarily, it's, one is an eight-hour shift. This number reflects, I think, two full shifts, which is something that they're not, you know, staffed or equipped to do right now, but that's, you know, something possible. The rest of them, it's interesting, is it's a combination of, you know, there's some equipment improvements that could be done, but the nature of groundwater sources is they lose capacity over time and it can be hard to get them back, even though they do the rehabilitations and the well redevelopment, they don't quite come back to 100%. So, some of these numbers can be improved, but it's not as easy as just, say, replacing a pump. So, thinking about that, we want to look at, what does it look like with all sources online? How much water can you put out, right? So, this graph is sort of built on itself and each one is shown incrementally, right? So, you get the biggest one, that well 19, 17, 18. So, we add that all up and we get about 3.9 million gallons per day. Now, your max demand is right here and already about 2.5. So, that means here, we can meet max day pretty easily, right? If everything's online. So, OOB's doing most of the lift, well 19's taking over. But if well 19 was off, which we're going to look at right now, that would be your next biggest source. This would all sort of drop down, but you're still okay because you've got, you know, abundant capacity up here. So, just to be clear, we're still making most of it from OOB, but we've got enough, sort of, you can call this like redundancy up here, that if one was off, it wouldn't matter. But now, if we look at what happens if we take OOB offline and have everything else going, this is your average day demand. So, you're barely making it and these two, basically, everything has to be on. You know, technically, no, you're a little bit above it, but that's cutting it really close, right? And that's using every source to its max. We have on max day, you really don't have a chance, right? You're not going to meet max day without OOB on. So, the takeaway there is you can't meet max day without Old Logan Bucket. Without Old Logan Bucket, all wells would be needed, you know, at their max to meet the average day. All sources are needed. OOB is critical. That's the backbone of your water supply. So, having said that, looking a little bit at the Old Logan Bucket plant, two things is last, just a year ago, we did some emergency work there and the plant needed some repairs and it was really difficult to take offline. We had to do emergency treatment. And when I say emergency, I mean, you know, in a procurement sense, it was not planned. Did emergency treatment, temporary green sand filtration at two sources, a whole lot of, you know, fiddling and connectors to make it all work. It was, you know, it took about eight contractors to make this all happen. It was really, it was just a big effort to be able to take that out of service in the winter. And at the same, excuse me, at the same time, we went through and did an evaluation. So, the existing plant was constructed in 1967. It was last upgraded in 1988. And basic condition summary, we went through, we look at it from, you know, electrical, mechanical, process, and, you know, just general condition. So, the first point, and public safety, the plant uses chlorine gas for disinfection. That's something that's not as common now as it used to be. Potential safety concern and the fire department is not equipped for response. So, it's chlorine gas and they're not equipped for a rescue there. So, you have to wait for the regional hazmat team to get there. the regional hazmat team to get there. Capacity and reliability, the biggest challenge with the plant is that it doesn't have any process redundancy, it's on one stream through, meaning that if the water department needs to take a sedimentation basin offline, or if it takes the whole plant offline, which makes it difficult to maintain and to do the kind of maintenance that it needs. And it also prevents you from reaching that full permitted capacity. The entire plant must come offline for repairs and maintenance, and there's inside is just some outdated, undersized treatment components. Still a little bit in the weeds, I guess, the lack of a backwash tank. Requires a high backwash flow rate, which decreases the performance, because as you're, it's going to take a one step forward, two steps back. You're recycling water as you're trying to pump it forward, so it makes it more difficult to maintain supply. And it doesn't meet the current DEP guidelines in terms of the layout and the way that it has to be operated. So in general, all the equipment's beyond its useful life. You've gotten your money out of this, and it's in poor condition. Concrete everywhere is in poor condition, roof leaks, that kind of stuff. So the emergency repairs, this is also really important, were just some of the most critical equipment in the plant. Not only do it require extraordinary measures, but they had to kind of get in and get out. So really, just by estimate, extend the useful life by about five years, you know? And as we're going to talk about, it takes quite a while to design a plan and to bring a new one online, so that's something we're going to talk more about. So just some of the pictures from the evaluation, and this is a little hard to see, but that's basically showing that there's only one stream through. And, you know, again, just reiterate, you rely heavily on your surface water to meet the demand. The existing facility's beyond the end of its useful life, and it needs to be replaced. So we talk about a new, what a new plant might look like. The concept is demolish the existing office and garage space, construct a new plant, and demo the old plant afterwards. Let me just give them a picture. So, and this is not, you know, this is not a design, this is just a thought or a concept, but right there, this is the plant, and this is the existing sort of headquarters, little garage, and a maintenance building, none of which are in good shape either, and are not really supporting the need. So the thing is, like we said, we couldn't take the plant offline to fix it, so you can't take it offline to build it. So we're not going to tear it down and build one there, like, you know, with a house. So they would put a new one, you know, somewhere to the side, which would then allow to build a new plant, and then you demo the old plant. So the new feature, or new plant would feature a different design process, it's all bare flotation, which is better suited to the type of surface water that you have, superior efficiency and performance. So again, like everything, right? It's going to have high efficiency motors. Everything's gotten better in the 30 or so years since the old plant was built. It would have full redundancy, which means that when we design things as engineers, we look at, okay, what is the plant performance with the biggest pump offline? What is, you know, everything's built like, so if something breaks, it can still keep going. And it would replace the existing substandard office place, and it retains the baseball field. The other choice, we barely show it there, if you were to build this way, it would require taking that out, and, you know, which is a loss. So an important consideration here is the timeline for design permitting construction is at least four years, right? It just takes a while to do this kind of stuff. The town has the, got authorization at the last town meeting to start the design process, and was authorized for funding for that, and that should proceed. That's the number one need for the entire water system. Not the only one, but it's the most important one. So then, in addition, your other, the six wells, went through those, looked at those, and we looked at it in terms of site and civil, you know, what does the grounds look like, the driveway, that kind of stuff, the fencing, security, process and mechanical, which also includes the chemical treatment that you use, electrical systems, HVAC, instrument controls. And I guess, short story, they're all roughly in the same shape, and they all kind of need the same thing. They all need equipment upgrades, the chemical feed equipment is outdated, and needs to be replaced. And in general, talking about this and the rest of the system, there's no automated control. The entire system runs like a porcelain, you know? Those wells that we showed being used at different times of the year, they drive over, they turn the pump on and drive away, and that's very uncommon. Most systems use pumps to fill tanks, and they can be triggered by different things, so. We have included a town-wide SCADA, or a system-wide SCADA system, which is a computer control that allows you to automate, and it improves performance, resiliency, and just operational needs. And frankly, it's pretty standard now, it's just something that needs to happen here. Looking at storage, storage is, you know, the water tanks that you see in every town, and it plays a couple important functions. They provide fire flow, so it's a source of stored demand that can be provided, and it's usually set away from the supply, so it helps, sort of works with the supply. Balances the normal supply and demand, sort of equalizes things out, stabilizes pressure, and you have this equalization storage, and that's what sort of helps balance out the peaks and flows, you know? It smooths everything out. Critical part of the infrastructure. And the storage assessment is an AWA guideline that you go through, and you look at the flows and the usage and the band, and it lets you know what you require. So the takeaway is that you guys have two stand pipes, and you meet that required storage volume, right? So you think, great. But both tanks are, let's say they're ready for rehabilitation. But the challenge is, we went to do that, and we prepared the design documents, we're ready to go up to bid, the town has the money, and the, I guess the rub is that painting season is also water demand season. So we couldn't take the tank offline to paint it, because they don't have another tank to use, and you can't operate with one tank. So that's preventing that from happening. So we're recommending a third tank be installed, which would give you, you know, additional storage as well, but then the ability to maintain your other two tanks. So when we talk about that redundancy thing, it's important that everything that you have that you can take offline to repair and to maintain, so.
Mike, are these worth retaining? I know that they're not in bad shape if you can maintain them.
Yeah, you know, so the funny thing, you talk about asset life, right? How long can we use this, and all this stuff? And I was at this tank, and I was with a structural steel guy that we use for tank inspections. And I said, so basically, you keep maintaining these things, they'll last forever, right? And he's like, yeah, pretty much. So does it need work? Yeah, it needs work, but the bottom, the plates are like an inch thick. This is, you know, this tank needs, the foundation isn't bolted to the ground like they are now, so it actually requires some modifications to go in and basically add some concrete, add some anchor bolts, modify it. There's some work that needs to be done outside of the roof trusses, but yeah, you can repaint both tanks. And they're both a lovely shade of algae green.
It's all right, they camouflage, yeah.
Yeah.
Where are you suggesting the third tank go?
Right by your house.
Well, that's right by my house, that was a big one.
Right. Well, actually, you know, this is way premature, but just some thoughts is, there is space right next to this tank. There's like a little area there that we could put. But that would be, a number of things you could do, you could look at where the town owns property, you look at where it needs to be, with the height, that kind of thing. And that would be, you know, a second stage or a part of the evaluation. Distribution system, so 120 miles of pipe in the town right now. As you recall, we've talked before, the town replaced 20 miles of the old online cast iron pipe, which was, again, a sound investment, because you're reaping the benefits of that now. The rest is to keep going. So right now, the town's under design for a contract that replaces 12,500 feet of small diameter AC, and these little galvanized steel pipes, we call them spaghetti, that just feed these little streets and stuff that are undersized. And also, really importantly, install some hydrants on dead-end streets, and that has two poles, and one is going to provide fire protection, but now you can flush that line. So if you just have, you know, a six-inch or a two-inch line that runs down a, you know, 1,000-foot street, you can't flush that line. There's no way, you know, there's nothing at the end of it. So that's one of the things that the water department, the DBW, has been overcoming, is, you know, the practices of, you know, the 70s or whatever. Hummer Rock, even though, like we said, Marshfield's probably the water, it's the town's pipes, and there's been a lot of failures up there due to the location and conditions, and that's a large source of the unaccounted for water. Again, one of the little things that makes Situate a little bit more challenging is, most water leaks make their way to the surface, you find them, you see them, and, you know, the guys that are in the water department are always looking like, where's that puddle coming from? Here, a lot of it's sand, it just soaks into the ground, it's hard to find, so that makes it just a little more challenging.
That's interesting.
And then going forward from there, these are the two phases that were identified already, and then from there, there's 35 more miles of pipe that'll be prioritized based on existing fire flows, fire protection, remaining life, material, that kind of thing.
How long's future?
This is a 20-year plan. Brown water plant update, summary was the brown water was caused primarily by manganese in the well water. There was also iron, most likely from that previous pipe, that rusted, you know, cast iron pipe, built up over years, over decades, right? The town had never flushed before for a lot of reasons, and then most recently, they, before they replaced the cast iron pipe, it was just, it was, they were hesitant to do it for, you know, a number of reasons. Since they've done that, we started to look at a flushing plan, and the first time we wanted to use it, they just didn't have enough water, right? We didn't feel comfortable doing it. So we started with, doing two things a little bit ahead of myself, the two-part solution here is, the short term is clean the existing manganese out of the water system, right? So this stuff's like dust bunnies, it gets stirred up, it becomes cloudy, and what stirred up means that you increase the flow. So if everybody starts using water together, like you get up in the morning, you're showering, but flows come up, it starts to move. If you open a hydrant to fight a fire, or to flush a line, it moves fast, and that stirs up. It's literally like, you know, I think of like a leaf blower in my garage, it blows stuff ahead of it, and it stirs it all up. And then it settles down overnight, and then it stirs up the next day, and that's what's been happening. One of the challenges is the place where you see the dirty water isn't necessarily the cause of it, it just moves around. But anyway, the solution is, short term, is get rid of that stuff, and we've been using two procedures here, and I know you've all heard about this, the ice pitting, and then unidirectional flushing. And then the second one is keep the manganese from coming into the system, which is treatment. And ironically, it sort of forces the same thing that's happening in the pipes to happen in a controlled environment, and filter that stuff out instead of letting it go into the pipes. That's what that plant that we mentioned at well 17A, that's going to be, that's up to bid right now, is going to do, that's going to treat that source and allow it to be used. So the water department had not been able to implement flushing prior to concern over the pipe conditions, and not having enough water. Since then, they have flushed the entire low-service area. Just a little bit about unidirectional flushing, it's, each flushing sequence is designed using a hydraulic modeling software, because when you open a hydrant, water comes from everywhere, and it will equalize, and you get less velocity. So we want velocity. So this looks at, you know, isolating each section, closing a number of valves, and it lays out each sequence, town goes through, fills in information, it's a methodical approach. Consists of isolating each sequence so you can maximize velocity, is labor-intensive, and is more difficult than large diameter pipes, because you just can't get enough water moving. Ice pitting, on the contrary, is very effective at these large diameter pipes. And again, it's, these mats are actually from the project, they walk each foot of the pipe, make sure they know where it's going to go in, where it's going to go out, what are the side streets look like, and they basically fill it, isolate a section, which means close the valve so it's not online, fill it with this ice sorbing, and then when it reaches a certain point, they open up the other end and discharge it out of a hydrant. And it's, doesn't use the velocity, it's using the physical action, it's almost like a squeegee, because it fills in the areas of the pipe. Very, very effective, uses very little water compared to flushing, and it's very expensive. So the progress, though, in the ice pitting, they've done three rounds, used about 96,000 gallons of pipe, of ice to clean 24 miles of pipe. And you can see there, it's effective, it really cleans that stuff out. Flushing, they have flushed 100% of the low-service area, which is impressive. They worked, you know, really hard to get that done. And as a result, this was, you know, pretty gratifying, right? So the town, we've said this before, is that I think people don't appreciate how heavily regulated they are and how closely monitored. So they have this whole sampling schedule, they're required sampling at the sources, and the streets, and the pipes, and certain taps for different reasons, and one of these things that they sample for is manganese, and it's out in the system, it's not just at the plant or at the source. And the water foreman called me and told me that they had got the most recent results in, and they were dramatically improved. There was no manganese detected in four out of the seven sample locations at all. There was more than an 80% reduction at two out of the seven locations, and 40% reduction at one of the seven locations. So all of them were dramatically improved, and even more, I think, more positively is, you know, when I asked, how's it been with complaints? He said, well, you know, we've had a couple things, we've had to open a hydrant, we've had to do this, and I don't get any calls. So just to set where we were, you know, a year and a half ago, the town wanted to, the water department would public notice just to test the valve, because it would stir up stuff. So that, you know, it's got leaps and bounds, is, I think, where we are in terms of that. Currently, we're not scheduling any more ice pitting, because the last we heard, the company that does it wasn't going to be offering that anymore. So I don't know where that stands. Likely it'll get spun off to another company if they move forward with that, but I think that the big lift is behind you, so. And all the results are below that, the action limit, which was great. So that, you know, looking back at that, you're like, it's improved. We've improved the water quality for people. Honestly, that feels pretty good, and I know the water department's really proud of that. So that was my, sort of my full-speed.
Great.
That's perfect.
Ruth, can you hit the lights? Thank you.
Ooh.
Everybody, wake up.
Wake up, everybody, it's 11:15. And I don't mean AM.
Well, thank you. This was, some of you may have seen the presentation, a lot of it was similar to the one we did in, when was it? November, December? And clearly, the water department's been working on a lot of these issues already. We've already, like Mike said, we've already got money for the design of a new water treatment plant, we've already got, don't we have SCADA going in for water?
As part of the capital requests this year.
Right, as part of the capital request, we've done all the ice pitting, we've done all the flushing, so we've been very proactive in dealing with this stuff even since, you know, the summer. So with.
The dead-end lines, we've already.
Right, yeah, we talked about.
We've identified 27 of them that we're going to go after with a contract this year.
And even under more happenstance, the town hired a distribution foreman, just as they started the flushing program, which is perfect, because he's walked every foot of pipe, you know, and he's turned almost every valve, which gives him a great feeling for exactly what the issues are.
Investment.
And he's been great, he's really did a lot of work.
So let me open up to the board. Do you want to go first?
I'll do whatever you want, Mr. Terry.
Good. Your leaders.
No, I just have a couple of things that I just wanted to, there's a lot of data, it was, some of it we've seen, but the progress is one.
it was, some of it we've seen, but the progress is, is wonderful, to see it all wrapped up. So we did this because we wanted to see what we have, and I feel very confident that this assessment shows us exactly what we have. I looked at Sean to agree with me. The one question I had on it was, I thought all the cast iron had been removed, and it wasn't clear to me in the report, it seemed like there were still some out there. Is that accurate, or?
To our knowledge, we've removed all the cast iron. We may have one or two small pieces of it, but we, we believe we've removed everything.
Well, I might have some follow-up questions just on the details when I dive into the details, which we won't do at 11:10 tonight. And so then the next question is, what do we need to do? And we, you know, we have to remove the asbestos concrete next, more storage, that's, that I, we don't have any, we haven't put that in any capital plan yet. Okay. The new plant, obviously. And then the big question, two big questions, is one is, I had a little trouble with the population data. So you, you talked to planning, and you found out how many units, you, you looked at what we think the growth is going to be. But you used the MAPC numbers, and I had a little trouble reconciling that, because, you know, we've got potentially 664 units that we know are coming, and let's say each of those has two residents, that's 1,200 people. So you don't have to answer it now, but I'd like just to have an understanding of how those projections reconcile, because that speaks to, do we have enough later question? And then we don't talk about resiliency at all, which I know is more of a sewer issue, but did you guys think about that at all, as any choice that we might be exposed with, with coastal issues?
You know, we always, one thing we could say about resiliency, we do have some wells that are off 123, that we're always concerned of saltwater intrusion. That's one of the reasons why we've been looking at the Dolan Well Field, so that we would have a backup there if that, something did occur there. And that's always been in our plan, after Dolan Well Field, we're going to investigate other wells in the West End, to see if we have a potential. So those are long-term aspects, because to get a well permanent can take up to five years. You know, and we watch very carefully of those wells when, when we do have extreme high tides, and obviously we pay attention to the tides.
And last thing, if we could make a copy of this available to the Harriman Group that's working on the master plan?
I was in contact with them this week to just kind of regroup, but I think to your point, there's going to be another step where we come together on what projections we're going to use.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like they're doing theirs, and...
Yeah, we need to have a...
Yeah.
Sean?
A few things. When we're talking about capacity, we had permitted, or we started the permitting phase to increase the capacity at the Oloken Bucket Pond by raising the dam, all right? Where are we with that? And if we looked at what that might do to some of the owners, talked to one as recently as tonight, that might have a negative impact on their property, raise it up 18 inches, do we know what the... I asked, and I was really concerned at that time, thought around Sutu Trail, but this might be out on 3A. So could you have a look at that and see what that, if that would have a negative impact on any residents out there? While we're on that subject, Sean or Kevin, have we ever contacted the state and told them not to salt 3A? Or doesn't it have an effect?
So I'll try to answer two questions. It's getting a little late, and I'm, I'll...
Well, there's something for time, but...
No, no, I can, I can answer both, both those questions, I just have to remember them. I'll start off with the first one. With the dam, we've gone after grants, because we've been doing a lot of that work with grants, it's still in the engineering and permitting phase. And we did not get the last grant we went after. So there hasn't been any future activity on that. Most of the money that we've been getting and requesting our capital, it hasn't been to raise the reservoir, it's been more replacing pipes and replacing equipment and, and doing that type of work.
At a town meeting, we spent money to do that, and I thought we were...
That was still in the permitting and engineering phase. I, I believe the next phase would be going for the environmental permitting. And there's a question on, do you eliminate wetlands, and do you create new wetlands, and how that would be accepted, and if it can get approved? And we've been working with North South River with that, on that action. But our priority has been, it was over there, but our priority has been, one, we've been making a really, really strong push to try to eliminate as much brown water as we can in, in putting everything on that. That's, that's been our main push. And I don't want to say that's taken a little bit to the back, background, but we've still been pursuing grants and everything, we just, we hadn't got the, where that went. So you're right, and that is one of the things, Tetra Tech is the engineer that's looking at that project, and it is one of the things we've talked about back and forth. I think the same person you were talking to, I spoke to her early in the week, and she had some questions for me that I forwarded to Tetra Tech that I'm waiting to hear answers on, but I haven't heard yet. The second question was salt. Did we come up with going to the state, asking for them not to salt that section of 3A? Yes, multiple times. First time, they laughed at us, I, I don't mean like that, but they were like, you know, that curve you need to have, you know, it, it's such a dangerous curve. We did mitigation a few years ago, we improved the catch basins in that area, we went out looked at the catch basins the following year, we spoke to them, and then they, you know, they didn't do much to them. And we had some conversations, and, and what they wanted us to do is do a historical analysis of the sodium content in the reservoir to prove that it's negatively affecting the reservoir and do some scientific studies on it. You know, and that's, that's where we are.
You and I could have a conversation about that a little...
A lot of salt goes out, a lot of salt goes out there, I agree.
They tell us how much to conserve, because how much damage it does to reservoirs, that's, they tell us that every year.
Do we have that data, the historic sodium content, or do you track that?
We do, it's tracked, we're working on it. You know, it was one of the things we looked at with the Water Resources Committee, asking for help, having them work with us a little bit, and they came back with some other questions. But a lot of what we've been doing the past few years is focusing on, on brown water as well as infrastructure improvement. That is something we can do, but we just run out of bandwidth. You know?
Just one more final thing, this is way down the end of the line, but when you showed the new facility, you know, and take out the offices and the garages and build a new facility, I would think you might phase it in such a way that, so you don't just tear down the existing facility and then just have, by looking at it, I know it's not drawn to scale, but you're almost just doubling what we have now. But after the old plant's down, maybe make, make something else there besides just...
And that's, his schematic plan is just where the treatment plant to go. After that was down, we'd have to take the treatment plant down and then build, you know...
A third, a third of the line, or something like that.
Well, we'd need to, we'd need to build just a place to park the trucks, and keep everything inside, and have a, have a stock, you know, area we keep stocked, that other storage building that Mike said's kind of falling apart. To our guys, it's a gold mine, because they go in there, they repair hydrants in the winter, and they, and they do work, they keep all their stock, all their, you know, copper and pieces and pots in there, so they have access. So we'd still need to build a building that can handle a lot, as well as keeping the equipment inside, because I'll, I'll be honest with you, as much as the salt concerns me too, Sean, I get nervous with some of our equipment being that close to the reservoir, if they're ever dripping oil, hydraulic fluid, or anything to that. I would rather have them in a building where everything would be contained if something ever happened to them. You know, that's a thing that we look at.
Great. Laura?
No questions.
Karen?
Just one, and that relates to the reservoir. I didn't see that in your recommendations that we raise the reservoir.
It's, it's actually been, it's included in the capital plan, and...
Yeah, yeah, right. I'm not sure which one it is.
Sort of on its separate path. You know, it's its own project, and like Kevin said, it's waiting for that grant funding, but it hasn't been included, it has been included...
All right.
...in the overall plan.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So I've seen this before, I've asked my questions, it's, I think, I think you've done a good analysis of what our water situation is and what we should do, and I think we're taking all the steps right now to move in that direction. Clearly, it's a monetary investment that's going to go into it, our water rates are going to go up. But we continue to look for alternative sources of water, and we're making the steps to it, to improving our system. So I think we're definitely on the right track. It's going to take a while to get there, but, especially in building the new plant, but I, I feel that we have a plan that's in place, and it's moving us in the right direction. So I'll open it up to the audience for some, some short questions, if you have any, because it is 11:30 at night. Yes, sir.
I apologize to be rude, I'm going to talk to you. So...
Put your name and address, sorry.
Yeah, Bruce Arbenes, I'm part of the Water Resource Committee in 23 Gannon pasture lane, and Newt, Massachusetts. Do a little research, I have from the town of Situate's website, water system study, or update, I should say, from October 7th, 16, I guess, due to drought at that point in time. And the topic is the aquifer and the condition of the aquifer. And there's a comment in, in that report, so the groundwater levels, the wells remain depressed, the system pressure, you have to monitor the system pressure, ensure we don't over-pump the aquifer. I was just going to ask the consultant if you've done any research about the aquifer, the condition of that.
Mike, any answer on the, or Sean, on the aquifer?
So there's two parts to that. What I'm guessing is partly they need, what we call the formation, the groundwater supplies. And one is that the town continues to, or is, is implementing a maintenance program for that. So we always focus on the little building above, but there's the, the formation, the natural, you know, collection of rocks and gravel and stuff underneath that also needs maintenance. And that would consist of, you know, special chemical cleaning and all that. In terms other than that, it's really just, I think, a, a matter of the groundwater levels, right? And that's part of that whole safe yield and sustainability. So I, as far as condition, I think, I don't know.
No, not specifically. I mean, we've looked at all of the, the stuff that goes along with the permitting mainly, which, I'm not sure, the safe yield calculations, but...
Isn't that state? Isn't it monitored closely by the state?
It's regulated closely by the state, yeah.
Everything's monitored closely.
Right, so they do that heavy lifting and then give us the safe yields?
Right.
Well, yeah, every so often, right? But then you just monitor, you know, like Sean monitors brown water levels all the time, just to make sure he's not over-pumping.
Yes, sir.
Mark McCormick, I live on Danet Road. How much do you expect it to cost to replace the water treatment plant and build one new storage shed?
I think it's 40 million for the water treatment plant and 2 million for a storage. Yes, sir. Do you still have a question? Yeah.
I was just going to say that former selectman, Constantine Konsonides, and Sue Fippen's ex-husband, both are state hydrologists in Boston, unless they've retired. And when I was involved with mosquito control for the state, we used to constantly communicate with them on water table levels and town by town. And they seem to have a good record and updated material on that.
Thanks.
Becky Mallon at 100 Pratt Road, I just have a comment and a question. In the earlier slides about supply and production capacity, I want to just clarify, it's important to note that that's all based on the reservoir being completely full, is that right?
No, the production capacity is the water that can come out of Oloken Bucket. So that was based on two shifts running at, Sean, I don't remember now what, what rate, but, so there's two parts, is how much you can put out of that plant in a, in an hour a day or a week, and then there's how much water is there to keep supplying that, you know, so they're two separate things.
So do you know the minimum level of the reservoir we need to get in order to produce to match the production capacity of the water treatment plant?
You guys know that off the top of your head.
Depends on how, how, how long we need to sustain it. Yeah.
So I think that might be useful information for the report, and I think it would also be useful to provide the town with a tool where they can, if, you know, growth projections don't match with either the planning board has in mind or MAPC, MAPC studies, we can have kind of real-time data going up and forth where new developments come online, so we can look at how that new development will impact the water system, specifically those high, those max days, knowing that especially the next few years, there's only a few days that the water treatment plant can handle that max production capacity. And then the other question would just, again, be something to maybe include in the next version of the report, would be if you looked at any other potential sources of groundwater, and I know initially we worked on iron, and then there's manganese, there's manganese and iron, and I think it would be useful for residents to know that there might not be anything else that we're missing that could cause brown water, it doesn't need to be, and that would be it.
Yes, ma'am.
Tricia Ball, 439, just Tricia Hall. And correctly, you would raise the level of the dam at Stockbridge Road at the end, not Stockbridge Road, all of them down there, and raise the dam level there? Are you going to raise it back at Tac Factory when it goes to the reservoir?
What, is the raise, I thought the raising was going to be down at, off 3A.
Tac Factory.
I thought it was...
That's Tac Factory.
North South Rivers.
Back of the reservoir.
Yeah.
The reservoir itself.
Yeah, reservoir itself.
So what's the answer to your question?
The reservoir itself off of 3A, is they're also going to have to do some dam modifications.
Is that the dam by Sean's office?
The west side or the east side of 3A?
East side of 3A.
East side, okay.
Well, you have to also raise the west side Tac Factory, that's a good question, I don't, I don't have that answer.
He doesn't know about Tac Factory. Which, which dam is, are we talking about raising? Is it the one right by the rotary?
Not the spill dam, not the spill dam, that's what he's talking, what, the dam is, you have to access it.
What dam, dam?
You have to access it by Sutu Trail, if I'm not mistaken, and go all the way through that neighborhood, as, as I understood it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's over on the backside.
I've never seen it, I've never had any business with it.
Right, it's not the one at the rotary, it's the one...
No, that's, that's the control...
Right, that's what I thought.
But would that have an effect on the home that she's talking about across the street? I mean, does it go under 3A?
Potentially, if she wanted to come in, she could come in and meet with one of our engineers who's been working on it, and ever meet with Dan Smith and go over and look at the particular areas.
Okay, one more question? Okay, so years ago, down Stockbridge Road, a lot of times when there's a lot of water, the water would flow over Stockbridge Road down into the Rock and Pond, would that happen again, if you have too much water? Because we've had too much water before.
Don't know. We don't think so.
We certainly wouldn't do it to cause, to intentionally cause that, but it, yeah. I imagine the engineers are going to look at that and make sure it doesn't flow out into the streets. Is that safe to say, Kevin?
We will look at that, I promise.
I think someone, did you have your hand up? Behind Becky?
No.
Nope? Becky?
I just wanted to comment on that, so there is a drafting environmental impact report that the town has next year that you can look at in terms of the wetland flooding, and then there's lots of maps that have been created to show how different properties will or will not be affected. So I would just kind of second what Kevin said, to come with the town and ask to look at all those documents that they have.
Great. Thank you guys for coming in. And, you know, Becky had some good questions that I think we'd all like the answer, I just saw you writing them down, so, so we will hear back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to proceed and start looking into, into plant designs, doing RFPs for plant designs.
For...
Water treatment plants.
Yes.
We will, we'll...
And probably, I mean, what we really have to do is monetize all this stuff and see what the rate, what's going to happen with rates.
So just, just so people know...
Hey, guys?
Just so we know, we've scheduled, Sean's been reaching out to other water treatment facilities that have new plants next Tuesday, I believe it is?
Thursday.
Thursday. We're going to be touring Waymouth, has a new plant that they just put in within the past five years. There's also a new plant in Falmouth we're going to get out and take a look at. And there was one other one, I think, the town in Norton. And what we're going to try to look at is the three plants and talk to the operators and see what's been really successful, what they like, what they dislike, so that we could include that in our operations when we put together the plan that we're looking for.
Great idea.
It's been rolling. We've been talking about, as I said, we've already, we've got it set up for next Thursday to start heading out and checking some of that stuff out.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See you, guys.
Forty minutes left on the video.
Forty?
Four zero.
No, fourteen. Just tell them fourteen.
Fourteen.
I heard forty.
I hear you.
It's tough. Thanks, Mike.
Good night. Thank you.
It's tough to tell the people that waited for four hours that they got...
You guys will be listening.
Well, I can put in another DVD, but...
We're going to be done in 40 minutes. Sue's got seven minutes.
Nope, we're going to be good.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote of a draft aquaculture application review criteria proposed, five to seven acre map. Who Harrison? How are you?
Good evening.
Good morning. I know, I can't say that yet, though, right? No.
So let's start by saying, we got all the documents, we read all the documents, we read all the forms, we looked at the map, so we don't have to start from zero.
Awesome.
And I know that there's feedback from, but tell us a little bit of what you did and how you came up with what you did.
Yeah, I mean, we can tell you quickly how we got to some of the decisions, maybe that would help.
Let's start with the forms, because that thing's going to take the most.
Oh, okay.
The forms, I'm hoping will be easy.
Yeah, hopefully. So the first is an, you have an application, and then you have suggested review criteria for the application. And if you notice, the application is for commercial shellfish grants in Bassington Beach, so it's site-specific. The, I guess the first thing to note, grant number. We would have numbers on the grant, on the map, and you would select one. And then if the same person selects the same one, there would be a lottery. And that was what we decided, to propose as a fair way. And then when you go through one, two, three, those are part, they refer to our regs. So if you're 18 years or older, these are kind of like yes, no answers, right? We did include Cohasset. If you're a domicile resident of Situate, yes or no. And then, and then how long? And if not, you know, you would go to you're a domicile resident of Cohasset. So that is included at the time. And then a valid commercial fisherman license. And then from after that, so those are just the yes, nos. And then after that, we would move on to business plan and criteria for knowledge, experience, and commitment. And within that, I guess, I just, that's an easy transition to the minimum qualifications because it kind of, to the review criteria, because it's hand-in-hand, right? And I think, I guess I would step back and say that a lot of what we thought about was we've seen all sorts of people interested in commercial aquaculture come to meetings over the year. And it could be a retired businessperson, it could be someone who does aquaculture, it could be somebody who has done, has a lobster boat, or has experience with fisheries. So in my opinion, and I think I speak for the committee as well, we gave ample opportunity to show all of your experience, strengths. So as far as, I would note that when we say knowledge, experience, and commitment, we leave it open to if you've, business experience, fisheries experience, volunteer, at some point, we know, volunteer experience versus paid experience, recognizing that some people have done a lot of work in this space volunteer-wise, but maybe not professionally. So we think that we've given a lot of different paths to having a successful application. And then moving on, so that's the experience, we then move on to the business plan, and then the core parts of the business plan are a site plan, a market analysis, description of gear and approach, and a risk analysis. And those are important components to understanding the business you're about to undertake. And I think we're all, I think we're all in agreement that we want to find the most successful people to start this endeavor.
And stewardship.
And steward, yeah. And then funding, and then we also asked for funding as well as references. And the references, I do want to pause on the references because we thought that was really important, to have references, because we want to have stewards of this project. So we asked specifically that the references speak to motivation, quality and completeness of work, innovative and creative approaches to implementation, and business challenges. And then probably most importantly, responsiveness and overall quality of working relationships, character, stewardship of Situate's natural resources. Because we want, we want people, we want, you know, kind of a community out there, and people that are stewards, and help with education, and are approachable, and if there's any sort of, that we don't have issues out there. And then we left for oral presentation as well, which is what you had asked us for. I kind of like blew through that really quickly, giving...
Well, we all read it.
Yeah, I know you've read it, but I gave a little bit of our rationale and why we thought things were important.
Good. I'm going to open up with Karen, because she had a comment that...
Yeah, it's very thorough, and it clearly covers everything. My concern is that we had talked at some point about having an opportunity for younger people to, you know, be involved in this.
Yeah.
And it just occurred to me that since this is a pilot program, would there be a way to include younger people as an apprentice to someone who's already been approved for the pilot program? I'd just like to see that we do give younger people in town the opportunity. And it's a very demanding list of criteria.
Yeah, it is.
As it should be.
Yep.
But if we can make an opportunity for young people to be able to, you know, take advantage of this opportunity, I think that'd be a great thing. So that's my only comment about the whole thing.
Okay. That's a good, good feedback. Maybe we could incorporate something like a question about that if...
The only thing I'd piggyback on Karen's comment is, I just, I toss around the thought that it gives a very big advantage to somebody that's currently doing it.
Okay.
And, and we haven't decided how the scoring system, you know, is not necessarily going to be the top, top 10 scores get the top 10 spots, or top five score, whatever happens to be. You know, there'll be some sort of subjectiveness to it, but I'm just wondering what the board thinks on, like, having someone come in and actually do it as a hobby, as opposed to a commercial venture.
Well, it's clearly commercial based on the criteria and the business plan and the projections and the market analysis.
I'm not saying that you can't have a business plan, but it's not somebody that is, it's not someone that is trying to necessarily maximize the capacity of the space. But they're trying to do more of a recreational harvesting as opposed to a commercial, you know what I'm saying?
There's a pretty high bar investment required in the regulations.
It's 10,000.
Ten, ten.
Yeah, but it's expensive.
It's not getting a...
It's not crazy, but it's not...
And you don't want the people to fail. You don't want to set them up for failure. You don't want to, it's serious, so you don't want to have people out there that shouldn't be out there. You know, to Karen's point, great idea to have an apprentice or someone, have someone working under him, but what minor or, you know, young person, you know, not very many would fit this criteria.
Right. That's my point.
But if you had it...
Like, if you wanted to do this, you're not going to be in the top.
No, 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 not necessarily.
I can put a business plan together, but...
Right, right, but you don't have to have the commercial experience in here, because Susan and I had this discussion. You know, you could be a retired developer, or, you know, had worked at Wall Street or something like that. Doesn't, I think there's, I think you'd have a shot with the way this...
Well, that was just my concern, whether that person does have a shot, or they're not going to be, you know, the maximum score they're going to get is 85, making numbers up.
Yeah.
But clearly, someone that's a commercial fisherman is going to have the references in the field, and they're going to have the experience dealing with fishing and boating and all that sort of stuff. And I don't know, maybe there's, maybe as we look at the lots, we say that one of them is for more of a younger startup, or, I don't know, that's just what I thought when I read the stuff.
Well, or if I could just add that maybe we add to the application, would you be willing to be, have an apprentice and/or mentor young people in this business? And if the pilot is successful, then we'll be looking at expanding it. How much, we don't know. But if someone spent a year or two working for someone, then they might get enough experience and be able to consult people about, well, how do I put a business plan together? How do I do this? How do I do that? I just want to be sure we're giving young people an opportunity that'll just get Xed out from the get-go.
Yeah, and I did want to, it's a really good point. And I did also want to mention, although we didn't, we haven't come up with it yet, you also asked us for, to think about an impact assessment. And at that point, that's another point that I think you can really get students involved in.
Right.
And we're thinking, we're outreaching to organizations, schools that would be interested in assisting with an impact assessment. So we have been thinking about that, but it's a good point to have the apprentice component, and then the like, also science evaluation component.
I mean, there may be people that are not, I hate to say I hated interns, but I, they drove me nuts. But, I mean, there's good to having apprentices and interns, and there's bad.
True, true.
So you have to be willing to be a teacher, you have to be willing to be a coach, you have to be willing to spend extra time. And I would consider that an addition, an extra check on the application, that if you're willing to be that sort of a person.
Yeah.
But I think, well done.
Mark?
I don't have too much to add. It looks good, a lot of good questions in here. I'm just thinking out loud, does it make any sense to understand how they're going to access the site?
I think that was a question in there.
Is there a question in there?
Are you going by boat? Are you going by land? If you're going by land...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Part of the description and approach.
Yeah, okay. I added that under description of gear and approach.
Okay. Yep, that would be under that.
And it takes to say they don't know how they're going to get there.
Yeah, that would, well, it's extremely relevant.
Well, it's in there.
Are you good?
Good job.
Description and approach, yeah. And the site plan.
Take care of it for us, that's okay.
Karen?
Just to touch on a couple of things. When I, I think you guys did your usual really thorough job. In looking at the weighting of the points, I think to Tony's point, having it broken out like this gives us the opportunity to, to have some, I don't want to say wiggle room, that's not right, but just give value to different strengths. So I like that you broke it out like that. The only question I had is, the first, the applicant's experience, that to me is the most important. Well, I debated on whether it was the most important. They all are important for different reasons. And I just wondered why you gave it sort of the same weight? Because if you add up the business plan, then that puts a lot more, you know, weight on that.
Yeah, the committee thought the business plan was the real meat of it. And even with the experience, you want to make sure that people have educated, the individual applying has educated them enough, themselves enough, or their partners enough, to propose a true sustainable business plan. So the committee thought the business plan was...
That makes sense.
But we're happy to change.
No, no, I get that. And then I would almost, I don't know if this is, because I don't understand the business thoroughly, but market analysis, would you also want to have like, almost like a distribution plan on that? It's like, you're going to grow these things, you're going to produce them. Do you know what to do with them once you grow them? Like, how to sell them and that kind of thing?
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanted to just add that there.
So we have, oh, I was going to say, our definition of market was provide an analysis of existing market and economic environment, and discuss how you will build a sustainable business. So we could add, you know, distribution, that's a good point.
You brought up the point about confidentiality and information, and I didn't know if you'd thought more about how to, because obviously I could see the funding being a section that...
Yeah, so that separately, I had submitted some questions to you, and there were a couple sides of questions that have come up that we don't know how to answer. And that's in the evaluation, is the evaluation of these a public meeting or a executive session? That was one question. And then how would, how would it be, how would we do the point system? Yes, and then also on the other side, some of the applicants wanted to know if any of the parts of the application would be eligible for not full disclosure. And the funding is a perfect example where someone thought that they would be able to really explain that they're able to fund this, but it might not be something that they'd want public about. Like, their mortgage is paid, and they have a sec, I don't know. It was just a question.
Really good question.
It was something that I couldn't, none of us could answer in the meetings, and we thought we would present it to see maybe how we do other similar things in the town.
Well, how do other towns handle that? Did we ask Ducksperry or anybody else?
So I did notice, I don't know how other, I've got to look into, not many towns do it this way. I mean, the Falmouth did it this way, but we did find all of the ones in Maine are posted on their website, and the financials are blacked out. So I know it's a different state, but I don't...
But it's like a bit, almost.
But it's not, though, because...
I mean, when people come in to get a liquor license or something, they...
That's all public, but they're coming into the board that makes the decision. So I'm thinking of this almost like a job interview. So when a town administrator applies for a job, if there's a search committee that does not appoint the town administrator, that is confidential. When it goes to the board of selectmen, that it actually selects the town administrator, it then becomes public. So the question would be, the shellfish committee does not pick the people who get, they just review the application. So would it possibly be an executive session at their level? At your level, no, it's a public document. You can redact it. I mean, obviously, if it's banking statements, you've got to redact the bank numbers and all that stuff. At your level, there's no question it's a public document. At their level, I think we'd have to get some clarification.
I think they should do executive, because...
Right. And if they forward it on to us, we just rely on them that they've done their homework, so they feel strong enough that Jim Smith could financially start up.
We can look into that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, because I think applicants would also want to know that ahead of time about the financial information.
The only other thing I would add is, when you do the reference section, and this speaks to when we originally set you loose, we wanted to be respectful to the concerns of others. Just to expand on number four, be a good steward of the natural resources. I would almost want to add something and say, and be respectful of co-users of the waterways or something that...
That's great addition.
Was a, you know, an affirmative statement that we know that there are issues.
Sean?
No, like I said earlier, Susan and I had discussed this over the phone at length, and I think they did a fantastic job, thought of things, you know, outside of the box, and couldn't add any more. Just be interesting to see how things proceed. couldn't add any more, just be interesting to see how things proceed. As far as, you know, I have told you guys right in the beginning, everyone made it very clear that I think the guys, you know, people in Cohasset should have an ample opportunity to, you know, get, have a shot at these lots. Since then, not often, not often.
So, the only thing, I, you know, I said my, my sense in terms of making it kind of equal, I don't know if there's any way to incorporate that, and again, the board and the selection process can take that into consideration their own. Very thorough document, really good job, I don't know how it's going to turn out, I think it's going to be difficult to fill out for the applicant, because it's very detailed. But, we'll see how it goes. Certainly, it's a great first shot at whatever it is, and we're going to get a lot of information from people, and, and get a good sense of, of, you know, the background of these people, so I think you did a great job on that, and we'll, we'll see if it needs to be tweaked one way or the other as you go along, so, thanks for doing that. All right, so, do we want to, are you going to make some changes to this? Or do you want us to vote?
Well, I mean-
I know you've got a little bit of feedback.
Or you can vote on the three changes I already wrote down.
Does anyone feel-
The distribution, there's a couple word changes.
Apprenticeship.
Apprenticeship, we're going to add, distribution, plan, and then co-users.
Okay, there was a few questions, so, Jamie, on your hand up.
Sure, it wasn't at first, or?
Sure, Bill?
I haven't seen the form yet, because I didn't see it online or anything, but I had a question on the references, are you going to do a background check for criminal and credit checks? Because it's town, town authorizing the thing, so I think that we need to know that the person is of good character, and the police report could verify that, and a credit check, because you don't want somebody to start up and go belly up and leave everything in the water and, you know, walk away from it.
Do we do police checks on any other licensing?
We do core as well, the state will score, and all liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses. It doesn't meet any of the criteria for us to do a query that I'm aware of, for a municipal query? So, we do people who, children, elderly, I don't think we could do a query under our statutory rights to do it under this. You could do a credit check, but I don't know if you could do a query.
Why would we do a credit check? Like, what's-
I just, he had mentioned a credit check, I think-
No, I know, and I'm just having the conversation.
I'm saying, I don't think we could do a query, because it doesn't meet our criteria.
They do, it is required for rigorous references, so there's that piece which is, I think, thoughtful, and the funding piece is required in the business plan.
Because if we did a, we did a credit check, wouldn't we have to charge a fee to run that credit check? I mean, it's not, that's not an activity that anybody here in town is equipped to do.
Yeah, you hire some-
So, they have to hire someone and have that all set up, that's like a whole-
It would be part of the application, the fee that you charge at the application.
Could be, I don't know that it's enough.
Then how do we run it?
Yeah.
How do we run that credit check?
Like-
Pays for it.
Yeah, you know, let's think about that.
It's like we're not, you know-
I don't think, I don't know.
Well, they go belly up, we take the license back.
I mean, we don't do, do we do credit checks on liquor stores that come in and ask for a liquor license? No, we just make sure they have insurance.
Well, they, they provide the financial information, it's possible liquor.
Which is what we're asking for them-
For this, yeah.
Provide financial-
But we don't run a credit check on them.
Again, from a statutory standpoint, I think, that's the only one we could run a credit check on, if we were hiring, would be people in the treasurer's office who handle the money, and even then-
You're going to have a credit check.
Well, I'll tell you what, does anyone think we, do we want to include that, or no? I don't think so.
I don't think so, not at this point.
But, let's think about it.
One other point, you talked about the apprentice program, the Department of Marine Fisheries, when they inspected the site, they said it's a very difficult location, and it's not for an inexperienced person, so, I mean, maybe they could work as an employee, but the licensee and-
Well, that's exactly what I meant, that they would be an apprentice to a licensee.
The licensee itself has to be an experienced person.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You can ask them to post a bond or come over, because they leave stuff.
Jamie?
Yeah.
To Karen's point about experience, not feeling like it might be enough in the, in the application, you see it in the, the one, the first line, but throughout the business plan, experience will just naturally color the business, like a market analysis, if someone has experience, well, you'll see that, you know, so I think it'll, it'll spread its way through the business plan naturally, you know?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, the apprenticeship, this industry lends itself to this, to, you know, naturally, Allen Creek employs legions of high school and college students in summer, so, I think it's going to be fairly easy to, to execute, you know, in reality, so, I wouldn't worry too much about that, but I think it might be a good thing to put it on the application, you know, have it solidly in there. And then, there's one more thing, Bill had just mentioned, but it escapes me, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I was puzzled by the, the access question.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Jackie Beatty Sandel at 147th Grace.
The access question?
The access question, because on the October 29th meeting, we described, and it was assured to the residents, that access was only going to be by boat to the Briggs Harbor or Bassam Beach location, so, is this, could you, we haven't seen a copy of the form, could you repeat what the access question was? I didn't think there would be a question for the pilot on the access, right, it's by-
So, so I can, sure, so, access would be under site plan, provide a map and site plan, include how you, you intend to access the site. If by land, provide a description of the point of access, included intended parking. If by water, provide a description of the type of vessel you intend to use, where it will be launched, moored. If private land, please include a written confirmation that the applicant has the right to access the land. So, I mean, it's possible, there are a lot of possibilities, I don't know everybody's relationships with people that are abutters, or people that have access to the land all around, so, we're just, we're asking, there could be many different ways.
It was discussed when the meeting room was full, the meeting, and it started at 9:30, we had like 50 people in here, and people got reassured on October 29th, it was made clear at that point, if you checked the minutes, that for the Briggs Harbor location, access would be exclusively by water.
I don't remember that.
I don't know, I mean, like, if you're a private landowner, I can't say you can't-
You can't let someone more boat.
Let someone use your private land.
If you had-
I, I just can't do that.
A farm, you could access it from your property.
Yeah.
If you had, yeah.
You wouldn't, because there's still water in between, to get to that, you actually can't access via the land unless you're going to someone's-
Hold on for one sec, Sean?
I asked the question, if they, if these farmers in the audience at that meeting, if they could access it from situat, and they said they could, they would need the Cohasset property, but that's not to say that someone couldn't fill out this application and walk right down the Cohasset Government Island Pier, right down the ramp, get in their skiff and do it, because there are situat residents that have all the permits they need to fish out of Cohasset.
Yeah.
So, they could, they could-
It's not private land, it's the government.
It's town-owned land.
Well, it could be private as well.
I mean, it could be private, and you have an agreement with the land-
With the landowner, yeah.
We can't stop, I mean, there-
We want to.
Okay, I think we all agree.
There are people that, you know, live along this body of water that have dogs, that, you know, what if they want to, I mean, they're going to come from their private property right there, you know what I mean?
Okay, John?
Yeah, well, I'm just, yeah.
Are we just going to touch, there is going to be an awful lot of youth involved, as far as employees for these farms, as Jamie also said, but just to say, you know, Bobby, if Bobby Thorndike here wanted to start a farm, he could certainly have access through his property to the farm.
He could walk out.
He may let, he may let all the farmers go through the farm.
He needs to go to the water.
I've been farming up there since I was a kid, but I don't sell anything, I eat it.
All right, so, can I have a motion on these documents?
I can't find it.
Do we have a motion?
Move to accept.
Move, just move to accept.
Except with the changes that were, the three changes that were-
There is a motion, does anyone want a motion?
Sure.
Happy to laugh, guys. Oh, my gosh, it is. Move to approve the commercial shellfish pilot application and criteria contingent upon the changes, further changes by town council, and the three amendments made this evening, and/or the town administrator, and review by the Division of Marine Fisheries if required.
Second, second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Janice. Okay, so now, the last conversation point is the map, right, sir?
Yeah, which I took a picture of it, and we started using stickies, because every time we would go to get another copy, it cost us money, it was time waiting for them to print one out, so, we started using sticky notes, and we, you're going to first say, I didn't follow your instructions, because there are eight, not seven, right?
I believe it was five to seven.
You said five to seven, but we did put one in for the, you know, simple propagation, because we're going to want to evaluate this, and we will be using, hopefully, being with partnership with students and other research entities, you may need to have a little bit of space to evaluate. And again, we clustered in two areas, one is around the rock here, that's like submerged at high tide, and then, which is a different kind of soil, and then, up here as well, is a little bit rockier. We thought, we had some feedback from people that came to the meetings, that these, we first had these like, like this, I guess, like, and then, they wanted a more parallel to the, to the water, you know, the pathway, people tend to use this a lot, right, coming out from Secret Beach, so, we kind of turned it that way. And again, like, if you have five or five and no Cohasset, you just take off two stickies, you know, that would look like this. So, or maybe, but, or it could be, you know, or it could be two of these, depending on which ones are-
Why'd you pick those two areas?
We picked those two areas because we thought, one, it'd be great to have around the rock, we thought that would be a really good spot, as far as a little bit of shelter here, but then, also, it would mark the rock, which is a lot of feedback that we got.
It would be there anyway.
Yeah, and there's a big rock there anyway, so, it's, people probably should be used to avoiding the rock.
Sandbar, I mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then, up there, it's, it's a little bit more protected up here, so, we thought we'd try it up there as well, and then, it helped me if I'm missing anything else that we were thinking of. Scott, can you think of something?
Just keeping it close to the, like you said, to the creek, kind of parallel, but we moved it, you know, in a little bit there, because the other thought is, instead of keeping it all within the four, you know, with it, with it being a pilot, there were suggestions like, you know, what if one, one to four, for some reason, it doesn't, doesn't grow, right? You know, we could get a sample from that.
Yeah, different sample, yeah, makes sense.
So, that seems to be, and I, I've never been there, so I don't know, but, the recreational area seems to be in that little, is there any reason why it wasn't closer to the shoreline? Like, four coming down the, down the right-hand side of the margin there?
Like, here?
Or, no, so-
Here, coming-
I think it's actually shut.
Put your hand like that.
Oh, moving here, here?
Nope, and moving, like, five, six, and seven to the right.
Oh, further in?
Yeah, like, like somehow up there.
Just, I don't know if Tony understands where the creek, how it flows, because-
Definitely doesn't.
I think they left them to the sides to keep the navigational waterways-
Also, the nutrients, there's some feedback with the water turning over like that, nutrients would come in.
Sure.
Food for the shellfish.
That's right.
Susan, can you just point to where the mine at, you know, the Boy Scout launch is, the kayak launch, is that?
Off of that.
Way away.
It's like, keep coming down here, maybe here.
I'd say Gannett, Gannett and Hall.
One off Gannett, by the-
Really, why, you want winds around, so you're coming here, and it's like, winds a little bit, right?
Yeah, all the way.
It's down on like Davis Causeway.
I don't know, he's-
Yeah, that's that way?
Yeah, it's down there.
Arrested for trespassing.
Yeah, yeah, it's over this way.
And where's Glades, then? I'm turned around now.
On the left-hand side of the shot, yeah, you've got the pink monitor on the left-hand side.
Yeah?
What's, what does that symbolize? That's Cohasset.
That's Cohasset Harbor.
So, this is the Harbor Channel, right, so, this is the, sorry, I shouldn't have went to the jetty.
So, Glades-
Harbor Channel.
Mr. Thorndyke-
This is Hog Rock, and then Glades is like-
Have you drawn in the restricted zone?
Mine is sorry about that.
And then mine it-
No, it's not happening.
The restricted zone, up here is the Adam's Eye. Yeah, that's where the north is.
It goes in here, it's another three Jack Rock, it's south by Harbor, it's one of the areas.
Oh, okay.
This is all, all open area.
Yes, so-
It's on there.
Yeah, so, of course, there's another three Jacks over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, now I know where we are.
So, you were just asked about the restricted zone, which is this side.
Yeah.
All right, come on, I want to go back.
Not with you. Classic, except you can't.
Okay, so, are we, other than getting a little giddy, does the board have any questions on these sites? Clearly, you did some good thinking in terms of channels and locations, and I unfortunately do not know the area well enough to comment, other than, my concern was the recreational component, and trying to avoid that as, as much as possible, and did we do that?
Yeah.
It looks like they did.
For those that use it recreationally, is that-
Any Cohasset people there, say on what?
Well, I, yeah, I love, so, the recreational use was a whole area, so you can't say you don't have it active.
Okay, Karen, any thoughts on-
Are these all going to be professionally surveyed, to make sure that we-
I think we can just go by the postings.
You're not going to go by the postings. Awesome. Yes, yes, it will. I was just trying, I thought you might want to move them around, we were trying to be creative with our limited budget.
Could you get pink and blue ones, please?
Next time, I will, yes.
So, I would want to say that we did say five to seven, and I think this is a good plan, I think you thought it all through, and you did symmetrical, and it looks pretty, but we did want to take it slow, so I'd be a little hesitant to out of the box say, yeah, sure, put eight out there, just because, you know, we, we did promise to take it slow.
I, so, I was talking about location, but then we can-
Oh, five, sorry.
It's fine.
I can get my kayak out.
It's all about you, Karen.
My paddleboard makes that.
Okay, any, did you have any feedback on the?
No.
Sean? So, now, Karen brings up a good point, we thought it'd be less than eight, what's the number that people, and I guess we don't have to, we don't have to decide tonight, I think, because the application-
Yeah, so, that was, that was discussed at the last meeting, to add the eighth one in, which is for the town use, which is in the regulation, we felt adding the eighth in now, doesn't mean we're going to use it right away, but that's for town use, Cohasset could use it for educational purposes as well, we want to come back to you a year later for one acre plot.
What if we were going to do five, though?
Five now?
Instead of seven?
That's your call.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just think the towns should have a stake in it out of the gate, if it's
a power program, the town should be involved at some point.
And I, I do want to say I doubt you'd use the whole acre right now, I mean, you'd probably use a quarter of the acre to do any sort of research, but, we could, we could could get rid of it and come back if, if that's, um, if we end up doing any sort of.
Why don't you just keep it mapped out, and, and we have it there, and we don't have to approve eight or seven.
280 feet by two and a half.
If we start dropping one or two off, and then get 45 applicants, then you're.
You gotta come back in, yeah.
Yeah, so let's see what the appetite is up there.
Okay, sounds good, um, couple, you had 30-second comments.
Well, Tony, probably, I let it drop off today, um, the Division of Marine Fisheries has to come out and inspect it and say what's workable, what's not.
All contingent on that.
Right.
There's lots of, uh, living, um, aquaculture up there now that has to be avoided, as well as the, uh, the marsh grass and the yew grass, so that's really gonna depict on how much of the area is usable.
Right, yes, ma'am.
I don't have a great spatial sense, Susan, so just give me a rough sense of, this Bassam Beach for all the voters, what's the distance between here and the closest, and then what's the distance in this channel if you design the navigation?
Poor girl, she doesn't know.
Three hundred feet, maybe?
Easily.
I'd say that's about three.
No, it's over a four.
That's eight, or what?
Each square is 208 feet.
208 feet, so, 300 and, 350, 300, and that's probably 400.
That'll land or water?
450, I, again, that's what I was. Depends on where you're standing, depends on where you're standing.
No, I think it's uplands.
True.
Susan, what's the rec, uh, the rectangle coming down, the white?
To the left of the five and the seven.
Above one, two, three, four, then?
The non-map, white protrusion.
Is that uplands?
Intrusion coming south.
Uplands.
Yes, that's uplands, isn't it?
No, that was on the ocean, that was when we did the flyover with the drone, it just didn't pick up that one particular area, because we didn't have enough targets for the drone, so it, it didn't pick up that one area.
Is that water?
It's all water.
It's all water, yeah, we just didn't pick.
Battery life of the drones in time, we were under gun.
And we were, yeah, swimming after the thing.
Yeah.
We lost a couple in the water.
I just, um, I heard, I think I heard Sean mention, um, that originally you guys had, um, thought you really wanted to include Cohasset, that's why you said it's 97, but then I, I heard you trail up, but it sounded like you were thinking about it not so much. I just wanted to go on record to say that I, I still think that we need to find a way to, to, even if it's against their own will, even if they don't know what's good for them, that we need to still try and attempt to, to include them, you know what I mean? I just, I envisioned, you know, two, three years down the road, and they were never included, and I, I hope to apply, and if I'm fortunate to get one, I'll be out there, boots in the ground, and it's just, it'll be so much easier to live in a world where people don't despise you, and, you know, it'd be good if we could all work together, you know?
I think there will be a couple fishermen, lobster fishermen and Cohasset will be interested.
Exactly, so, I mean, even though residents of Cohasset have taken steps to try and stop this, and even the town itself has taken steps to either slow down or, or halt it, I still think it's worth trying to pursue it, you know, I just wanted to say that.
Well, they're currently on the application, where they can fill out an application, and then we'll decide at one, at some point in the week.
Yeah. And I had.
Alright, we're gonna wrap it up soon, so.
Oh, my, just the follow-ups were regarding the how-to proceed was my last question, on the questions that we had given you, and then also how to score, is it a consensus score within a close, within the meeting, or is it each individual score, but that goes back to how do we proceed in?
Right.
Can we talk about that?
Which, which, right, those are the, the questions that are.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Not gonna happen tonight, but those are on the record.
And the next step will be, we'll figure out how we're gonna evaluate your scored applications.
Yeah.
And then when you make the applications available to people, and then clearly, they've gotta come out and look at the site and see what's.
Right. Mike, would the next step be to, to, before we get into starting accepting applications and all this stuff, wouldn't the next step be to get the state out there and tell us whether it's suitable before we go through the whole rigmarole? So, next would be to get Marine Fisheries out there, tell us suitable, not suitable?
I don't think they can do it, I think it's once you've been, once each farmer's been given this.
Get a license.
Well, that just seems like a stupid way to do it.
It does, ridiculously stupid.
Yeah, I, I'll clarify that, Jim, I'll give a call tomorrow.
Well, we can get back to you on that.
I mean, we, we have a plan, we have an area that we wanna open for shellfish, and I think they're gonna look at it.
Now that I think about it, it's late, but now that I think about it.
Michael, Michael, find out.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Okay. Thank you guys for, for the great work, um, and you take the next step that you just said, and we'll digest all this stuff and talk about it our next meeting.
Tony, before you go, the, um, one of the previous meetings, you said that the conditions on what is allowed to happen up on Bassam, will we have another meeting to go over those conditions?
Conditions of what, I'm sorry?
What?
The conditions that would be applied to Bassam, such as no floats, no, um.
Did we do that? Isn't that in the regs?
Yeah, I don't remember. We put it in the regs, and I actually, specific to the application, when we said, describe your gear, I took out shanties or any of those things.
Look at the, um, look at the regulations and see if it's not there, and send me an email, and we'll figure it out.
We had, we had said.
Many questions on the pilot program, the information of it, and, um, so I think we need to have a meeting up.
There's gonna, oh, there's gonna be more meetings, but send me an email with your questions, and, and after you look at the regulations, and then we'll, we'll get it, we'll figure out what we need to do. Okay, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you, we stayed so late.
Good morning, it is really morning.
What about, didn't we do something about brunch about three hours?
Yeah.
Sunday brunch.
I saw it so late.
It's almost Sunday.
Okay, so let's do the drain layers thing real quick. Can I have a motion to accept the drain layers license?
Move to renew the drain layers license of the following businesses.
Oh, yeah.
Shepherd Farrow, Excavation Inc., Jones Contracting Inc., Landmark Construction, going business as Costello Contracting, Dougal Brothers, Jones Brothers Inc., SLT Construction Corp., Spencer Junior Inc.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you guys go out in the hallway, please?
Yeah, Gabe said he had no problem with the.
About new licenses?
All right, move to approve a new drain layers license for GFM Enterprises.
Second by.
Second.
Mrs. Canfield, further discussion, Mr. Thorndike.
Living.
So, that was, uh, the motion was made, Lorraine.
Second. We already approved it. Karen already said second.
I have that, I want the, I have the removal of the existing one.
We just did the other one, the first one, Sean made the motion, and Karen Canfield